We're going to pause for a moment to try and check on the technical issue.
Yeah, we can hear people. Councilmember Phil Seth, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Great. Councilmember DuBois, can you hear us?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Koo, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay, looks like we fixed it. Thank you. Okay. Maybe we could start with the roll call one more time. Mayor Burt?
Here.
Councilmember Cormac, here. Councilmember DuBois?
Here.
Vice Mayor Koo?
Here.
Councilmember Phil Seth?
Here.
Councilmember Stone?
Here.
And Councilmember Tanaka?
For the record, all present.
Thank you. And we have a change in our schedule. We previously had a study session with Valley Water scheduled, but we're going to not conduct that item tonight. And the city manager is welcome to just provide clarification during his comments. So that's the change to the agenda. And I'm not aware of any other changes or additions. And so our next item, we're going to go into public comments. And this is for any item not otherwise on the agenda. And we welcome members of the public to speak and to do so in a respectful manner and non-disruptive. So I see that we have so far two members of the public who are scheduled to speak. Ken Horowitz, in person, to be followed by Winter Dellenbach, I believe, and then Jennifer Landisman. Mr. Horowitz, welcome.
And that you're gonna move forward. Finally, after many years, there's at least a glimmer of hope. And I know those of us that are part of Friends of Coverley are very happy that you are gonna be going forward. I wanted to share with you, I went back to Foothill College, and I wondered if the clerk could put it up, but I have some copies of the You know, Foothill wanted to purchase the eight acres, and they came up with a a plan. And I wanted to show you the plan because it's a beautiful plan. I said last week that, or two weeks ago, that you can do a lot with eight acres. And this is eight acres that allows for parking. It includes the tennis courts. It actually has 100,000 square feet of buildings, which is 25% more than you currently have at your eight acres. And it will allow all the art studios, the dance studios, et cetera. Now, this is a plan at the college for education, but it's at least a concept that city staff can work on. And I've included the architect that drew the plans. It's called BF Architecture Company, whatever. You can probably get their plans. And it's a two-story building, and it can allow for studios and art classes, et cetera, has parking, et cetera. The last thing that I handed you out was, I think it was Councilmember DuBois wanted to know how much you spent in rent. I went back to that 2010 report. And up until that point, you had spent $113 million in rent. So I would anticipate that you've probably spent closer to $200 million, which you have given to the city, I mean Palo Alto Unified School District over the length of time, $200 million. I think they owe you a little bit in terms of a trade or a swamp or swamping facility. So thank you for your time, and I really appreciate your work. And thank you, Councilmember Stone, for your comments as well as
Thank you. Our next speaker is Winter Dellenbach, to be followed by Jennifer Landisman. Welcome.
Hi, you all. The latest Matadoro Creek update was released to the public on Wednesday, the 23rd. I hope all or some of you had a chance to read it. It's critical for us to acknowledge the magnitude of the spill as stated in this report. It's the largest hazardous material release to surface waters that city staff has ever managed. Thank you to the Hazmat Bureau of the Palo Alto Fire Department for its good work on this throughout. The Palo Alto Fire Department considers the diesel remediation effort at Matadoro Creek to be nearing the end. Not ended, but nearing the end, with no observable ecosystem impact. That's good news. However, one of the VA's other toxic spills into Matadoro Creek was said to take 20 years to recovery, when in fact, it never did fully recover. Some abundant animals died immediately after the spill, never returning, but never returning at all. So with this spill, we must realize with time, there may be adverse impacts now not observable. The report also says, at this time, it appears that the site was successfully remediated prior to the commencement of the rainy season. But that's not exactly, that doesn't exactly sync up with the water test results, which show hydrocarbon measurements above acceptable levels in two areas of the creek before the giant rains of October 23rd, 24th. It seems it was the torrential rains and creek flow that cleared out, probably cleared out the contamination to acceptable levels. Now efforts are underway to improve communication between the VA and the city, and develop a strategy to prevent or minimize future incidents. Oh, how we can dream. Good. I look forward to seeing these results. I hope City Council will monitor these talks. Let's end spills by the VA into our creeks once and for all. Also, we need to recoup city money. Hundreds of thousands of dollars have been spent by the city's efforts. And thank you, city, that time and money in spent on this spill. So we need to get those back from the VA. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jennifer Landisman, to be followed by our final speaker, Stanford Stickney. Welcome.
Hi. Thank you. Good evening, council. You may have seen that today, the Supreme Court heard a challenge to the EPA's authority to write climate policy. That is versus the authority of Congress or the executive branch. Federal agencies like the EPA and the Federal Aviation Administration are given substantial leeway to write their policies and to set standards for a variety of issues. The question the Supreme Court may answer is, can an unelected bureaucracy rule on quote-unquote major questions? So it's a very political process. In our dealings with the FAA, we know that it is the FAA that is setting policy, and Congress has been very ineffectual to change the FAA's policies, although right now, there is a policy review process underway. Slow. So my curiosity for now 10 years has been what role local governments have in seeing the fairness and reasonableness of policies that are set by the, by federal agencies or unelected bureaucracies like the FAA. And more importantly, who enforces the rules that have been set? A few years ago, you wrote a letter regarding Pirate where you listed, and this was work that was done involving community members, and we expressed a lot of problems with the way FAA was following its own rules, its own policies. And you wrote a letter to express this. But then you decided to not challenge Pirate because you said that you did not want to appear that to shift noise illegally. And so I think that needs some, some sort of explanation because if the FAA is not following its own rules, they are actually shifting noise illegally. And so I don't see how the city, by say proposing new paths or alternatives in a formal process within the rules would be illegal, an illegal action. So at some point, I just wanted to comment on this and you know, and see how, what your role is in this overall picture of, of these rules that are set, these policies that are set by distant agencies, and what your role is to express our dissatisfaction with them, or our need for them to change, to be fairer and more reasonable. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker is Stanford Stickney. Welcome.
Hello. Good evening. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak before you tonight. My name is Stanford Stickney. I'm a first-year master student in the Design Impact Program at Stanford University. We have a very unique opportunity where we, many students are taking a class called Graduate Design and Need Finding. And we're working for the transportation challenge in regards to the Palo Alto's Sustainable Climate Action Plan. And as a class, we have interviewed approximately 30 Palo Alto residents, and will most likely be interviewing an additional 30 Palo Alto residents. And first and foremost, anything that we can do or insights that the town council would like to give us in our presentation for our final, we greatly appreciate. And we wanted just to share a couple of the preliminary findings we've had thus far. It seems that many residents have concerns riding their bike on the road. And there is a perception, be it anecdotal or not, that it's dangerous to ride their bikes, and therefore they prefer to use the comfort of their vehicles. There also seems, whether it's right or not, a perception that some residents have expressed frustration with finding the appropriate outlets to move forward on best sustainable practices. And I guess in the final analysis, what we're hoping to do is gather as much information as possible in order to be an asset in moving forward with achieving the sustainability Climate Action Plan goal. And if there's any guidance that you can provide us in our research, we'd greatly appreciate it. And I thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. And Mr. Stickney, if you would like to contact me by email, I'd be glad to connect with you on our Sustainability and Climate Action Plan initiatives. So our next item, that concludes public comments. Our next item is our consent calendar. And do we have any public speakers on the consent item? Plural. And any coming up? So I will open it up for a motion to approve the consent calendar? Okay, well, we'll go ahead and take the comments after the motion. Councilmember DuBois?
Yeah, I'd like to register no vote on seven.
Okay. And Councilmember Tanaka?
No on seven.
Okay. And do we have, well, do we have a motion to approve consent? And then I'll open up the members of the public.
So moved.
And I will second that. And so we had at least one public speaker. Let's see. That would be Gurmeeh Lamba. Welcome. You have up to three minutes to speak.
Okay, can you hear me, Mayor Burt?
We can. Thank you.
Perfect. My name is Gurmeeh Lamba. I'm a member of the Board of Directors of the Palo Alto Art Center Foundation. I want to say a few words related to the MOU renewal between the city and the Art Center Foundation, which is the agenda item number five. This MOU documents a strong role model, public-private partnership. It helps the foundation attract donors, and hence in turn, fund art center programs, including staffing children's education programs and exhibits for the community. As you all know, a well-functioning art center supporting the community is critical to our social fabric, especially in the current environment. And the Palo Alto Art Center is simply a gem. On behalf of the board, staff, and members of the art community, I want to acknowledge and thank the council for its continued support. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll now take a vote on the consent calendar with the councilmembers DuBois and Tanaka registering no votes on item seven. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Stone?
Yes.
Councilmember Cormac?
Yes.
Mayor Burt?
Yes.
Councilmember Tanaka?
Yes.
Councilmember Phil Seth?
Yes.
Councilmember DuBois?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Koo?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. So Councilmember DuBois, would you like to speak to your no vote, followed by Councilmember Tanaka?
Yeah, thank you. So item seven was to stop allowing utility accounts over $5,000 to use credit card for payment because the city pays the credit card transaction processing cost. So I voted no on this one, not because I don't support that idea, but because I didn't think it went far enough. Largest volume of transactions are actually for much smaller amounts. And when you add them up, you know, they're more significant. And the city already has the ability to pass processing fees on to buyers and to support bank transfers through ACH. And so I just thought to be consistent that we should pass all credit card fees on to buyers, really regardless of the size of the transaction. And most public agencies do this. I know the state does it. I know the county does it. And even public universities do it. So I think people would, would get over that. And if they were concerned about fees, they would use ACH. And so that's why I voted no. I wanted to underline that.
Thank you. And Councilmember Tanaka?
I voted no, but for a very opposite reason, which is I think we should offer more flexibility in terms of how people pay their bills. I know that a lot of small businesses, especially restaurants, pay a substantial amount of money in utilities. And they use this, use credit cards to actually flip their business. So as you make it tougher, in restaurants, as you guys might know, restaurants are extremely low-margin businesses. And I've talked to many restaurant owners actually about, some of them actually complained about this. And so I think it's concerning. It drives out small business, makes it really hard. It's like another tax on them, on businesses that could barely make it as it is. So especially with inflation, $5,000 is not as much money as it used to be. So I think we should be more friendly to businesses, and especially to our small local retailers and restaurants. And we should actually offer more ways to pay, including things like Bitcoin or other cryptocurrency. So I think we should, we should be going the other direction, not, not making it harder for businesses here.
Thank you. So that concludes our consent calendar.
It's Councilmember Koo. I wanted, I wanted to ask if I may ask the Madam Clerk if the motion says Mayor Burt as the seconded. The last time I saw it, it said Mayor DuBois.
Yes, ma'am. It has been updated to reflect that.
Thank you.
Moved by Councilmember Cormac, seconded by Mayor Burt.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Koo. Okay, so now we'll proceed to city manager comments. Mr. Shikata?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council. Let's see, if I could ask for the assistance of the city clerk. Thank you. Let's proceed to the next slide. All right, just a few items, actually quite a few items of interest for the community this evening. So we'll just go ahead and jump into it. Perhaps, as always, we start with our pandemic update and note that we do expect to see a change in the county's mask mandate this week, stated here March 3rd. I've seen other reports, March 2nd. I think it depends on how the new order is defined in terms of the effective time and date for the lifting of mask mandates. The, let's see, would note, again, this is based upon hospitalization and testing results. So we hope to have some good news this week, as soon as tomorrow, in terms of the rules going forward at the county level, as well as changes that are ongoing at the state level. Would note that for the city councils meeting, obviously, we're here in person also doing remote, so what we refer to as a hybrid format. And the city councils committees, as well as the city's boards and commissions, will begin hybrid meetings this week, in fact, starting as of tomorrow. So the public will be able to participate in our board and commission meetings, both in person as well as remotely. For those who are attending in person, at least until subject to change by county and state rules, we will continue to be checking for vaccination status and our testing status prior to attendance in person. And on the topic of testing, I would note that we continue to have sites available for testing, both at our Mitchell Park location, kiosk location, available through Curate Company, as well as with the county at the Art Center on specific dates here, March 11th and 25th, upcoming dates. Next slide, please. Then perhaps from a perspective of a worldwide view, noting the emergencies and concerns around the Russian attacks in Ukraine, would note that our nonprofit partner, Neighbors Abroad, has established a way for community members to support Ukrainian community through a new fundraising campaign. This includes a support relief fund for orphans and homeless children. And again, established through Neighbors Abroad, and can be accessed through a website here, this bit.ly/ukrainchildrensrelieffund, all one word. Or if you have access to this site, we have a QR code, and we'll be providing additional information on our webpage. Would also just finally note that as our small, local symbol of support for the Ukrainian people, the city hall facade, the upper floors of city hall will be illuminated with the Ukrainian flag, colors of blue and yellow, as I believe Councilmember Phil Seth is also sporting on his background this evening. Next slide, please. Also like to follow up on discussions that have happened over the last couple of weeks, and in particular, the hate incident that occurred both here in Palo Alto, as well as a number of other Bay Area and beyond communities in recent weeks. Note that the mayor and police department issued a statement last week, both denouncing these incidents, as well as calling for community response, reinforcing our community priorities of kindness and belonging for community members. Also note that these incidents reinforce the importance of the city's ongoing race and equity work. And note for those looking for additional information on this ongoing work, that we have information posted on our web page with updates on the various initiatives that the city is pursuing. And that's all available on our homepage under news. Next slide, please. Note that last week, we had our first community meeting on what affectionately referred to as Palo Alto Fiber, Fiber Optics rollout, feasibility study, and analysis ongoing design work. We had over 75 community members attending last week's virtual session, and is really building community awareness of this project, as we will be conducting market analysis to assist the council's consideration of feasibility of this project coming forward in the next several months. Next slide, please. Also now upcoming, as typical of my updates, I provide some chronological previews of things that are coming up here. We are rolling out now a outreach effort to gain community input on key priorities and skills needed for our next chief of police. And as such, have a number of sessions that are being scheduled, including one in conjunction with the Human Relations Commission, and as well as some separate community input sessions scheduled on March 10th, 19th, and 31st. Additional information here is also available on our city's homepage. Next slide, please. Then noting also coming up, in fact, this one's a little closer, actually, on March 6th, there will be a summer camp fair at Palo Alto High School, really putting together a number of dimensions, including one for families looking to register their kids in summer camps, that there is still space. Our staff has noted that there has been a tremendous response for registrations for camps. But that said, there are still a number of slots still available. So invite community members to continue to look at both our website for registration, as well as this summer camp fair that will be on Sunday, March 6th, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. But it's not just for registrants. It's also a job opportunity fair for potential counselors, internships, volunteers, and anyone who would like to assist with the city's summer camps. Information here is at our website, cityofpaloalto.org/summercamps. Next slide, please. Hard to believe, summer's right around the corner. Okay, next. And also upcoming, on the 12th of March, an Arbor Day Week kickoff that will be occurring at our Palo Alto Art Center, number of arts-related activities, as well as, I'm sure, information about our urban forest and opportunities to support it. Also information here on our city's webpage and on our calendar again for March 12th. Next slide, please. Then finally, just note, look ahead to some key upcoming items for city council discussion. Next week, on March 7th, we will have a joint session between the council and the Utility Advisory Commission regarding our Sustainability and Climate Action Plan, and also follow-up discussion on the Parks and Recreation Commission's recommendations regarding a new community gym, gymnasium. Then the following week, we have our regularly scheduled city council discussion with the independent police auditor, as well as a discussion of upcoming community engagement efforts. This is a carryover from the city council's retreat to discuss community engagement efforts planned throughout the calendar year. And then looking ahead a little further, we'll have a report from our city, city's police department, including a discussion specifically around radio encryption, as well as a number of housing-related items, including the housing element update, follow-up actions on our SB9 implementation ordinance, and finally, objective standards. and finally, objective standards as it relates to development projects as well. So with that, I believe that's my last slide, last slide. And Mayor, back to you.
Thank you. So our next item, we had tentatively a break here, but I think we're not needing one at this hour, and maybe have it after item number 12. I'm sorry? So our next item is a public hearing on objections to weed abatement and adoption of a resolution ordering weed nuisance abated. And who takes the lead from our staff?
Now, let's see, it's typically the fire department. I'm not sure if we've got our fire chiefs standing by. Oh, there he is. Thank you, Chief Blackshire.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Gio Blackshire from the Fire Department. To address this resolution, we have Mo Cumberley from Santa Clara County Weed Abatement Program. He is a participant at this time, but I think we're a little early, so I'm hoping he's available. He is. Oh, there we are. Welcome. Thank you for being here. Did you want, did you want me to do this? Yes, please. Okay. Excuse me. This is Mo Cumberley. I'm the manager of the Weed Abatement Program for Santa Clara County. This is the second step in a three-step process. Previously, the council declared weeds brush public, weeds brush and rubbish public nuisance. And tonight, you set the date for tonight's public hearing, where property owners that have been added to this list have an opportunity to come in and contest inclusion in this program. At, you'll have a public hearing. People can tell why they shouldn't be on the program. Close the public hearing. You'll rule on the, on the challenges, and you'll authorize my department to inspect, and when necessary, to abate these properties to ensure that they're maintained in a fire-safe condition. And then the third part of this will take place in June, in the end of June, I believe, where we will do a hearing on the costs that would be associated with it, and that will be how the season concludes. So with that, we now put this back to you for you to open the public hearing. And I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. So at this time, we're opening the public hearing for any members of the public who wish to object to the program or to comment on it. And we'll give it a moment to see if we have any members of the public who wish to speak. And we do not appear to have any members of the public who are wishing to speak on this item. So at this time, we will close the public hearing and entertain motion to approve, correct? So do we have a motion to approve the the resolution in attachment A of our staff report ordering the abatement of weed nuisances in the city of Palo Alto?
So moved.
Right? And do we have a second?
Second.
Great. So Councilmember Phil Seth, did you wish to speak to your motion?
No, thank you.
And Vice Mayor Coop, did you wish to speak to your second?
No, thank you.
And it okay, Councilmember Cormac, you wanted to speak to this?
I did. My only concern is that, you know, initially, this was noticed for eight o'clock, and then the amended agenda said seven, and now it's 6:30. And we have once had a time when people did want to make public comment, so I just wonder if we're closing public comment too early. Perhaps we should return to this later, just in case.
Is that a question to me, Councilmember?
It's a general statement, but I'd welcome your input.
Sure. So it's really at council's discretion, the mayor can make a ruling on this, whether you want to hold this, perhaps pause, take another item, and then come back and return and close public comment and take the action at another time. You, our rules do state that these times are approximate, and so if you wish to close the hearing, you could also do that.
I'm fine either way. I just wanted to surface it before we may move on.
Think out of an abundance of caution, we'll go ahead and keep this item open while we and then proceed to our next item. I don't think that we need to have the representative from the county or Chief Blackshire stay on the line for this. We've had an opportunity to hear from them, and you're always welcome to be entertained by our council meetings, but not obligated to do so while we keep this open. And then, so we'll keep the public hearing open on this until eight o'clock or until after our next item is complete, whichever comes later. And and so in that note, we will now move on to item number 12, which is a discussion and direction on a draft response to the Santa Clara County Civil Grand Jury Report, published December 16th, 2021, pertaining to affordable housing. And we would provide potential direction to staff on related policies. So I think Director Late, were you going to lead off on this?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and good evening, City Council. So as just stated, the City Council will be considering a a response to a civil grand jury report that was published publicly December 16th, 2021. The report just generally compares Palo Alto's affordable housing production over a defined period of time to the city of Mountain View, and makes a number of findings and recommendations that the grand jury anticipates would facilitate more affordable housing production. State law provides a jurisdiction ninety days to comment on the report. Our deadline is accordingly, March 16th, 2022. State law also provides that the process by which a jurisdiction would respond to the findings and recommendations, including the terminology that's used. So if you read the response letter, you may see that it's a little bit formal in some respects. With respect to the findings, the respondent needs to either agree or disagree wholly, or disagree partially, and then identify specific portions of the findings that are disputed, include any explanations. For the recommendations, there are three options there. We've either implemented the recommendation, we've not yet implemented the recommendation, but will be within a specified timeframe, or we conclude that the recommendation requires further analysis, and we have six months to do that additional analysis. And staff has prepared a report, which is included in your packet, along with the draft response letter. This work was done in coordination with the mayor's assigned ad hoc, consisting of councilmembers Tom DeBois and Eric Philseth. I will note that there's one correction that we'd like to make with respect to the draft response on finding number three. There is a reference to the city using eminent domain on the Buena Vista Preservation Project. That, of course, did not happen. It was discussed in sort of the public dialogue at the time, but it was never an action that the city council took. So we would recommend simply just deleting that reference in finding three in the draft response letter. And based on the council's deliberation this evening, I anticipate there may be some other refinements to the response letter. Staff would work with the ad hoc and anticipates coming back on March 14th on your council agenda. And we recommend that this item be acted upon on consent calendar. And if it's acted on on the 14th, we'll be able to meet our March 16th deadline. So Mayor, that concludes my report. Your discretion on whether you want to open it up for public comment at this time, or maybe hear from the ad hoc members themselves.
Thank you. I think at this time, it'd be good to hear from, report from our ad hoc committee members of councilmembers DeBois and Phil Seth. Who would like to provide your update?
You should go ahead, Eric.
Hey, Councilmember Phil Seth.
Thanks. Can I, can I get it here?
You're breaking up a little there, Councilmember.
Can I get the screen here? Will that work? There we are. So thanks very much. Let me sort of comment on this. Mostly I'm going to talk about the explain what's in the, I mean, the grand jury report is fifty pages long, and our response is pretty long, too. And so I pretty much mostly just want to sort of explain what's in it, and then people can go read it. But I would say that the first thing we thought of when we saw it was, we said, now, wait a second. You know, historically, we think of Palo Alto as sort of having, you know, one of the stronger histories of affordable housing in the Santa Clara County and the region. And, you know, so for a number of years, we've had one of the highest rates of affordable housing as a percentage of total housing in the whole county, including many hundreds of units more than even larger cities than us, such as Mountain View and Sunnyvale. And so we sort of saw the grand jury report came back and said, no, 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 you guys are not a leader in this. You are actually the laggard in this. And we sort of said, well, how is that? So, and here's how it is. So the grand jury, what they did, and so this is sort of the like ninety thousand-foot summary of the grand jury report. What they did was they focused strictly on the period from 2015 to 2019, and they looked exclusively at affordable housing production. And what they found was that from 2015 he added two hundred and sixty more affordable housing units than Palo Alto did, and that's correct. Okay, and so that was the basic, that was the basic core finding, and then they sort of connected it to RENA and all this other stuff and so forth. But that was the core finding, was that Mountain View added two hundred and sixty more affordable housing units than Palo Alto. And you know, one of the things you got to be careful with is there's a little bit of, well, are we talking about eighty percent AMI or one hundred and twenty percent AMI and so forth? The grand jury counts this eighty percent AMI. Some other people count this one hundred and twenty percent AMI. You just got to keep track of which is which. So that was their finding. And then basically, the rest of the report, the findings and recommendations tie back to that finding, that the two hundred and sixty and the difference. And I would, I would say that their findings and recommendations kind of fall into two major buckets. The first bucket is sort of process-oriented procedural kind of, kind of recommendation. They had several, several actually useful suggestions, right? Around things like, you know, the approval cycle through the city, community education, council advocacy outreach. Should the ARB and the PTC consider these things separately, or should it be together and so forth? So a number of procedural things like that. And then they also had a number of recommendations that I classify as economics. And in my opinion, the economic, if you read the report, in my opinion, the economic section of the, of the report is the strongest in the report. It's very, very good. And I think everybody interested in this should read it. They lay out in, in very crisply what it takes to actually get these projects done. Because, you know, as the report points out, cities by themselves don't have the resources to do affordable housing, because it takes subsidies and funding. And so the report identifies two approaches to doing this. Now, there's actually sort of a third, but, but they didn't go into it, so we didn't respond specifically to that one. They lay out two major ones, right? One is a hundred percent affordable housing projects built by nonprofit developers and paid for using public funds, so our Affordable Housing Fund. And you're, one of the surprises was, one of the conclusions, one of the findings the grand jury found was that Palo Alto had no Affordable Housing Fund. Well, of course, we do have an Affordable Housing Fund. We do do this from, in this period, we appropriated about forty million dollars between Buena Vista, Wilton Court, and 231 Grant. And in fact, by, by the end of 2019, that fund was almost at zero. It has since come back. We've got some more money since then. We've got about six million dollars since then. And that's going to source or contribute to projects such as 525 Charleston, which is forthcoming, and the and, and the San Antonio Life News Project is that some of that's targeted for as well. So that's the first model. The second model, they, they lay out is affordable housing as part of a mixed-use development done by a private developer containing both housing and commercial space. And in this case, the affordable housing is paid for by the commercial side. Again, and it's particularly office space, generates a lot of, the return on investment is a lot higher, and if you have enough office space, you can find some affordable housing, and that's the principle. And they also recommend using a commercial development for its in lieu fees, even if it's not in the same building as, as the housing. And also, it's one of the foundational things for area-specific plans. You know, area-specific plans, you know, one of the primary benefits of area-specific plans is you're going to say, okay, we're going to have this much office space over here, and some retail over here, and some housing over here, and some park space over here. And, you know, it's sort of a planning for the whole thing. But the financing in such a project typically is driven by the commercial side. So that was, so that's, that's sort of the ninety thousand-foot overview of the grand jury report. The two hundred and sixty units, process suggestions, and the economic suggestion. Okay, so our response, we went through this, we're largely in agreement with most of the process suggestions. They seem generally reasonable. Opinions obviously will vary on how much any one of these will individually move the needle, particularly given that you know, the real obstacle, we continue to believe, is economics. The real challenge for affordable housing is, you know, how to pay for it, right? But, which the grand jury goes into too in the next section. But we largely agree with the process suggestions. And, you know, as you go through the the document, you'll say, well, we partially agree with this, partially agree with that. And some people will sort of say, well, I don't like that wording and so forth. But generally, we're in agreement with that, okay? The economic, okay? We agree with the first approach, but we have big reservations, I think, as everybody knows about the second approach. So we use one of the, one of the two models, but not the other one. And as you might imagine, you know, other cities that use both, you probably have bigger numbers, okay, during this, during this period than we do. This surely accounts for some of the two sixty units is that, you know, the other cities use both mechanisms, and we don't use the second. We only use one of them. So the report spends a lot of time sort of explaining quiddatically why we have reservations about that. And I'm not going to spend a lot of time, try not to spend a lot of time sort of walking through that again. It's Appendix A, and Appendix, or Appendix 1 and Appendix 2 in the report kind of do that. And the basic idea is that when you have commercial space, okay? It creates, assuming that people come and work there, right? It creates a need for housing, because you've got jobs. And there are a variety of models, and Appendix 1 goes through some of them, and a variety of models. But, you know, for a thousand square feet of office space in the mid-teninsula, probably you'd somewhere in the range of one point two affordable housing units. And I'm using one twenty percent here, because the other side uses one point. You know, the Mountain View standard actually calls for one point five, okay? But you have a certain amount of demand. Now, you can say, okay, this is our project parameters. For each thousand square feet of office, we need one point two affordable housing units. But that doesn't mean a developer is going to be able to But that doesn't mean a developer is going to be able to afford to build it, okay? Because there's economics involved. Developers are not charities, okay? They have responsibilities, they're investors. And if they can't afford to do that, you know, they're not, it's not going to get built. So we say, okay, well. What's economically feasible then? Well, we got an economic, an economically feasible data point is appendix two, and it's actually, you know, a proposal for three ninety five page mail in the NB cap area. And what they, what they suggested, they said, well. You know, if you guys can make this work, we can make this work. Seventy six below market rate units, affordable units in exchange for two hundred thousand square feet of office space. Or point three eight affordable housing units per square foot, per thousand square feet of office space. Now. You know, this, I mean, could we negotiate more? Could we negotiate less? They have some other stuff and so forth in there, but it's probably a reasonable ballpark for what's economically feasible. And so what you, what you get here is that. A square foot of commercial. Space to fund affordable housing. Produces somewhere in the range of three times as much demand as it actually supplies. Okay, now maybe depending on your assumptions and model, maybe it's two, maybe it's four, okay? But it's not one, okay? So what that means is that if you proceed with this. For each low income person you house. You're going to displace two more. And so. If you only consider the supply side. You say, yeah. Point three affordable housing units, that sounds good, let's do it. But if you consider the demand side, when you look at that and you go, we're actually. Most people don't look at this. A few do. The first and most famous actually is is the county in their negotiation with Stanford. I mean, this is kind of the model that the county called it full mitigation. This is kind of the model with the county negotiated through with Stanford. So they were looking at supply and demand. Again, if you only look at supply, you get one answer. But if you look at supply and demand, you get another answer. And in fact, they're quite a bit different. And if you would consider both supply and demand, I mean, Mountain View added. You know, many, many thousands more jobs during this time and built a lot more commercial space than Palo Alto did. And if you look at affordable housing units per new job. Okay, the the numbers look completely upside down. In fact, Palo's, you know, twice as high as Mountain View and actually ahead of the county in general. Now. Use the word ahead is not a good word here, okay? Because the truth is, the need is much higher than any of us supply. Okay, so nobody's ahead, okay? We're all behind and there's some of that data in the report and so forth. If all this seems too theoretical and abstract. You know, the simple way to think about it is. A project. That supplies seventy six affordable housing units in exchange for two hundred thousand square feet of of office space, which creates demand for two hundred and thirty two units. Should we approve it? Right? I mean, that's sort of the litmus test question. Should we approve this? Because if the answer is. Yes, well, you're looking at. Two and a half people per household times a hundred and fifty, negative a hundred and fifty affordable housing units, just something like four or five hundred people displaced, right? So and if the answer is no, then. Then it's like, well, okay, now we're looking at supply and demand. So that's. That's the basic reason that we did the office caps, because we looked and said. You know, in in twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, Palo Alto's jobs housing ratio was three and a half or something like that and still riding fast. Right? And we, you know, we said we took our sort of a radical direction on this, right? You know, was this a good idea to go down this path and and look at supply and demand? Well, you know, it's too soon to tell. There are some good indications. Our jobs housing ratio actually over this period of time, it has flattened. And may actually be edging down with the pandemic going on since the pandemic. I don't think anybody really understands what what the impact of the pandemic is. So this is up until the point of the pandemic, right? But it continued to rise elsewhere in the region. Rent achieved in Palo Alto also slowed a little bit, right? So correlation is not causation and all this is based on ACS data and so forth. So it's not for sure, but there's some interesting indications that. If you believe that what we want is housing for social and economic balance, right? You know. Hopefully, we're not making it worse, okay? So. Which brings back to the grand grand jury report. This is actually the major point of difference between us and the grand jury, we think, okay, on this, was that. Whether we should consider supply and demand or just demand. Now, to their immense credit. If you look through the port report, it actually asks the question. Okay, it says. If a project creates more demand for affordable housing than it supplies. Should that project be done? It actually asked the question, okay? And then it backs off and doesn't answer it. And finding fourteen as well, you know, we should study this more, okay? But the answer is clear. If you have a project that supplies or a or a plan that supplies more. Affordable housing demand than supply. Then you're funding it with low income displacement, right? And so that's concerning now. The dynamics are going to be different. If in an expensive, high jobs housing ratio. Area like the mid peninsula like us, you're going to have one answer. If you're out in a much sparser area, you know. La Spanios, for example, right? Morgan Hill, other parts, you know. Where they have lower jobs housing ratios, you might have a completely different answer. But in the expensive mid peninsula, this is something that that, you know, is a real concern. And this is the reason that we don't agree with the grand jury. On the use of commercial development as a financing tool. So it's approach two on the economic section, right? And that pervades a few other places. They talk about it as a form, as a source of in lieu fees. They talk about it as, you know. There's area specific plans, which we see as basically, you know, one of the main values of vehicle is to do this kind of thing. If you're not going to do this kind of commercial development, then we see much less value in area specific plans, for example, although we do do them from time to time. Now. There's a section on a discussion of expanding and diversifying funding sources, which we agree with. I think when you read the grand jury report. You know, you're gonna go, yeah, well, they really mean commercial development, right? And I think there is a flavor of that, but there are other kinds of things. So impact fees are a funding source for affordable housing. And as everybody knows. We just raised ours to be the commercial impact fees, not the housing impact fees, the commercial impact fees to be the highest in the bear. Okay, in order to produce more revenue for the fund. County measure A, you know, we continue to work with the county. We actually, we actually did try to get measure A funds for Wilton Court. We were not able to secure those, but we continue to work with county on these kinds of things. State and federal funding, this is where I want to, where I want to make a public service ad here. Project Home Key. We like project home. Project Home Key is actually starting to run low on money. And the reason it's been so successful is that lots of jurisdictions have filed projects because they work, okay? So we're counting on project Home Key for the San Antonio Life Moves project. So, you know, we've got city money committed, we've got county money committed, if the state can pick up there and we can actually go get this thing built. So here's my ad. Call your assemblyman and your state senator and tell them. Fund project Home Key, put more money in project Home Key because it works and it's good. Okay, so in the end of advertisement there. And the last aspect. On expanding and diversifying funding sources. Is, you know, potential for local revenue measures and and the grand jury reported a little bit on that or discussed that a little bit too. I mean, some of these are kind of euphemisms, right? They say, well, it's, you know, we'll divert future revenues, so we're not touching existing revenues. Well, you know. Unless your police and fire don't want any raises next year, okay? It's still a taxing piece, okay? But I think that is, that is something that that is a legitimate thing. And you got to sort of differentiate between households and businesses. And I'll be. I have one more slide here. So I'm going to revisit a theme that we've sort of talked about in the past is, you know. The Silicon Valley, the superhero economy of Silicon Valley. You know, is the envy of the world, okay? I mean, it has produced massive wealth. And yet. You know, if you look at, you know, how much we've produced and how far housing and transportation have lagged, for example, job growth. You know, it's pretty clear that we haven't invested enough of the wealth that we've earned. Into the housing and transportation and social services infrastructure that it takes in order to keep. The global innovation engine of Silicon Valley going. And you can see this already. I mean, people leaving faster than they arrived this year, okay? In the last, last couple of years, it actually started before, before the pandemic and so forth. So how much wealth is there? Okay, well, if you went to the the state of the valley. Presentation by joint venture Silicon Valley last week. The total market capitalization in Silicon Valley and San Francisco of public companies is fourteen trillion dollars. And that doesn't include the private companies, which is, you know, over a dozen decacorns and a couple of hundred unicorns. So fourteen trillion dollars is a very, very, very large amount of money, but that's what the Silicon Valley is worth. The corporate Silicon Valley, corporate equity, market capitalization. The household wealth of Silicon Valley is pretty impressive too. It's it's a, it's a little over a trillion dollars. A third of that's tied up in private homes, so it's about, you know, it's about a little less than a tenth of what the corporate is. To put that in comparison, okay? Plan Bay Area twenty fifty. Which calls for hundreds of hundreds of thousands of affordable housing units, okay? Plan Bay Area twenty fifty, in the plan, they acknowledge that they will not meet their affordable housing targets. Without an as yet unidentified four hundred and sixty eight billion dollars of subsidies. Because affordable housing costs money. Okay, just to put that in comparison, measure A funds, one billion dollars, which is point oh one percent of the fourteen trillion. So if you believe that the valley. Hasn't invested enough of the proceeds. Of its operations. In the core housing, transportation and social service infrastructure it takes to be sustainable. And if you were looking for a few hundred billion dollars to do that. It's a lot easier to get that out of fourteen trillion than it is out of one trillion, especially when a third of that's tied up in in people's homes. And I think. There's none of us here. Who would look at that and say, you know. Instead of having fourteen trillion dollars. It would be okay to have thirteen and a half trillion dollars and have invested five hundred billion in housing and transportation around the ballot ballot. We might actually be a lot better off if we did that, if we had done. And in fact, if we had done that, we might not have thirteen and a half trillion dollars. We might actually have fifteen or sixteen trillion dollars. Because we wouldn't be grappling, okay, with the issues that we've got and trying to figure out how to keep people from leaving and companies from moving to Texas, okay? So where is all this going? Okay, again, back to the point of. Expanding and diversifying the funding base. Okay, over the rest of this year, we're going to be talking about. Various mechanisms to expand and diversify the funding base. In fact, I think we got one of these coming up in, you know, a month or something like that, okay? As we go through this discussion. People ought to have this picture in this context in their mind as we think about going through that. Okay, that was a little bit of a digression from the the from the grand jury report itself, but that's sort of the overview of the grand jury report. I mean, basically. They find that Mountain View. Created two hundred and sixty more affordable housing units than Palo Alto did from twenty fifteen to twenty nine. The process stuff we mostly agree with. The economic stuff, we agree with one of the mechanisms, not the other. And when you look through the report, that's kind of what it looks like.
Okay. I I'd like to go ahead and add some color of. Clearly, Eric is very passionate. That was a good presentation, but just to give maybe slightly different. High level summary on some of these things. Again, as Eric said, grand jury really only looked at a few years. They looked at twenty fifteen to twenty nineteen. And found that Mountain View produced two hundred and sixty more units in terms of production. That very first chart Eric showed quite a while ago. Palo Alto is actually a leader in Santa Clara County in terms of the total number of units. We're second only to Gilroy in a, on a per capita basis. And it's a little unfortunate that the report, you know, compared to cities, us and Mountain View. You know, which had the effect of kind of making it competitive. We we didn't really buy into that narrative. But I I do think it's worth noting that in terms of total units of affordable housing. Palo Alto has over twenty three hundred units. Mountain View has about fourteen twenty. And so while they produce more units in the last five years, they have a ways to go to catch up. And one of the reasons that is, is because we invest to maintain and revenue, renovate our existing affordable housing stock. And so our total is high because we ensure that that housing remains continues to be available. And so as we built housing stock over the years. You know, we're not, we're not replacing old affordable housing stock. We're actually incrementally adding to it. So currently between eight and nine percent of our total housing inventory is affordable. And I I've talked before about setting a goal of how much of our housing stock should be affordable. And and I I've proposed ten percent, which is a goal like Boulder, Colorado has put out there and some other cities. And and the reason I think it's important, it really lets us know what we're aiming for and have we got there or not. And some of the grand jury process suggestions were were kind of related to this. They were about. Community engagement, council leader, council leadership on housing. And I personally would like to see us lead by by setting quantifiable targets, like what percent of our housing should be affordable? And are we making progress? Some of the other process suggestions that we mostly agreed with. We agreed with with a lot of what was in that in the report. The report focuses a lot on specific plans as a primary tool. And we disagreed that it, that it's the only planning tool or should be a primary focus. And then they also criticized the NB cap, saying it was a failure, when in fact it's still in progress. We think it was premature to. To say that. There are also claims that Mountain View processes applications faster. They didn't really provide any data to back that up. And we we are pretty good with a code compliant project. We were pretty good about getting those approved. And then Eric, you know, really outlined the economics. And it clearly, we thought it was one of the the most important issues and we spent a lot of time on that. You know, we have done things like raising the impact fees for a hundred percent affordable housing projects. You know, the reports said that Palo Alto should have a affordable housing fund. You know, we we know that we do. We've spent forty million dollars out of it since twenty fifteen. Currently have about seven million in that in funds. And so, you know, when it came to the economics, we wanted to present a counter viewpoint. We think we've been innovative in working to address housing. Net of the demand. As Eric showed, our jobs housing growth rate has flattened. The rents in Sunnyvale, Mountain View have increased more rapidly than here. And so that was really our biggest diversions, I think, with the grand jury in terms of strategy. We basically just rejected the idea that you should simply look at production without considering the additional housing demand. I'll stop there.
Thank you. So at this time. We'd like to go to the members of the public who would like to speak on this item. And so please, if if you wish to speak. Put in your name at this time. We'll give it a minute for people to sign up. So so far, we just have. Three speakers. So we'll go ahead and begin and keep it open for a couple more minutes for people, for speakers to sign up. Each speaker will have up to three minutes to speak. And our first speaker is Scott O'Neil. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. Um, I want all my neighbors to see this presentation because it really shows how this city views killing jobs as the answer to the housing crisis. When you talk about that line flattening out, that's what you're talking about. How many jobs you've killed? And that's gross. I mean, everyone here, we live here with, you know, we've established ourselves. We've got ours. You've got yours. And now no one else gets to have any opportunity, not immigrants, not refugees, not your own children and grandchildren. It's always possible to build more housing than jobs and prices have to come down if the city creates a condition of housing abundance. When housing is a, a, is abundant, it is intrinsically affordable. But this council has for decades kept housing of all types functionally illegal to build. That includes affordable housing, which the city is not taking a leadership role in. Three of the current projects in the city are the result of the county proposing product, projects. That's teacher housing East Charleston and Buena Vista. I'm sure the city will take credit in future graphs, but it's important to note that the city really isn't taking a leadership role in affordable housing production within the city. But do you want to know how to produce affordable housing opportunities without any funding? Here's the secret. Just legalize housing. Seriously, drive around the Bay Area. You'll find Teslas parked outside garbage dated housing stock that's thirty, forty, fifty years old. The reason what should be naturally affordable housing stock has been bid up is because we, well, you don't allow enough housing of all types, produce luxury and you'll create more affordable vacancies down market as people move up out of the older stock into the newer stock. People, that's a vacancy. Someone will move into it and it will be cheaper. It will be competing with that newer stock, driving rents down. Produce middle income and you'll create more affordable vacancies down market as people move up. There's a recent study out of, out of Helsinki showing this in very fine detail. They call it moving chains. In Helsinki, they just know where everyone is living and they know how much they're paying. So when they see a big market rate project complete, they can trace these moving chains and show how luxury housing produces affordable vacancies. This isn't hard. Stop trying to kill jobs. Our children need those jobs or they will move far away from us and we will need plane tickets to see our grandchildren. Instead, build homes for them to live in, for homeless people to live in, for current residents to live in. Just build the housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Keith Rektall to be followed by Rebecca Sanders.
Okay, thank you. Uh, first, I'm speaking just for myself tonight. Uh, I do appreciate the grand jury taking the time to investigate this. This is an important issue. It makes our city better to have a variety of people in the city. I also think the council ad hoc, I thought their response was very, very thoughtful, accepted appropriate criticism, but also pushed back when the criticism was unwarranted. It was well done. Uh, some of the grand jury criticism is based on the notion that Palo Alto's lack of mixed use projects means that Palo Alto is not addressing affordable housing. Uh, to their credit, the grand jury finding fourteen shows that the grand jury eventually realized the flaw in this commercial development approach. But many people support the commercial development approach and it's appealing to think that simply giving the private sector some painless concessions will solve our housing problems. But these concessions can have serious downsides, including generating more affordable housing demand than they provide. A figure two on packet page two forty one shows that Mountain View's mixed use approach generated more demand for affordable housing than it produced. I thought the discussion in appendix one is excellent. Uh, these numbers are hard to pin down, but the appendix does a very good job of describing possible approaches. Uh, but consider another data point. Redwood City now is currently has twelve mixed use projects. And they will build nineteen hundred market rate units and nine hundred affordable units. Uh, that may sound good, but the project's three million square feet of office space will generate demand for nine thousand new housing units with at least four thousand of them being affordable units. So this is incredibly important. By building office to generate nine hundred affordable units, Redwood City is generating demand for at least four thousand affordable units. That's not a good ratio. We're just digging the hole deeper and deeper. So this mixed use project not only doesn't solve the housing problem, makes it much, much worse. So in summary, the, the Palo Alto City Council should continue to consider how their affordable housing plans affect both supply and demand. This will likely require some local revenue sources like business taxes instead of using commercial development. Uh, this will take more work, but it's the only practical long-term option. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll be closing our, um, ability for additional public speakers to sign up. Our next speaker is Rebecca Sanders to be followed by Robert Moss, who's here in person. Welcome.
Oh, thank you, uh, council members. Yes, I'm Becky Sanders. I live in Ventura. Uh, of course, we're very interested in affordable housing, affordable housing issues here. We've all got our eye on NevCap. We've all been really active in, you know, wanting, um, commercial uses over there at NevCap to be sunsetted so that it can be all housing rather than mixed use. I'm really glad I got to hear Mr. O'Neil and Mr. Rektall's, um, uh, arguments. Uh, and I just want to say I'm aligning myself with, um, with Mr. Rektall this evening. I have to say that, um, in my research and my reading and also seeing what's been going on in the, in the, uh, in the valley, a commercial development cannot solve, mixed use commercial development cannot solve our housing crisis. Uh, there are more demand, building more housing with office just creates more demand, as Mr. Rektall said, and we cannot build our way out of this. Uh, so I also just want to say, uh, I think the way to get affordable housing is what we did. You know, getting money for, from the state with Project Home Key. And we should not be mandated to build housing without a way to pay for it. And I'd also realistically, it's not fair to expect for-profit developers to just, you know, give away their farms. I mean, we have to give a lot away to get any, uh, concessions, uh, from, uh, commercial developers. And I completely understand that they're in the business to make money. Uh, that is not what they want to do is solve our housing crisis for us. So, you know, you, usually I, um, I guess I hear a lot that, you know, you only hear from me when, um, you guys got it wrong. But I want to say I really appreciate the hard work that the city staff and the ad hoc committee did in putting this report together. Uh, well done. Thank you for, uh, you know, giving it a real critical eye. Um, and again, um, appendixes were, I thought were very, very clear. So, okay, that's enough from me for now, but you guys, you got it right. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Robert Moss to be followed by Winter Dellenbach. Welcome. Uh, let's see, we need the
Yeah. This is not a new topic. This has been going on for over fifty years. I can send you staff reports going back to the nineteen seventies, talking about the deed for affordable housing. There are two issues when you talk about affordability. The first is a high cost of land. And the second is a high cost of construction. Raw land in Palo Alto runs between two and a half and three and a half million dollars an acre. Uh, that's based on my going to various open houses recently and seeing how much they're charging for tear down houses. And the paper recently had talked about a cost of over eight hundred thousand dollars to build, uh, six or seven hundred square foot, uh, apartment building condo. So those costs make it almost impossible for ordinary construction to be affordable. So how do we get there? Well, for decades, going back to again to the nineteen seventies, Palo Alto has required a proportion of all new housing developments to be affordable. Originally it was forty percent. And nobody ever built any housing. So it's been reduced, reduced. Now it's about fifteen percent. That's a little bit of, uh, let's see, satisfying the need. But I think the practical way of satisfying our housing need will be to find land that's free or very, very cheap. And if you look at the city, there were very few places where you have that opportunity. Again, many years ago, they considered going to the foothills and the, uh, vacant land up there. The cost of construction for streets and utilities was so high, it was impractical. So on a practical level, I would suggest that the most likely way to get housing sites would be to work with nonprofits and churches. And see if you can get churches to dedicate part of their parking lots to housing areas. I don't think most of the churches will do that, but I think a few of them might. And it will give us a little bit of, uh, positive movement toward affordability. But outside of that, I can't come up with a real good way of getting affordable housing of any quantity in Palo Alto. I think it's going to be extremely difficult.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Winter Dellenbach to be followed by Jessica Roth. Welcome.
Yes, I, I have an ongoing frustration around, uh, the whole discussion of affordable housing. I thought the presentations by, uh, council members, uh, Phil Seth and DuBois were very good. And thank you very much. You clearly put a lot of effort in, um, formulating your presentation. My frustration is, is that, um, funding is really at the heart of so much of this. And, um, and it's good. Yes, there are a variety of funding sources, federal tax credits, uh, Project Home Key is fantastic. Measure A for the county, all of those things. Uh, and, and yes, our development fund. Um, but on, on a much larger scale, um, the state, the ongoing frustration I have is that the state passes laws or A-BAG has RENA numbers for us, six thousand eighty six units and with no funding. And says, city, you must find sites and you have, you know, uh, you're to build this many units and you have a housing element and you're supposed to show the sites for these. But cities don't build, don't, don't, don't build houses. Developers build houses. And we have the most wonderful nonprofit developer, Alta Housing. Um, and they have to pay for land, just like a for-profit developer has to pay for land. They have to compete for that land. They have to come up for money in, and land such as Palo Alto, land is, um, uh, incredibly expensive. We all know this. So the state, uh, the feds, yes, but the state should be, if they want, uh, this kind of intensive housing, they should be coming up for, uh, funding, I think, funding nonprofit housing developers directly to build that housing. They should be funding Alta Housing and Eden Housing and Mid Peninsula Housing Coalition to build that housing. Um, and, and I think that if people criticize Palo Alto, you should be building more affordable housing. I think that they're in the next sentence, they should say, and I will do everything I can to get the state, uh, to provide more funding for it. But I don't often hear that from people that criticize Palo Alto. And, uh, I think, uh, those folks should look at themselves for that. I also want to correct an error. It was Buena Vista wasn't saved by the county. The county participated along with the city of Palo Alto and putting up fourteen and a half million dollars out of developer funds to help buy Buena Vista. And, um, the people of Palo Alto insisted that Buena Vista be saved along with the residents of Buena Vista. And it was a great communal effort. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jessica Roth to be followed by our final speaker, Amy Sung. Welcome.
Hello, council. Thank you for your time tonight. My name is Jessica Roth. I am a Palo Alto resident. And I am also a small business owner. Uh, I also am a below market rate recipient. And I, um, agree with everything that, um, Winter said above me. However, I just want you to keep in mind when you are making your decisions that people like me and businesses like mine would not be in Palo Alto if it weren't for, uh, the below market rate programs. Uh, my husband and I were on the below market rate program list for fifteen years before we received a unit. I believe that list has over three hundred people currently on it and it's possible it's even closed. There is a massive need for below market rate housing in Palo Alto. Uh, there's amazing projects happening right now with, um, the teachers project in, by California Avenue. And I think that's a great direction we're headed in. Also currently, we have a, um, historic level of vacancies in the retail sector and office spaces. So I would strongly encourage that you look at below market rate or lower income housing, uh, as opposed to building and growing the office spaces in retail spaces in Palo Alto. Uh, thank you very much. You all have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. And our final speaker is Amy Sung. Welcome.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good evening, council. Um, thank you so much for the, uh, meeting tonight. My name is Amy Sung. I am a homeowner and I lived in Palo Alto. I am also a realtor. I'm here tonight to speak my mind. I think Allah has been set and the time to start housing production is now. We have spent so much time talking about jobs and housing balance or rather imbalance. And I find myself nodding my head, listening to the speakers before me. And they all have excellent points of how we can achieve what we set out to do, and that is to produce a housing. The fact is that we are a high opportunity area with good access to good jobs and good education. I think that it's clear that the task at hand that the city is tasked, tasked with producing six thousand and ninety six new housing units over the next eight years. It is very interesting. Since twenty sixteen, it was the year I was involved in complaint in the eight years since. I find myself asking, what does our city have to show in terms of a housing production? The few projects, as it was mentioned by previous speakers, the, um, Buena Vista. I noticed that the two projects, the teachers' housing and the project on East Charleston, these are all county proposed the projects. So again, I really think that we have long past the moment to continue on the discussion on jobs and housing balance. I think it's a time to focus on how do we, you know, engaging with the development community to see what economically is feasible and what barriers it could be removed? And more importantly, what financial options should be explored and considered? And for that, I wanted to thank you for hearing me out. I am so ambivalent of talking tonight, fearing that it will fall to undead ears. And yet I figure this is an important opportunity to speak out my mind as somebody who wishes the best for the city I lived in and I love. Thank you.
Thank you. And on that note, we will return to the council for discussion. And what we're uh, looking tonight is for council support or feedback on the draft responses that, um, our ad hoc committee has composed to the grand jury report. So I will open it up for council members to, um, speak to that issue. Council member Cormac.
Thank you, Mayor Burt. Um, I want to thank, um, all the members of the civil grand jury who took the time to research this important topic. And I want to thank my colleagues. And I want to thank my colleagues who spent time presenting their information and approach on this. Let me be a little bit more specific about the report itself. Page 13, I am grateful that they started by acknowledging how complex this is. Page 18, talking about precise plans. I want to come back and ask Mr. Lee a question or two on that, so I'll signal that now. Page 22, I think was interesting, and the description of mixed-use development not being accepted by some people in Palo Alto. I thought that was very nicely phrased. Page 25, talking about the role of council members. I think one of the things we should view this tonight as is an opportunity to pause and reflect and look forward, right, as opposed to back. A lot of the discussion tonight and in the report itself has been about looking backwards. And I personally think that there is more that each of us can do in explaining this topic, not just advocating for it. Page 34, going through the levels of funding, you know, eight to 15 sources. This, this is definitely important. Okay, Mr. Lee, precise plans. So I find myself in an interesting position. We have this, you know, report here that says we should use precise plans. We know they've worked elsewhere. And I have two colleagues saying we shouldn't use precise plans. What are your thoughts?
Yeah, no, I think it's, it's a, it's a fair question and you know, I think Mountain View has a good number of precise plans and they lay out what they want to see in those different, those different areas. We have, we have SOFA and we're working on NVCAP. I professionally don't believe that you need a precise plan to determine where you're going to place your affordable housing. But you do need clear zoning regulations and we do need to communicate where geographically we, we anticipate and provide development incentives for that type of housing. So again, I think it's, you know, it's a bit of a pick 'em, you know, on that, but I don't think you need it to to, you know, identify where you want to build housing.
Okay, so let me see if I can translate that. It can be effective, but you don't feel that it's necessary in Palo Alto at this time.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's appropriate, you know, and also precise plans take a fair amount of energy, staff, resources and, and time to do that. So, you know, you can put your time and energy into that, or we can put our time and energy into other co-changes. And as the, as the grand jury report suggests, make it clear, I think there's some room for us to, to improve the clarity of where our affordable housing is encouraged in Palo Alto.
Okay, I'm just thinking about downtown. We talked about this a couple of weeks ago. I think it's possible a precise plan could be useful since we're, I think we should be looking at doing a variety of things downtown and rethinking how it works. So, okay, that's helpful. Thank you. While I have you, though, someone mentioned that there are new, there are some new funds coming into our Affordable Housing Fund, which we had emptied. Am I right that those are coming from the so-called luxury homes on Maybelle Avenue? The ones that we said they could come later?
I believe those funds have been contributed at this point.
Okay, and just for everyone's reminder, you know, that's where we had hoped to build senior affordable housing instead. And for those of you keeping track at home, those homes are listed in our Weeda Behavior report tonight in a strange coincidence. Okay, I only have about a minute left and I will come back to the letter on, on the next topic go-round. And I hope there is one because I think this is an important topic and for some of us, this is our first opportunity to speak publicly about it. You know, the jobs-housing ratio. The flaw with that is assuming that people live in the city where they work. It's not true for people who live here in Palo Alto. Two-thirds of the people in Palo Alto actually work elsewhere, which suggests that people don't come here to live here necessarily to work in the community. So while it's a helpful discussion, I don't think it should be the only metric and the focus of, of the rest of our discussions. I see that my time is elapsing, so I will come back to the findings and recommendations on the next go-round. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to also thank Councilmember Phil Seth and Councilmember DuBois for your, and, and staff for this response letter. I found it, I found it a really, a very powerful response, looking forward to discussing it more. Also want to thank as well the Santa Clara County Civil Grand Jury for, for writing this report. I mean, and, and just studying this incredibly important issue. And I'm glad we're being able to have this discussion. The amount of work and time that must have gone into this is staggering. And in some areas, it's, I think it's really important that, that we as a city really kind of accept our shortcomings and acknowledge that there's much more to be done, especially in the area of actual affordable housing productions. And several of the grand jury report recommendations, I, I do think are appropriate and really wise for us to accept or, or study further. But I also think it's important to really dive deeper into this report and, and point out some of, some of the flaws or miscarryments or regulations. And, yeah, I don't mean that in a, in a defensive way, but really kind of in a, in a purely objective and fact-based critique that I think is really going to be able to better help us understand and identify the problems. So that way we can have a, a good constructive conversation about it. And I think that kind of the first area I want to focus on, and Councilmember Phil Seth brought this up already. I do find it interesting, the grand jury report really praises Mountain View for raising affordable housing funds because of their commercial, their mixed-use development, and condemns Palo Alto for having an annual cap on office space development. But then it really kind of fails to further study the adverse impacts that increased office and commercial growth are going to have on long-term housing prices, but really worsening that jobs-housing imbalance. And I agree with Councilmember Cormac, that is not the only metric that we should be, that we should be using, but I do think is an important one. So, yeah, I think it's good that the report acknowledged that possibility, but I, I really wish it would have gone further. I think we could have a good conversation on that. I think diving into the numbers a little bit more, if we look at the growth in housing prices over the last 10 years, I think it really actually shows a different story than what is being portrayed in, in the grand jury report. So according to Zillow.com, I did a little, little additional research here. Mountain View's average home price in 2012 was $809,000. Today, it's about $2.08 million. That's an 88% increase. Palo Alto's average house price in 2012 was 1.57 million, and today it's 3.74 million. That's an increase of 82%. So that's, I mean, that's not good, but I think we do have to have a clear understanding of what is reality and reality is. Mountain View's growth in housing costs have exceeded Palo Alto over the last 10 years, but the report is silent on that. So I think, you know, ultimately, end of the day, we need to be able to ask ourselves, is the goal to simply produce more housing? Or is it to address the issue of affordability? To me, that answer is, is easy. We need to address the issue of affordability. At Palo Alto, like almost all jurisdictions in California, we meet our market-rate housing goals. Where we fail is in producing those affordable housing units. But as Councilmember Phil Seth and DuBois pointed out, we're doing a better job at that than, than Mountain View as well. So I think simply adding market-rate housing or, or worsening the jobs-housing imbalance through greater production of, of commercial use is really not the way to be able to achieve those goals. All we have to do is look at, look at Mountain View, who as of 2019 had exceeded their moderate income and above-moderate income housing goals by 158%. And surely that number is much higher three years later. And yet their percentage of housing cost growth is, is exceeding our own. And so I do think we, we have a bit of, of a comparison here between Palo Alto and, and Mountain View as far as sort of this argument that we've often heard about the kind of the trickle-down housing effect. And by building more market-rate or luxury housing, that's going to trickle down to the lower segments of the market. We're just looking at the difference between Mountain View and Palo Alto. Mountain View, I'd say, has, has done that over the last 10 years. And, and we have been much more focused on affordable housing production and, and limiting that office growth and being able to really focus more on, on housing production. I, I think it's telling a different story, and I think that's one of the areas that we want to make sure that we're, that we dive a little deeper into. And I see I'm, I'm running out, I'm out of time now, so I'll, I'll continue on the next round.
Okay. Councilmember Phil Seth.
Well, yes, just briefly, you know, I, I think that, you know, I, I think Mountain View is part of the solution here, you know, I, you know, I don't know why the grand jury chose to, sort of took the direction they did. But, you know, Mountain View, they get this stuff too, right? I mean, Mountain View is one of the few cities that actually has established standards, okay? For, I mean, Appendix One there, you know, is, Mountain View actually has established standards for how much affordable housing you need for, per 1,000 square foot of, of, of commercial space and how much housing you need. One and a half units per 1,000 feet or something. They actually have standards for this, right? And, you know, the whole mixed-use thing, they get it. And I think to their immense credit, the mixed-use thing, they're trying to make it work, okay? And they're trying to negotiate very hard with developers and see if actually, you know, with property owners, and see if they actually can, can reach, you know, a point where it, you know, the economics and the demand can balance each other. Now, I think a lot of us look at this problem and go, you know, you know, it's just too expensive, construction costs are too high, land costs are too high, they're just too far apart, you know? We're not going to be able to make this work, you know? So we have to, just as an affordable housing financing tool, commercial, we're not going to, we're too far apart, right? But Mountain View is really trying to do it, and I hope they succeed, right? I mean, I think they, I think it's really hard. I mean, the problems, the, the challenges they have in North Ventura area plan, you know, are not that different from NVCAP. I mean, you get a big clash between the private developers have their economic constraints. They have to fit, they push them to more and more office space. You know, and the community wants more affordable housing and parks and stuff like that. You know, there's an inherent tension between those things, and I think, but, but they're trying, right? So I think, I, I, my hat's off to Mountain View. And they've also done something very innovative too. I mean, Mountain View and also East Palo Alto sort of going after and saying, you know, the industry, the, the business taxes, right? I mean, the industry that produced the wealth, but also produced the demand, you know, we need to equalize that a little bit. And to, it's to Mountain View's credit, I mean, they showed the rest of us that it was possible, right? And I think, you know, we're going to do that, you know, or we're considering that too. I, I think, you know, Mountain View is part of the solution here. Oh, and to Councilmember Cormac's point about jobs-housing ratio, I, I completely agree. I think we all, it's, it's one metric out of a number. And just for example, right, I mean, if you have 5,000 jobs and 1,000 homes, or 10,000 jobs and 2,000 homes, it's the same jobs-housing ratio, but on the second, you have thousands more people with no place to live. So, you know, the, the jobs-housing is only one metric.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Koo.
Thank you. I, I also want to thank Councilmember Phil Seth and DuBois for all the work that they put in this, as well as to staff who have worked on this response letter to the grand jury. At the same time, I also want to thank the grand jury members for their service on the grand jury. It's not an easy task and it takes a lot of time. On the site, it says that they enter this service with interest and curiosity in learning more about the administration and operation of the government in the county in which they live. So hopefully, my comments tonight will be viewed as learning. So I also am not really comprehending why they use the two cities and they put this report the way that is. You know, we're all trying to resolve an issue in our own manner, in our own ways. Each city comes up with different ways in order to, to address the problems. So Mountain View chooses to do it the way that they're doing it. It's their prerogative. So I am just perplexed by this report, which seems to pit the two cities and, and perhaps even blame. And there's no blame to go around. This is, this is a problem that the entire state is facing. And, you know, ABAG and MTC and HCD, the state legislature, they're really not helping matters whatsoever. So it just puts another difficult point that we have to make. You know, this report carries a really clever title, but as the staff report says, it misses the mark. And also, I find it a little bit simplistic in its way of approaching how to do things. And, you know, Mountain View, one of the main things that I think in Palo Alto, what we're trying to do is also not to cause any displacement or disruptions. So Buena Vista comes to mind because that is one that we've worked very hard along with county to ensure the families that are living there, the people that are living there, they're, they are not causing any disruption. There, there are children that is going to the schools, and, you know, that was an important part for us. Which is why, you know, when the President Hotel came up and those families and the people that were living there was, was displaced. And we don't know how many were relocated in Palo Alto, or how many people moved out of the city. So that, there's no monitoring that, and, and that's unfortunate. And the whole President Hotel matter was just very unfortunate. But while Buena Vista is designated as below-market subsidized housing, here, President Hotel was not. They're actually affordable, not because, at, they're affordable at market rates because of the condition or it's an older building. So there is a lot of this kind of housing that is disappearing. So we're not doing enough preservation in the state to ensure that affordable market-rate house, housing is continued, is available. And they're, and they're being, and they're disappearing. One of the things that I looked up was the fact that Mountain View demolished 20 rent-controlled units at the Royal Viking for 15 townhomes. And we know based on what Councilmember Stone had looked up on Zillow, and also because in my profession, these townhomes are going to, are not selling at below-market rates. They're going to sell at a million six or a million seven. If you look at some of the townhomes out in the Wisman era, you see that they're selling for a million eight and so forth. And then in 2019, there was the approval for the demolition of 59 rent-controlled apartments for 55 market-rate townhomes. This is again in Mountain View on Rock Street. Then in September of 2021, there was the approval of the demolition of 29 rent-controlled apartments and replaced with a four-story, 121-unit condominium complex on Gamal Way in Mountain View. You know, so, so there's a lot of displacement in all of these demolition. Infill, and then on top of that, those were also deed-restricted rent-controlled housing. So, so there's, there's a lot of things to be said about not disrupting. Then I wanted to go into that there is also a trend where there's a lot of the deed-restricted housing, they are, throughout the state, the, the affordable housing units are being lost because their time period has come up, they're, it's expiring. And so those are turning into market-rate. They're going to convert to market-rate. And there, and throughout the state, there's about 15,044 units of affordable housing that has been lost since 1997. And there's going to be 34,554 that are at risk of turning into market-rate housing in the next 10 years. So every year, every year, we're losing these affordable housing units because they're converting. So I think, you know, the county, county of Santa Clara alone, it's, there's about 2,059 or 7% of its, of its existing affordable housing stock is going to be turning to market-rate. So this is just in Santa Clara. So perhaps, you know, the, the, I'm sorry, I see my time, but perhaps the grand jury should be looking at that as well, instead of looking at the two cities and, and causing this, this, this unfortunate comparison. I'll come back. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and wade in with a few comments. So first on the question of So first on the question of, uh, jobs and housing, uh, balance, uh, and the way that. Um, the recommended, uh, city response included that. I think it's important to note that that metric has been used. Uh, really pervasively to, uh, look at Palo Alto's housing needs. And so, i- it's not Palo Alto who initiated that reference. The historic context for that is that Palo Alto, when Silicon Valley was really started and built. In the first decades, Palo Alto was very much the regional job center, its role in that was embraced and, and, um. And valued because of the way it, it drove the economic engine and helping to create Silicon Valley, but today we have a different circumstance. The surrounding communities, um, that were largely residential communities of, of Mountain View and Sunnyvale and. And, um, Menlo Park. Are today now, uh, very strong job generators, growing jobs at considerably faster rates, and they're growing housing. And, um, so the context has changed and we're faced with the reality that we are today. I also wanted to just, uh, refresh, uh, folks on some of the things that have been done in, in. The last couple of years, the city has taken a number of steps in creating the, uh, affordable housing overlay, which, um. Increased the standard height for affordable housing, increased the floor area ratio, baseline to two point four. Eliminated a density limit, um, to the units, uh, reduced the parking and streamlined the, uh, the approval process. And those were all factors that helped contribute to the Wilton Court, uh, affordable housing development. Uh, then we have, uh, brought back the PHZ, um, which is planned community zoning for housing specifically. And, um. And all those things, uh, have been important measures, but, um, the, the report also talked about whether the, the city and the leadership has, um. Taken a vocal enough approach, and I think that we, we have taken a strong approach, we haven't relied on. Rhetoric primarily, but we've been focusing on actions. Um, I note in the last city council campaign, um, we had strong consensus among the candidates. Uh, for, uh, identifying, uh. Public land sites like we have done recently for the Life Moves project, like we have just set forward on, uh, identifying surface parking. Lot sites as prospective, preferably affordable housing sites. On renter protections, which this council just, uh, took significant action on recently. And very importantly, as, as Councilmember Phil Seth had emphasized, on funding for affordable housing. Because the local share of funding is leveraged against, uh, uh, philanthropic contributions, federal, state and county funds. And so having enough of the local share is critical for all these projects to go forward. Uh, we recently in, increased the impact fees on commercial development, and we have, uh, the business tax, uh, that. We hope to be able to utilize for increasing, uh, a portion of that tax to increasing our affordable housing fund. I frankly hope that many of the, um, uh, folks who have been most critical of the city on housing, but have been conspicuously silent. Or not active in many circumstances on the measures that we have taken to, uh, increase the funding for affordable housing. That they're now going to step forward and support those really critical actions, because that's the backbone of the pro- progress we're going to make. We'll note also that, um. The, our report didn't say we didn't believe in specific plans at all. I certainly spent, um, several years. Uh, with our sofa plan and the NV cap, I think is a good process. Uh, what we did see was that, um, we were not as a community willing to have, uh, a specific plan that. Exacerbated our housing problems, but ones that, uh, actually reduced it, and. Uh, we've just seen from our city staff, uh, as noted, uh, today, it'll be, come, uh, public, uh, very shortly, uh, but. Uh, we have a proposal within the NV cap area that has been percolating for a, a good number of months. That's for a hundred and twenty-nine units of a hundred percent affordable housing. And, uh, all of that at fifty percent or less of the AMI, so, um, very low income and extremely low income. Uh, affordable housing, uh, and that's an outgrowth of the actions that we've been taking. Sometimes these take some time to, um, to come to fruition, and this won't happen overnight because it's going to need. Local funds, uh, leveraged with other funding sources to make it happen, and that goes back to the need for us to increase our affordable housing funding. So, we can, um. Now go, uh, to the second round, and I think, uh, in short order, uh, we should look at, uh, taking action on the draft response. So, Councilmember Cormac, you said you wanted to speak again?
Certainly, I was just waiting to see if Councilmember Tanaka wanted to speak in this round, but. Don't see his hand. Okay. Um, so now turning to the letter, um. Few concerns within, I'm, uh, in the overview and, um. While I appreciate that Councilmember Phil Seth may believe this statement, I'm, I'm not yet convinced, so I'm in the halfway down the second page. Quote, Palo Alto believes that in the mid peninsula, the economics of private developer investment now make for-profit mixed-use projects with positive net of demand affordable housing nearly impossible without subsidies. May very well be true, but I'm not prepared to sign on to a letter, um, unless we, we have more information about that, so. Um, not sure how detailed we're gonna get in this motion, but I just wanted to flag that. Um, happy to see in finding three, the agreement that there can be more council advocacy. In recommendation three, um, in the response, I think we are really missing an opportunity to list our partners. Starting with Alta Housing and including others. I don't think surveying residents, uh, really increases community support. So I feel that that, um, that one could definitely be beefed up. Okay, on the next page, um, I will say that I disagree with. The response to finding four, which is disagree, um, you know, regardless of what the council. You know, has voted on, et cetera, I think there's an opportunity to aid in resident acceptance of affordable housing. Um, Alta Housing did such a lovely job with that video, um, with the tours of Treehouse, um. There is an opportunity here to do more, so I am not comfortable with us disagreeing with that, um, finding. Um, NV cap, we could debate, but I'll leave that aside for this evening. Um, not quite sure where we landed on precise plans. Now I'm on finding six, the response packet page two forty-four. I heard no, I heard not necessary, I heard sometimes, so we might want to come up with a more comprehensive answer there. Um, again, I'll just re- reiterate my plea for downtown. Okay, um, now I'm on recommendation six B. Okay, yes, primary challenges are economic, but I'm not sure they're related to commercial office space. I think they're far more related to private wealth. Um, which is driving up these numbers, which, um, Councilmember Stone so helpfully provided. So another way to look at your numbers, Councilmember Stone, is that it takes another eight hundred K in Mountain View to buy the house, but it takes another one point six million in Palo Alto, so like twice as much. So, we definitely have an economic problem. I'm not convinced it's specifically related to, um. Commercial office space and jobs within Palo Alto. Um, now I'm on finding nine, um, I think we could take a little bit more responsibility here. Um, you know, the Palo Alto process is pretty well-known, and, um. You know, I appreciate that we're not familiar with other people's processes, but I, I do think we could take a little bit more responsibility. I think that'd be appropriate. All right, next one, um, okay, now I'm on finding twelve. You know, I don't actually think the, that the grand jury was mistaken, I think this is a question of timeframes. And I think looking forward, um, we do not yet currently have a great funding strategy. And maybe we have some things that are gonna work out, and maybe we should go back and look at the documentary transfer tax and have a search charge at. You know, a certain percent above median, I'm, I'm, I'm coming to the belief that I think that might be worth it, but. I just encourage us to view this less as a battle about this report, and if you want to include that, that's fine, but let's also add in going forward. Um, you know, I, I think that'd be more constructive way to handle this. And I think now I get to, are all these appendices included in the letter? Is that the intention of the writers? Yes, okay. All right, so I think that brings me to my final comment right on time, uh, which is in appendix four. Um, in the first bullet, I, it's, it's not accurate to say that twenty eighteen was a citizen ballot initiative without expanding. Yes, there was a citizen ballot initiative, but, um, the council voted five to four. To just make that change rather than send it to the citizens, if I'm remembering this correctly. So, I realize it's a small thing, but I wouldn't want people to think that the citizens of Palo Alto had voted on that when they didn't. It's under demand suppression. Um, and then finally, I'm not, um. About pipeline of interesting projects, now that's halfway down that page in appendix four. I'm having trouble reconciling what, um, Director Late told us last, a few weeks ago, which is, there wasn't anything in the pipeline with this statement. With what I just heard from the mayor, so, uh, whenever we get this next version, hopefully those can, those can be reconciled. Thank you.
And I'll just, um, for purposes of how we're going to proceed tonight, um, I'd, uh, like to recommend that the, um. The ad hoc committee members, um, take whatever, uh, recommended changes to the report that they agree with. And look at, um, incorporating them, uh, in the motion. That we will have, and then we can decide on what happens with any other remaining issues that you have not incorporated. So what we would consider would be, uh, something that would be based upon feedback you're hearing tonight, that, um. Uh, you, uh, proposed that we would incorporate. So, who would like to go next? Councilmember DeBois.
Yeah, just listening to some of the comments, I, I do want to note, again, w- we thought there was a lot of good stuff there in the grand jury report, hope that came through. Um, some of the items did have very short timeframes for making a lot of changes. And, um, Eric and I did not draft this report on our, on our own, we worked with staff, we did a outline together. So there's a lot of staff input in this response letter. Um, you know, price, precise plans is an example, there was concern about the cost and the time it takes to do those. And, um, the basic idea is that, um, not that we would never do a precise plan, but that we didn't really see it as a primary tool to generate affordable housing in particular. I think that's what Director Late said earlier when asked. And the other comment, I think other people have made the point as well, um, where we weren't suggesting that jobs housing is the only metric or. Even a key metric, I think, again, it is a regional metric, the point is that if every city increases its job housing imbalance, then the overall imbalance increases. And, um. You know, things have changed where a lot of these bedroom communities around us are now job generators as well. And then I, I think when we get to motions, um, you know, Councilmember Phil Seth may probably say it better than I can about. Uh, the viability of these mixed use projects and why we came to that conclusion, we had some pretty. Detailed demand models, and we looked at, looked at a bunch of information, and, um, I think we were pretty convinced that that conclusion was correct.
Okay, Vice Mayor Koo, oh, did we lose her there? Oh, there you are.
I'm sorry, um. I, um. I was just, um, I wanted to finish some of my comments before, but I see that you are entertaining motions now.
Uh, we certainly can, yes.
If that's the case, then I'll, I'm just gonna move the staff recommendation and the letter that is provided. In the staff report. Accept the grand jury response letter, yes.
Have a second?
All second.
All right, and would you like to speak to your motion?
Um, I think, you know, um, the, um, ad hoc committee, um, Councilmember DeBois and Phil Seth has spoken to most of it. I think, you know, um, they, they have, um, reviewed it, and there is, uh, compelling, um, um. Analysis through, throughout their, uh, response letter, um, so I am pretty satisfied with it. I think, like I said earlier, there are different ways, um, for each city to, uh, come up with the funding for, for affordable housing. It's just that Palo Alto has a much more intentional purpose in developing and providing genuine, uh, affordable housing. And that's a deed restricted below market rate. Uh, instead of using the trickle-down method of building housing for, 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 uh, luxury and hoping that it will trickle down at some point. For affordable, for, um, the genuine type, then, um, I think this is just a method that we're going with. Um, and not, and really not furthering, uh, office development and placing a cap on it, so at least that we can catch up. Thank you.
And Councilmember Phil Seth.
Yeah, thanks, I sort of furiously typed and trying to capture, uh, uh, Councilmember Cormac's comments, but, uh, but. I, she, she may have them written down somewhere if she could send them to us, right? And we can sort of figure out what we can, if we can work them in, I, you know, you know, I think between, you know, the ad hoc and the staff, we were. You, you, you know, we were maybe not as precise as we could have been about some of the language on, uh, on this, we're sort of trying to capture a lot of stuff at once. Um, I wonder if, uh, uh, the mayor, the, the maker of the motion would accept, uh, if we need it, and all that staff on this. Uh, do we need to call out the, the, uh, the change in language about eminent domain that, uh, Director Late mentioned earlier? Or does staff not need us to put that in the motion?
I think that has already been indicated, it'll be incorporated in the fire, final letter as a clarification.
Okay. Yeah, in that case, uh, in that case, I'm fine.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Cormac.
Um, okay, a little unsure how to proceed here, but I'm happy to send an email to Councilmember Phil Seth after the meeting with my comments. Um, and I think I'll do that in lieu of voting for this motion. Um, I think it would probably take an awful lot of time, and I don't know how successful it would be, but to the extent that my comments are incorporated. Then I would hope to be able to vote for it when it comes on consent, I realize that's.
Well, I, I think we're going to need to identify which of your comments. Uh, the maker and the, the maker and the second or. Are, uh, agreeing to incorporate, because we, we're having, we're gonna have a motion, the motion is. The, the draft report with the exception of whatever amendments that we have.
I didn't hear the maker, sorry, the second or agree to accept any of them, I heard him ask for them, so.
Yeah, but.
I'm just assuming they, I'm not assuming they'll be incorporated.
As a point of order here, just a moment. We have a motion on the floor, and, uh, the only way that it is changed is if we have amendments to it. And, um, so that's, that's the way we would need to proceed, there, we, there is, yeah.
Well, so then, um, do we need to have, uh. Accept the grand jury, yeah, okay, so, uh, accept the grand jury letter. Uh, you know, do we need some language to say, we're gonna, we're gonna consider, uh, we're gonna consider some of the input from council and, and.
I, I, I think we need to delineate on which of, it, it doesn't have to be the precise language, but there needs to be a direction, just a moment. It needs to be a direction to the subcommittee, the ad hoc committee, on the sense of the changes that would be made. So that's what we have before us.
Okay, I'm happy to rapid fire the ones that I think are most important, I won't offer them as.
Okay. I'm happy to rapid fire the ones that I think are most important. I won't offer them as unfriendly. I just, I, I haven't heard from anybody else on the topic. So, okay. Um, with the maker and seconder, consider removing the statement, um, on the second page. The lengthy statement I read Palo Alto believes that in the mid peninsula, the economics, et cetera. The second sentence halfway down the second page.
Second.
I'm not, I'm not sure I would rec, I'm not sure I'd accept taking it out completely. I might be willing to look at and sort of rephrasing it if, but, uh, but I think it's an important point. I mean, it's, we're, we're basically telling the count, the grand jury, we don't agree on using commercial to fund, as a financing vehicle for office space.
Okay. So not accepted. Um, so recommendation three in the response with the maker and sector and seconder be willing to expand that to include partnerships with Alta Housing and something in addition to surveying residents?
I am not.
Okay.
I, I would.
Fine. Um, would the maker and seconder be willing to, uh, modify on packet page two forty-three at the top? The disagreement in response to finding four?
No.
Okay. All right. Um, and then we've discussed precise plan. Actually, I'll just presume that was heard and could be modified if they thought was appropriate. And would the maker and seconder be willing on the response to finding nine, um, to take a little more responsibility for the Palo Alto process?
What does that mean?
Um, well, it, this basically says, um, disagree, right? It has partially. Yeah, it just says, it says the report cites anecdotal examples and other places. I, I, you know, I mean, it's, it's fair. We, it does take us a while to approve things. It's a small point. I'll move on. Um.
I thought that was why we partially agreed, right? It's like, yeah, it does take us a while to do things.
Okay. Well, very, very, a little wishy washy. I mean, that might've been in the headline, but it wasn't clear in the text. Okay. In finding twelve, um, would the maker and seconder consider, um, a looking forward strategy as opposed to just objecting to the backward looking one?
Well, you know, uh, on this one here, the grand jury is also suggesting that looking at mixed use and building, using commercial projects, office space as a funding strategy that we have, um, put some limitation on. But, um, that is, uh, our way of ensuring that we are looking at affordable housing and not making the problem worse.
Hang on. So there's a, you're talking about recommendation twelve A, the response to, where we say we're, we're seeking new additional tools to increase the size of our, our affordable housing fund and talks a little bit about the business tax and so forth?
It's in the disagreement to finding twelve. Where it says that the grand jury was simply mistaken.
Well, granted, I, I wouldn't accept, I wouldn't accept a different than disagree because the grand jury, it, it states black and white Palo Alto has no affordable housing funds, but I.
I was just asking if you could include information about going forward as opposed to backward looking.
Well, I don't see any, I don't see the words backward looking anywhere. So I'm asking the question is we're seeking additional tools to increase the size of our affordable housing fund. Is that what you meant by forward looking?
I'll move on. Um, and then the last one is with the maker and seconder be willing in appendix four to clarify for the record in demand suppression that the twenty eighteen residential, non-residential development cap was not decided at the ballot.
I'm okay striking that language.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Um, I appreciate, um, your consideration. I regret I will be unable to vote for the motion.
Okay.
Thank you. So we'll add that into the motion that, um, accept the grand jury response letter with, oh, okay. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Milton.
Okay. So while the clerk is capturing that, um, Councilmember Stone.
Mr. Mayor, and thank you to the motion on the, the seconder. Just a couple of additional, uh, thoughts to, to add since it appears will be our, our last round and, and chance to discuss this. Um, and one of them is a, is a follow-up on Vice Mayor Koo's. Um, some of the examples that she was giving that I thought was really, was really helpful. Um, yeah, I, I, the, the report talks about affordable housing, but, but its examples are often a bit too simplistic and, and I think focuses more on housing growth rather than progress on, on truly affordable units. And I appreciate that this response letter, I think, um, really talks about that, which I, which I appreciate. And, you know, kind of think a specific example, page thirty-one of the grand jury report. It, it praises Mountain View for, for its rapid timeline of housing approval, uh, and cites two projects in particular. And it, it says, I could quote it here. Um, two Mountain View projects with affordable housing units reflect this efficient process. Um, and so I want to just kind of talk about those two and, and kind of talk about, hey, I don't know if it's the, if it's the process itself that is having an, an impact on affordability. So the first one is the five thirty-five, five fifty-five Walker Drive in Mountain View with fifty-eight townhouse units. Uh, and, and I understand kind of theoretically those units were, that project seemed to be really sold to the Mountain View City Council as just being naturally more to for, more affordable because they're smaller units. We've heard similar arguments here i- in Palo Alto. The problem is those fifty-eight townhomes replaced fifty-six apartments and units that were deed restricted. Um, and, uh, that was, that was, sorry, that were affordable housing under, um, under, uh, that were protected under rent control. And so I looked up at the price of a one-bedroom condo there, uh, for this new project that was approved that, and the price of a one-bedroom condo there last sold for nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. According to compass.com, at a thirty-year fixed rate mortgage, person would have to pay three thousand six hundred and eleven dollars a month. Whereas residents before in the fifty-six unit apartment complex were paying nineteen hundred dollars a month before the demolition of those apartment homes, uh, and construction of those luxury micro condos. And if you look at the website, they're, they are advertised as luxury condos. The other project, the grand jury report praises in Mountain View is the three ninety-four Ortega Avenue, which is a hundred and forty-four unit project with only five units of, of affordable housing units. So that's an inclusionary amount of affordable units at point zero three percent. So again, there's a difference between talking about increased housing production a- and truly championing, championing, uh, affordable housing production. And so I appreciate that a response kind of, uh, points that out. And then just my last one here, and again, I'm glad the, uh, that our response goes into this. The grand jury report really does accurately describe the most critical impediment to, to affordable housing construction, which is funding. And accurately describes really kind of like the diverse set of, of funders needed to really effectuate a, a new affordable housing project. And the mayor, you, you spoke about that earlier. Yeah, I, I was disappointed, however, that the report only, if I could find it here, only provided one sentence criticizing really the inaction at the state level. So the report on page thirty-five said, unfortunately, the state of California is not providing a substantial amount of funding to help cities with this difficult problem. I, I, I couldn't agree more with that. I think one of the public speakers talked about this a- as well. Um, you know, we, we really do need greater leadership, uh, a- a- at, at the Sacramento level to be able to increase those funds. Um, and, and the state used to provide a lot more support when it came to affordable housing funds. So if we go back to prior to two thousand and eleven, California had local redevelopment agencies, which provided funding support for affordable housing by requiring, uh, see if I get this right, that twenty percent of revenue raised from lo- local property taxes be spent on affordable housing. But the great recession hit and Governor Brown back in two thousand and eleven essentially eliminated that. Uh, and so in two thousand and nine, the state had approximately two point three billion dollars in affordable housing funds. Uh, now, of course, as Councilmember Phil Seth pointed out, that is a, a sliver of what's needed to be able to read our, our, meet our Reno goals in the, in the next cycle. Uh, but that's far more than what is being provided for affordable housing production today. So, and, and despite a booming California economy with really kind of some historic surpluses, uh, the funding for affordable housing has not been restored to those two thousand and nine levels. A- and those local redevelopment agencies are still shuttered. So I do want to, once again, echo Councilmember Phil Seth and what he was, what he was saying earlier. Um, yes, we need to, we need to own what we can do to be able to further encourage greater affordable housing production. Some things in the pipeline, as the mayor alluded to, are, are, are promising. Um, but also at the end of the day, it is, it is a funding issue. And so please, please, please contact assembly members and, and senators as well to be able to try to restore that. So overall, just wrap up. I really like the argument on including demand for, the demand for affordable housing, uh, in conjunction with the supply. Uh, I, I do think too often the discussion is focused solely on the supply side. Uh, but of course, the world does not, does not work like that. I, I teach A- A- AP economics and one of my students so, uh, focused solely on, on the supply side of an issue and completely ignored the demand side, they, they would not receive a passing grade. And yet, when it comes to housing, we, we tend to ignore that piece. So just important, have the full picture when we're having this, this debate. So again, I, I appreciate the motion. I appreciate the investigation, the report by the grand jury, and, and I'm ready to support this.
Okay. I do not see any more hands raised, so I think that we can, uh, call vote on the motion.
And I just want to clarify, does the motion read exactly how you had requested it? I feel like I missed a word at the end. Councilmember Cormac, I tried to type it.
But yeah, I mean, it's up to the maker and seconder. I mean, it wasn't, it wasn't decided at the ballot. Um, I'm, I'm not quite sure exactly how to phrase it, but I'm sure they can go back and find it.
Clarification that the twenty eighteen office cap was not decided at the ballot box.
Okay.
The non-residential development cap. Yeah.
All right.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Okay. With that, uh, Councilmember DuBois.
Yes.
Mayor Burt.
Yes.
Councilmember Cormac.
No.
Councilmember Stone.
Yes.
Councilmember Tanaka.
No.
Vice Mayor Koo.
Yes.
Councilmember Phil Seth.
Yes.
Motion carries five to two.
Thank you. So that concludes, uh, this item. Uh, let's return to, before taking a break, we'll briefly return to item number eleven, which was the public hearing on we debatement, uh, because we kept that item open to assure that people who, um, uh, might have wished to speak, but thought it was going to commence at eight o'clock, had an opportunity to do so. Do we have any other, uh, public speakers on item number eleven? And it appears we do not. So on that note, we can entertain a motion to approve the staff recommendation. Oh, excuse me.
So moved.
Okay. And I will second that if, if no one else already did.
I think we did that earlier.
Oh, yeah. We had the motion. I'm sorry. We already had the motion. That's right. It's open and, um, we have it before us and Vice Mayor Koo had seconded it and they did not wish to speak on it, as I now recall. Um, so would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Cormac.
Yes.
Councilmember or Vice Mayor Koo.
Yes.
Councilmember Tanaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Phil Seth.
Yes.
Mayor Burt.
Yes.
Councilmember DuBois.
Yes.
Councilmember Stone.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. So we'll now be taking a break, um, for ten minutes. And at that time, we will convene a discussion of the California Avenue and Ramona Street temporary and permanent street closures. And we'll be back at, um, uh, about nine twenty, thirty-six or thereabouts. Oh, excuse me, eight, eight thirty-six. Thank you. Thank you. Convening in a moment. All right. So at this time, the council is going to reconvene and begin discussion of item number 13, which is the California Avenue and Ramona Street temporary and permanent closure. So this is a hearing that we had kept open from several weeks ago. And so we're reconvening it. When we go to public comments, we're asking that folks who spoke at the previous hearing use their previous public comments as their positions and input, and not speak a second time. And on that note, I wanted to see if we have maybe a brief recap by the staff on where we left off. And Mr. City Manager.
Sure. Turn it over to you. Thank you, Mayor. Let me ask, I believe Mr. Cami will lead off for staff and do that recap. And then I've got a bit of an addendum I'd like to offer to the council as you're considering this item.
Yeah, thank you very much, City Manager. Good evening, Mayor Burt, Vice Mayor Ku, and members of the City Council, and also members of the public. I'm Philip Cami, Chief Transportation Official. And although staff had completed our presentation at the prior meeting, I'd like to just provide a quick refresher on this item, which was being continued from the February 7th City Council meeting. Tonight, staff is seeking authority to seek a consultant in order to conduct what's being termed as a feasibility study. Although I think the feasibility study might be a little bit of a confusing term for what we're hoping to actually have our consultant assist us with. We're really hoping to initiate a study of the possible permanent closures of Ramona Street and California Avenue. But to have the consultant to help us to understand the existing conditions, to understand and communicate with the businesses in the affected areas, to understand the impacts from not only conducting a traffic analysis, which is really what you think about probably when you think about a feasibility study, but also to do a parking analysis, to understand the impacts of changes in parkings, to do economic analysis. And finally, and this is really critical to this, the consultant would help us to conduct outreach and develop concepts and alternatives working with stakeholders, so we can make sure that the new concept, if it's to change, would actually benefit everyone. And as I mentioned, the actual feasibility portion would assist staff with determining which statute for closure would end up being the most applicable and feasible, and then to help us determine the next steps for implementation. With that, hand it back to them.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cami. Then, as I mentioned, I have a bit of an addendum here for staff. Just like to note, just really acknowledging that the issue of closures, opening, and the specific characteristics of what have been happening along California Avenue in particular, you know, has been somewhat, I'll say contentious, relatively speaking, perhaps not in the grand sense, but certainly on the specifics has been a point of great discussion. And so, as we have been looking at some options going forward and really pursuant to the prior council direction related to design, design charrette, and looking at options for the street. At the mayor's suggestion, I engaged in conversation with a local architect by the name of Bruce Fukujie, who has been involved with a number of city projects, both land use as well as transportation. And on that basis, and actually really have to thank Mr. Fukujie, because on his initiative, his own initiative, he actually took up on an example that might be somewhat illustrative for the council and Palo Alto community in discussing options going forward for California Avenue. And it's to look at the experience of the city of Santa Barbara on State Street, which also during the COVID period undertook a fairly, actually quite an ambitious visioning effort in order to look at what could be done longer term into the future for State Street. And so with that, I'd actually like to ask Mr. Fukujie to share some of the observations that he came back with, looking at that Santa Barbara experience. And again, I believe it would be illustrative and helpful for us as we consider options going forward. So I believe we have him as a panelist here.
Hi, good evening. I hope you can hear me, and thank you for the opportunity to spend a few minutes with you. Yes, I was on the Palo Alto Urban Design Committee for eight years and helped shape the downtown plan. And also, that's a lot on Ramona Street was to the concept planning for 250 University, which you probably are aware of. And then also Dream Team, and then advises city on all the negotiated design with expansion of the Stanford Medical Center, Children's Hospital, and Medical Schools. So I've had a kind of long history of advising and working with the city on land use and transportation and urban design issues. So I just have about 10 slides to show you just about what's happened in Santa Barbara, I thought, on State Street that would be informative for your discussion. I'm just going to share my screen. Yeah, I hope you can all see that. So there's just 10 slides, not that much. But I thought it'd be helpful just to see what, you know, Santa Barbara did around the pandemic and the public health crisis that has been taking place since 2020. This is a view looking south on State Street towards the ocean. And as you probably know, you know, Santa Barbara State Street is identified by the American Planning Association, one of the great places in America. So, you know, it's really a treasure. It's the heart of the city's, you know, social, economic, and cultural life. And, you know, Santa Barbara and Palo Alto really have kind of a sister city relationship when you look at the architectural character of the city with its Mediterranean revival. And then you look at Ramona Street, for example, and the Spanish colonial revival architecture that you have there. So there's a lot that's similar and inspirational. I thought what would be helpful is just to point out, after the initial street closure, and then when it was extended, the city made a decision to make some traffic control modifications and lighting to have it be car-free and pedestrian and bike-oriented. So I thought it'd be helpful to show just like a few slides of what their interim condition is. And then, in contemplating what to do in the future as a result of the attraction that this created and the positive response that community members had, they decided to have a series of surveys to find out about the future of State Street. The council created a subcommittee that looked at it. And then they worked with the local chapter of the Santa Barbara AIA and actually did a very innovative design charrette to kind of look at it. And I'll talk about that and just show a few of the ideas that came out of that process and then where they are as a result of it. So here you can see that all the cross streets have through traffic. None of the cross streets are blocked off. What they did is they striped the center of the street, especially at intersections, to show basically like Class 2 bike lanes. Then they introduced a series of, you know, terracotta planters to separate the travel lanes from the sidewalk and the pedestrian way, and then some vertical markers to differentiate bicycles coming in and out along the street, and then some of the other signage in here. So that's kind of the main things that they did. But, you know, some of the things that are an advantage really for what happened in State Street when talking with retailers, businesses, about what their experience is with the closing of the street. You know, what was so interesting is they said, really, 20 years ago, when the decision was to remove parking from State Street and have only through-traffic bicycle lanes and transit, you know, at that point, all the parking on street was moved off. So it's really kind of made it a lot easier for that, that community to actually make these modifications and not have to deal with these conflicts that you have on California Avenue about how to accommodate both vehicle traffic, parking, access, and loading. But the other part is, as you know, is that State Street's beautiful. I mean, partly that Mediterranean climate, you know, the California climate. And they've done a lot already to kind of make it an attractive environment. But one of the benefits of not having on-street parking is it allowed them to do a lot more planting on the curb side of the street. So there's a lot more larger planting. You don't have to have pedestrians crossing the street to get to and from the sidewalk. They made very wide sidewalks. They had a whole series of, they had 10 years of ongoing improvements that they made. And they located all the parking off-street. And then they have these mid-block kind of passeos that bring you from parking onto the street. And you can see that with the clock tower is right here. That's access to mid-block, you know, crossings. But, you know, they've done a lot to help make it, you know, kind of a 24-hour destination. This is just showing like the attention to detail. It's made the streets so beautiful. You know, it's the paving, it's the way that outdoor dining takes place. It's the way that store and storefronts open out onto the street. It's signage, it's the umbrellas, it's the lighting. There's just many, many features that they've done to help really enhance that street over time. And the other part that's really been exciting about that with what they've been doing is that when you look at different segments of the street, is that, you know, they had a community arts and planting committee that they created that helps guide the landscaping. And landscaping along the street really is what makes it quite wonderful. You know, but one of the other things they had been doing is you could see here, you know, the retail, the restaurants have spilled all the way out to the middle of the street. Many of them have planters around the perimeter of them. They have roofs to cover them up. They've lined them all up kind of one after another in terms of doing that. And they've done tasting tours as a way to help bring people in and through that. And so when talking with business owners, basically, the restaurants are doing well. And then the other retail shoppers are doing, they're doing okay. They're not quite at pre-pandemic levels of business. But because of the spiller effects of people shopping and going to, you know, dine and the quality of the street, people are strolling up and down it in order. And that's really been helping support the retail. The other thing they've done, which I think is really great is, you know, part of the pandemic now is that more people are spending almost all their time at home, you know, and working more time with their families. So this thing around what to do about recreation, and what to do about mental health, and what to do about adults and what they might need. So they've created lots of different kind of recreational activities for adults. I thought that that was really wonderful. And then it's like right across the street where they have all of the, you know, they have all of their, you know, I guess they're kind of brew pubs, you know. So beer gardens and outdoor sort of bistros together. So it kind of mixes play and join in doing that. The other thing they did that I thought was really fabulous, you might find interesting, is that they actually, you know, created this sort of open-air markets. A lot of the retailers actually just opened up shop right out on the street. you know, created this sort of open-air markets. A lot of the retailers actually just opened up shop right out on the street. So, you know, that addressed the pandemic issues, the social spacing issues, but it also really activated the street. I thought that was really really beautiful adaptation around what to do in order to try to be able to attract people to shop. You know, and I guess really the key here is it's like, if you can attract more people here, then you'll really be able to help support the other other businesses. And it's really like grocery, health, and, you know, beauty, those are the kinds of, you know, beautiful, those uses, those retail uses were really thriving. So I just wanted to show you a few things around that. And then there's just a a couple of slides I want to show just about the design charrette and what what happened with that. And I think that after the city created a subcommittee to look at the future of of State Street, they they went out and talked with the architectural community. They said, look, how should we go about doing this? And they all uniformly agreed that you really have to do a a deep community survey and interviews to find out what it is that people really are looking for and what they want. And here's just the results of four things. One of the things was overwhelming was that people loved the idea of closing State Street, but not just closing it for pedestrians and bikes, but actually expanding it to a slightly larger area to include the cross streets. That was a big thing. Also, in trying to look at this problem, they decided they had to expand the problem to actually kind of look at not only the economic crisis, but what to do about housing, introducing more housing into the downtown area. And so that was included in the survey. There was overwhelming support for being able to do that. And then they said, well, what is it you want to see when you're there? What would make it attractive? And it was the lower left, you know, survey results, dining, food trucks, retail vendors, music, art, places to sit, and then children's play areas and adult games. And I thought that was really interesting that those were the top, the top things, because that really leads you to visions about what can happen next. And then they were very good about the distribution of age, only I think they should have done more for teens and youth. So with that said, there's just kind of three slides just to show you the outcomes of this. You have to understand it was a creative, open-ended process. They had 100 teams of architects, landscape architects, and they each spent six weeks doing kind of online, you know, charrette, design charrettes where they're working interactively with people. And then they came together and packaged all the individual work into sort of one giant sort of presentation of what of what they wanted, what they wanted to see. And so this is sort of an example, you know, of like, you know, plan, looking at the street, you know, extending the paving across the intersection from one street to the next, for the cross streets, looking at what to do to have pickup and drop-off, have a monument, have signage, to help create that as a pedestrian environment where cars are guests. They looked at what to do in the middle zone. This whole issue is the street getting privatized by having, you know, restaurants locating their their facilities out on the street, but then not paying any rent for it. It's public appropriation of appropriation of public space, what to do. So there were some whole series of design solutions around how to address that, and how to kind of animate the center of the street to really make it a public place. And also to look at it as a as like a place for residents who would want to live there, who want to be able to use that as part of the public realm. So, you know, here's another example, looking down in plan where they, you know, introduced Cathay seating, so it's kind of a more open area, but it allows bikes to travel through the center of it to keep the pedestrians on the storefronts. One of the things I noticed when going down the street, as it is now, it's bikes, you know, strollers, skateboards, you know, scooters and things like that that are all in the street, and people walking their dogs and pets. And then all the other pedestrians are staying on the sidewalks. But they introduced a lot of things where they extended the side streets, you know, the design of the street environment all the way along both side streets, you know, made a median trees, a tree in the center as a turnaround, pick-up and drop-off. You know, looked at creating music pavilions, interactive art installations, you know, public art, looking at how planting can separate out dining. And, you know, how to use fountains and things like that, because once cars are route, the acoustical environment changed so much. So much quieter, so you can actually hear each other to have conversations. So just how to how to expand on all those things to really kind of create, you know, pop-up movies and things like that. So there are a lot of beautiful things that kind of came out of this visioning. They put it all together. This is a comprehensive sort of view. They did some renderings to kind of pull the whole story together. This is the view looking at State Street all the way to the ocean. And, you know, what came out of that is that, you know, the subcommittee decided that, you know, and talking to council, well, what should they do next? Obviously, State Street's the main street, the main attraction of Santa Barbara. It's a different scale than, you know, California Avenue. But they decided they should create an advisory committee and actually create a State Street master plan. And they worked on a vision statement for what they thought it should be. And part of what was interesting about this advisory committee is it did what was mentioned earlier, and that's, and I'm about to finish, but it just allows you to bring all the different users together, property owners, retail tenants, restaurateurs, large employers, employees and workers who are there, residents, teens, kids, you can kind of bring in a very large circle of of people who can be engaged in order to have conversations around the future of what this space can be like, in order to create the civic discussion for the council to have the policy discussions around what the future of that space should look like. So I think it's just a good model. You know, it's very ambitious. But I think it's helpful as a data point to think about, you know, how to imagine what can happen with California Avenue. With that, I want to say thank you for your for your time.
And and once again, just really want to thank Mr. Fukujie for taking this, taking the initiative to do this follow-up work really as a as a donation, so to speak, to the city of Palo Alto. Then perhaps just to bring it back to full circle to the specific recommendation in your staff report. As Bruce pointed out, this is clearly as described, an ambitious undertaking. At the same time, one of the first steps and the question that I know the council will get into is what's what's our status quo? And what is the next phase as we're moving from emergency conditions to interim conditions and potentially permanent changes to the way that access and circulation is handled along California Avenue in particular, again, here. And so with that, the your discussion tonight and decisions on what this status quo, whether it be maintaining the closure of California Avenue as it currently exists, and and as a part of that, the question of the duration, we anticipate that the study that has been discussed will be at least a 12-month effort, probably 18 months as a more realistic timeframe for it to be completed. And as such, that can assist stakeholders in making their decisions for what that interim time period might mean in terms of their own investments within the public space for for sure, as well as other decisions that would be involved. And then finally, just on that point, clearly, the engagement, active engagement and participation in the decision-making for stakeholders will be a key dimension as we move forward. So with that, Mr. Mayor completes our staff report.
Thank you. So at this time, let's see if we have any additional speakers from the public who would like to speak tonight, and then we'll return it to the council for discussion. Okay, well, we can commence while we're taking speakers. We'll see how many we have. Give it a moment. Okay, so each speaker will have up to three minutes to speak, and we'll be soon taking our last speaker. We'll give it a, after Mr. Burke speaks, we'll we'll cut off people signing up. So our first speaker is Todd Burke, to be followed by Nancy Isaac. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Thanks for having us. The presentation about State Street was fantastic. It's seeing the purposeful creation of a place, especially when it's been predominantly used by cars, I think, is really, I'm glad to see that that's the evolution of thinking about what could possibly be for California Avenue. I know that there have been some 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 successes and some challenges on California Avenue. I think some of the restaurants have done a really, really outstanding job pivoting to deal with the pandemic, and I think some of the merchants have been trying to figure out better ways to address their business. I know as a resident who lives on California Avenue, I'm eager to help anybody be successful to make sure that there's that that everyone can be successful. And I'm also glad to hear that we're including all stakeholders, not just businesses. So as a as an individual who lives on California Avenue and wants to see the area be successful, having these design charrettes is really important in looking at State Street as an example, I think, of what could be is really great. So I'm glad to see that we're we're seeing that this is not really just strictly a traffic issue, but really how to create a place and a place that that serves all the things that the previous speaker had, and I really appreciate the vision on that and looking forward to helping in any way possible. So thank you. I'm not going to take the full three minutes. I just wanted to make sure to offer that endorsement. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Nancy Isaac, to be followed by Sherri LaBrune. Welcome.
Can you hear me? Hi, this is Nancy Isaac. I thought the the presentation regarding State Street and Santa Barbara was an excellent idea as to how to move forward with regard to California Ave. I echo a lot of what my previous speaker, Todd Burke, said. I think it's a wonderful plan. In the interim, I would suggest that we open up Ramona's, the half-block of Ramona Street. There are a variety of reasons for that. I don't think it fits the same paradigm as what we're looking for for enhancing the city with respect to California Ave. I think Ramona was a holdover of the immediate crisis situation that the downtown restaurants faced during COVID, which of course is relaxing now, and I think the parklets have been working well. So I would strongly support moving forward with the California investigation and plan. And I would suggest very strongly that we open up Ramona Street. I have seen a number, I live down near downtown. I walk downtown only during the day. I can't walk downtown at night because of the crime in Palo Alto. But the closures I have seen caused burdens. People get confused. There are illegal U-turns. There are people walking different ways across the streets. They don't really understand it. And I have written to the city about the dangers of the closure of Ramona Street. So I would strongly vote for opening Ramona Street immediately and progressing with your recommendations for California. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sherri LaBrune, to be followed by Dustin Underwood. Welcome.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, hello, everyone. Thank you for having me, giving me an opportunity to speak. I've had my business, De novo Fine Contemporary Jewelry, in the same location on Ramona Street for over 32 years. And the closure of the half-block of Ramona has turned the street into a dead end. The road closure prohibits vehicles from entering from Hamilton Avenue and inhibits drivers from entering the street from University Avenue. Not having through-traffic means that there is no drive-by visibility, which allows people to discover my store, and it makes it difficult for existing customers to reach my store because access is limited and complicated. There is a constant stream of cars doing U-turns in front of my store as cars that do enter the street encounter the closed street signs and barricades and have to turn around to try to navigate their way out of the closed street. Now that University Avenue is open again, which we're thrilled about, there's a vibrancy on that street, and empty spaces are leasing to new tenants because of the street being open. But I now have three empty storefronts as my neighbors on Ramona Street. It's hard to imagine new tenants leasing space on a dead-end street with a row of vacant storefronts. My landlord has written to city council and requested that the street reopen. Citibank, my neighbor, wants the street to reopen. I have talked with other business owners in the block that also want the street to reopen. Restaurants are open at full capacity. They have added additional seating with their parklets, which has increased their available space for doing business to more than they had before the pandemic. They no longer need the street seating to survive. I feel that the closure is outdated, unnecessary, and very detrimental to retail service and office use businesses. Before the closure, Ramona was a beautiful and vibrant street rather than a closed-off, confusing dead end filled with vacant storefronts, plastic barricades, and closed street signs. I don't feel that it's right for the city council to continue to favor a few restaurants who no longer need the seating, street seating to survive and keep the street closed to the detriment of all of the other businesses. Please reopen Ramona Street in June and let the life and vibrancy back onto the street to allow all businesses the opportunity to thrive the way they did before the closure. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dustin Underwood, and to be followed by Lisa. We don't have a last name there this time. Welcome.
Thank you, council, for taking the time to listen to local business owners as well as citizens about the closure of California Avenue and Ramona Avenue. I represent Warby Parker, a business on Ramona Avenue. In reviewing public comments previously and letters submitted, it seems like there's an overwhelming opinion around California Avenue. And I'm here to represent Ramona Avenue as a representative of the business. I align with Nancy as well as Sherri on opening up Ramona Avenue to traffic, to parking, to visibility for those businesses early in the pandemic. Obviously, supporting our restaurant neighbors, allowing for parklets and allowing for safety for the Palo Alto citizens to be able to dine outdoors and still be able to have some sort of normalcy, I think was absolutely necessary now that we're at a place in California of reopening and having less restrictions. I do think it is an appropriate time to reopen Ramona Avenue for those visibilities to have, for those businesses to have visibility, to have parking returned to to be able to come down the street. And Warby Parker being an essential business that offers our customers eye care and supporting their eye needs, that close parking and being able to be near our business and find us easily is incredibly important to those customers. So I would just continue to stress the importance of opening Ramona Avenue to those local businesses to support our business as well as the other local businesses, as Sherri just highlighted as well. So I would just want to express that, and thank you for giving us this opportunity. And I'll give a minute back to the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lisa. We don't have a last name, to be followed by Lorenzo Manu Ali. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. My last name is Robbins. I didn't, I didn't type it in time. Sorry. I am a business owner on California Avenue in Palo Alto. And I just, I didn't get to hear the presentation earlier because I didn't come into the meeting early enough. I thought this topic would hit at nine. So I apologize for not being part of the whole earlier conversation. There may be something that I missed. But I have a retail business on California Avenue in that first big block off of El Camino, and when the pandemic hit, I think I would have agreed to anything to keep my neighbors in business. We were able to continue by shifting to delivery and pick up, and we were lucky to be able to do that. And I supported completely the closure and getting restaurants room in the outdoors when they needed it. Makes sense now is that we never really had a good conversation about going forward into the future. And this is part of that process, that it's already been decided that the street will be closed. And we're shifting away from the emergency situation. And as we do that, some things have gone back to normal. For example, parking enforcement has gone back to normal in the lot behind my business. But some things haven't, as in people being able to pull up in a car to my business in front. So we're suffering now in a way that we didn't as much when the, when in the middle of the pandemic. And I just want to get that out there, that that not everybody is having a great time with the street closed. And and I hope that if we take another 12 to 18 months to study what should happen next, that that's a thoughtful process, which it sounds like it will be, but also that we can bring some sort of mitigation to that that's a thoughtful process, which it sounds like it will be, but also that we can bring some sort of mitigation to some of these businesses like mine in the meantime. That we aren't just doing what we're doing right now for another 12 to 18 months. Not only is the street pretty unsightly from my storefront, but access is a real problem for us. And we're doing okay, but we're just barely doing okay. We're not thriving. And I feel like it's time for us to look at everybody thriving together. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lorenzo Manu Ali to be followed by Shannon McEntee. Welcome.
Hi, y'all. Thanks so much, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Lorenzo. I'm 22. I live in Midtown. First of all, I just wanted to say I absolutely loved the presentation about State Street on Santa Barbara. In the long term and in the overall vision, I really hope that that is the plan for California Avenue and hopefully some surrounding areas. And definitely a plus one to everything that Todd said in particular. All I can really offer is the perspective of a citizen. And so I'll just offer you sort of an experience like two weeks ago that I had on California Avenue that sort of prompted me to, you know, come to this meeting and speak in favor. And mainly it was because my grandmother was in town for her birthday to, you know, about two weeks ago. She was turning 75. And I decided that I wanted to spend it with her on California Avenue. Because, you know, you know, there was music and you could walk up and down. And it was really, you know, it's become one of my, you know, my favorite areas in Palo Alto because of the, of the closures and sort of, you know, pedestrian walkway, even though, you know, the street sort of looks the same way it did when there were cars on it, even though it was an emergency measure. And the only reason why I mentioned the following is because she really enjoyed it as well. And let me preface here, all views that I present here are strictly my own. But she has quite a bit of hospitality, you know, experience, you know, Lydia Bustanich, if you know her. Again, she doesn't know the context of any of this. I only mention it because we had such an excellent time. And a lot of that was because we were outside and there was music and you could walk up and down. Basically, all the facets of that can only really occur if you have this sort of closed off area for pedestrians. Was very, you know, vibrant, calming, in my opinion, and also very bustling. I loved it. It was really great. So that's, you know, the perspective that I can offer. You know, I definitely am, you know, very much in favor of looking into all the possible economic effects. Making sure that all stakeholders are involved. I'm really excited about that approach. Making sure that there are mitigation, you know, strategies in place for, you know, retail or anyone in, in that category. The one thing that I would note is that the sort of references to restaurants not necessarily needing seats outside anymore, you know, growing up in a restaurant family where restaurants were all, well, that was talked about, you know, for a very long time. Margins are always thin. It's a very thin margin business. And so, you know, to say that they just don't need the seating anymore is may not, may be true for, in some cases, that may not necessarily be true all the time. So I would just take that with a grain of salt. But I just want to, you know, share the perspective of a citizen and say that I'm very much in favor of pushing forward with the, with the proposal.
Thank you. And just to clarify, because we started this item after its scheduled time at nine o'clock, we've extended the ability for some additional speakers to speak. So our final speaker will be Jessica Roth. So our next speaker is Shannon McEntee to be followed by Charlie Whiteance. Welcome.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, thank you. I just wanted to say that I've lived in this area for nearly 30 years. I'm just three blocks from Cal Ave. And closing Cal Ave during COVID might have made sense, but I really want to urge you not to make the closure permanent. I would echo what I think it was Cherry or Sherri had to say about her business. I've heard other business owners say things like that. And in today's Palo Alto Weekly, that I quote, another legacy business is shoving its doors on Cal Ave. That's the Avalon Yoga Studio, which is very popular. It's been there for almost 40 years and it's closing. I walk and I ride my bike in this area every day. And I observe cars making these awkward U-turns on these tiny narrow streets when they hit Cal Ave and they can't go through. And then they have to go forward, back, forward, back until they can finally get out. And then the next car has to do the same thing. And then you've got the railroad track. I mean, this area has very little egress and ingress. It's extremely awkward. The streets are narrow. And while our restaurants might be thriving, the rest of the area is hurting. It also has pushed, pushed a lot of traffic onto our residential streets, including the, the buses that serve the train station are suddenly coming down my street. And so that adds emissions, air pollution, noise pollution to our residential streets. And you're going to be adding more when we get the new public safety building. And you'll be adding more when we build the new low-income housing for teachers. So I think that this is a, also, we've got all these ballers, these streets that are cut off where you can't flow through. So you look down that street in Santa Barbara and yeah, it's beautiful, but they've got traffic flow and we don't have that in Cal Ave. So I, I don't have any personal stake in this, except that I live here and I see how awkward it is. And while I like having the dining, that's it, it's unequal. I don't think it's serving everyone in the same way. So I would urge you not to keep Cal Avenue closed. Thank you so much. I appreciate what you do for our city.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Charlie Whiteance to be followed by Nancy Kupel. Welcome.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, City Staff. Tonight, as you consider California Avenue and Ramona Streets temporary closure to vehicles, we encourage you to begin by asking, what problem are we trying to solve? And consider, for example, what is the long-term strategy? And what is the long-term strategy in specific to permanent parklet programs? What will the design constraints be? How will maintenance keep up the quality we all want to see and how it will be managed? And what rent will the city charge to users of the closed streets? These are just some of the issues to consider at this time. Additionally, we encourage you to reach out to all stakeholders, as you did previously, to assess the current economic climate due to the current street closures. Once you've completed business and stakeholder outreach and identified the problem to be solved, then consider the feasibility study with a focus on benefits to the business community. Perhaps even wait for the incoming economic development professional to help assess the situation. For our business community and the community at large, a strategy that supports long-term economic recovery and ongoing development that supports a positive quality of life for all of us is critical. Your decision to make the street closures permanent or not is directly tied to how all businesses can be successful while supporting community needs. It is critical that you study traffic, parking, business vitality over the past two years and policies that are currently in place that affect the business from expanding or locating here in Palo Alto. Currently, the temporary street closure is in effect until June of 2022. So what are the, what are going to be the current short-term decisions that you will make until the recommendations from the feasibility study are presented? Will the short-term decisions be part of an overall long-term strategy? The overall vitality of the downtown is in the balance and your decisions need to strategically support the recovery efforts for all of our businesses. Specific to California Avenue, we know vacancy is high and how decisions are made for the future of the avenue is dependent on adopting policies that are less restrictive around zoning, parking, CUPs, and other leasing issues that can discourage business development. Overall, how the decision, how you reach the decision to create a street that is supportive of all business and the success of the entire community. It is clear that the temporary street closures have supported outdoor dining and other businesses have benefited from the closed street. Now we look forward to working with the business community, the city staff, the city council, and the overall community to find strategic, long-term, successful solutions for the economic recovery and future development. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Nancy Kupel to be followed by Rob Fisher. Welcome.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for the opportunity to speak and thanks to everyone who's spoken. There's obviously a great diversity of opinion. I'm on Ramona Street at Kupa Cafe and share the, the beautiful atmosphere with my neighbors on the half-street that is closed. I just wanted to point out that Menlo Park hired a consulting company to, to figure out how to make their downtown better than it is now. And I think it is urgent that we do the same in Palo Alto. We have definitely seen the decline in the quality of everything in the downtown. The huge number of vacancies on University Avenue and all over downtown really is, is kind of frightening. I know people are coming back slowly, but there's still a lot of vacancies and dealing with the homeless and crime has made the situation even more difficult. I want to point out that Ramona Street, the on the half part that's closed, we have been fortunate not to have a homeless issue like University Avenue has. I also want to point out that Menlo Park, in the study that they did, they are recommending to continue the street closures on multiple blocks of Santa Cruz Avenue using vacant stores for pop-up businesses. And also increasing the type of uses for the different buildings. I disagree very much with Sherri LeBrun about the store. I don't think people can't find her jewelry store. I think it's just something to, to maybe point out that honestly, retails change. And I don't think you can blame a half-street closure on, on everything. Retail's thriving at the Stanford Mall in spite of the crime that we've seen there, but I know a lot of jewelry stores that are doing very well there. And it's a time that everything that we used to know is different. And I think that Palo, the Palo Alto needs to be forward-thinking. And I think that the study shown in Santa Barbara is very useful and very helpful. And I want to particularly thank Lorenzo for his comments and Todd, because I know that there's enormous amount of public that appreciates the closures and on Cal Ave and also on Ramona Street, because it brings a different sense of community and a little bit of ease of life that they can enjoy, the beautiful outdoors, the historical buildings. You can develop more tourism and business related to those concepts. And there's a lot of nice things to be said about it, not only negative for people that may think that it's a deterrent to selling, but I, I personally think that's not it. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Rob Fisher to be followed by our final, final speaker, Jessica Roth. Welcome.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so I own two restaurants. I used to own three restaurants in Palo Alto, but due to the pandemic, I did close one. I think the street closures have hurt the city immensely. I think that the, finally opening up University Avenue has really helped the city start to regain some momentum. But the closure on Ramona, having half of it closed, I think is, is ridiculous. And, you know, the people who are benefiting from it think it's wonderful, but the people who aren't benefiting from it, you know, they don't even have a chance of survival. And I, I really don't understand this. And, you know, I've been here for 34 years now, operating a restaurant and 13 years operating another one. I, I just, I can't stress enough how important it is to have the streets open. If you want life to get back to normal, you have to act normal. And, you know, I agree with, I can't remember who said it, but, you know, how much are you going to charge these people if you're going to keep the streets closed? Okay. And I think you should take some of that money and give it back to the people who are suffering. And not everybody wins in this situation. I get life isn't fair, but there's no reason for, for what, what's happening here. The pandemic's coming to a close and we need to get back to, to operating our businesses and having everybody, not just some, but everybody having an opportunity to be successful and to make a living. Some of us have given up our entire retirement to get through this pandemic. And alls we're asking for is an opportunity for things to get back to normal and to try to recoup some of that so that we can make it after retirement. And I think that the city really needs to take a really good look at what's happening. All the for lease signs, and this is happening in Mountain View. I have a restaurant down there. I have a restaurant in Menlo Park. And the street closure on Santa Cruz Avenue has not been great for everybody. And it's, it's terrible in Mountain View. It looks like a homeless encampment. It, it's unbelievable. And I urge the city to reopen all streets and to let people get back to doing business and let commerce have its way with, with the way it used to be. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker is Jessica Roth. Welcome.
Hello, and thank you again for your time tonight, council. I would like to speak on a few things that Nancy and Lorenzo touched on. You know, in the evening time on California Avenue, it's quite whimsical with all the lights and the music. And it's lovely. And I get why everyone would be so mesmerized and hypnotized by this. However, it does make sense for our downtown. The restaurants and the residents cannot support our downtown. We need people that come from outside of the area. And we do have our new parking garage, which I'm very happy about, and I can't wait to see it full. But I'm also not naive that the office spaces aren't back. But the nighttime, it's lovely. During the daytime, it's not nice. And as far as retail, for someone that owns a restaurant, it's really hard for them to understand this. However, foot traffic is so important and that's why we get our stores on downtown streets where people walk by our windows. You know, I have a display right now with mushroom stools in my window. How on earth would you know you wanted a mushroom stool unless you saw it? But walking up the middle of the street, you don't see my windows and you don't see the jewelry cases. So we need people on our sidewalks to maintain our downtowns. I definitely don't want to get rid of all the outdoor dining and we've always had outdoor dining on California Avenue. So that's definitely something that we need to keep and expand on. But opening the streets to through traffic is what will save all of the other businesses. Businesses like my store, The Cobblerie, will not survive with the street closed how it is currently for much longer. So if you do decide to completely close the street, street for a mass renovation, which you just did a $7 million sorry, seven years ago, millions of dollar renovation on the street, which would be totally worthless. Please, please consider the state of the street currently. We have ugly orange barricades, signs that have fallen down all over the street all the time. Bicyclists riding on the street with kids playing in the street. It's not safe. Make changes now, please. And please reopen our street as soon as you can. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So we'll now return to the council for discussion and then subsequently direction to staff. So who would like to start? Councilmember Cormac.
Thank you, Mayor Burt. Let me say I don't think this is a problem to be solved. I believe this is an opportunity to be seized. And so I certainly appreciate all of the public comments tonight, the many emails we've gotten really over the course of the pandemic and specifically on California and Ramona. I have my notes here from three weeks ago and I'd written down stakeholder groups. So really pleased to hear tonight about an advisory committee because this was one of the consistent requests from some of the businesses on California Avenue. who feel they've not benefited from the closure, that there be, um, a stakeholder group, an advisory committee, um, that will think sort of holistically about it. Um, I'm very excited to hear about that. And I think we should think carefully about how we select who is on that committee. Earlier tonight, we were talking about the NV cap, and while technically the NV cap had categories that people fulfilled, I think it ended up being an overly political process. I beg your pardon? And so, um, I think we should just be thoughtful in terms of who's on that. I know we've already had people volunteer. Um, I'm, I'm confused, I'm, what's the difference between the RFI and the RFP in the staff report? Which is staff looking for?
Let me ask Mr. Cami to respond for staff.
Yeah, uh, I'm just to be clear, I'm not, I'm not sure that we're looking for direction to do one or the other. Um, RFI is a request for information. So, um, so it's a little bit different from an RFP, um, process. I think it's more likely that we'd be, um, seeking an RFI in order to find what we're, um, looking for. Um, but they're just a little bit different processes for procuring a consultant.
I understand, but that's the, the staff recommendation on page one of the staff report is that we recommend that we direct staff to issue an RFI and/or an RFP. So perhaps we can clarify which one you'd prefer?
Uh, I'm not, so I'm hoping that the council would direct us to do whichever one that we work with, uh, purchasing, to do that we determine is the most applicable.
Okay.
Member Cormac, if I can add in, uh, Kylie Nausee, Administrative Services Director. The reason why staff wrote it in a flexible way is so that depending on the council direction, uh, we had the opportunity to choose the path that best suited, um, whatever that direction was from council. As Mr. Cami said, an RFI would be something that we are seeking more information from the market to better inform our future actions. And an RFI would have to be followed by an RFP most likely, depending on the result of it. An RFP would go straight towards a solution. Um, but that would also require us to have more stringent parameters on what we were seeking, uh, proposals for.
Okay, that's helpful. So if we know what we want, we can move to the RFP stage tonight. But if we think that we need more study before we decide on what we're doing, not necessarily how we're doing it, we do an RFI.
Possibly, but, um, and that's why ultimately staff doesn't necessarily need council direction on one or the other. We just wrote it flexibly so that depending on the path chosen by the council, um, staff have the flexibility to take the appropriate next steps.
Okay, um, setting that aside, I, I do think the staff report was, um, was particularly well-written. So I want to commend the, the group, um, as a whole, and you know, that's rare coming from me. Um, and I just want to highlight a few parts in there, because we really heard this in many of the emails and some of the public comment today. The closed portions of the streets contribute to a strong sense of place. Um, so that's, that's, that's the opportunity that I'm hoping that we seize. Um, all businesses do not benefit equally. This is the truth, and, you know, we do have to grapple with that. And if we decide to make these changes, uh, which I hope we do, um, then there's going to be a transition period, and not all businesses that are currently there might choose to stay there, and some businesses that aren't there might choose to come. So I think it's absolutely appropriate. We have that conversation. Um, next question. Okay, so we answered the feasibility study. Um, this one for the city attorney, um, on page five with the ordinance. It describes the fact that the majority of property owners must not object to moving forward on street closure. How, how, how do we do that? Is that like a?
Let me let staff start on that, in terms of what they're looking for there, what that proposed.
I'm, I'm sorry, and I was responding to a question as, um, I, I heard this was going to legal, but I think what you were asking, if I understood correctly, was about how a business might, um, appeal if they're, um, if they have a concern. Is that, is that what you were asking about?
No, I'm just reading the sentence from the staff report that says, "The majority of property owners must not object to moving forward on street closure."
Yeah, so I, I'm sorry, I think that determine that, um, is dependent on the, um, the path that is followed for regulatory approval, um, but it would be, um, at the public hearing. Um, you would do a survey.
At the hearing itself, you do a survey?
Yes.
Interesting. Okay, great, thanks. Oh, I'm out of time. Sorry.
Okay, Councilmember DuBois.
Um, just a quick question. So tonight, are we agendized to talk about the temporary closure deadline? It seemed like this item is really focused on the feasibility study and activities and programming.
So, yeah, go ahead. I'm happy to speak to that unless, um, Molly wants to jump in. But, uh, the, the actual recommendation that was continued is to discuss and provide direction regarding activities in the temporary closed portion of California Avenue as well.
Right. Yeah, I just think that there's a lot here, and, um, we should probably have another session about what to do in June and kind of the interim. Hearing this could take twelve to eighteen months. So just, just a few quick points. Um, I, I think it's obvious. Hopefully, there's no disagreement. We've got a lot of different business types on, on Calav and somewhat on Ramona. Um, I do think we need to consider all the users of the street. I also think it'd be good to have our economic consulting work, um, factor into some of these decisions that, well, that's going on at the same time. Um, I, I keep saying it, particularly in Calav, I think we need to figure out how to get people walking on the sidewalks. You know, it looked like Santa Barbara was designed that way. There were bikes and seating in the street and, you know, pedestrians on the sidewalks. And I just think we need to do a much better job of keeping the sidewalks clear and attractive for people to walk on, on the sidewalks. Um, we are still kind of this temporary kind of mode, and it looks that way. Um, and then there are people who are, are living in the higher levels in Calav and just had the, uh, that the Cardinal Hotel was recently renovated. It's going to be reopening. So I do think, um, we should think about having people move indoors maybe at ten, ten PM, just to minimize noise. Um, and again, I think over time, we're probably going to want more housing in these areas, so we should take that into consideration. Um, staff report touches on aesthetics. Definitely think the RFP should, should include aesthetics. Um, and I also think we should think about policies around street cleaning and loading docks and just other things needed to really have a operational business district. Um, and as you think about permanent closures, I, I am concerned about pushing commercial traffic on the neighborhood streets, particularly commuter buses. Um, I think buses isn't going to need to get to the Caltrain station, large and small. We should think about where, where those buses are going to go. Um, so Phil, can we do the traffic study as part of this? How would we handle the timing? Like, again, given COVID and everything, it seems like timing is going to be critical.
Yeah, I guess, uh, I'm assuming what you're asking is, you know, are we going to sit around and wait for there to be a return to normal before we can start doing a traffic study? And I, I think the answer to that is, I don't know when, if ever, there will be normal or a normalcy, or when we'll be able to determine what normalcy is for traffic patterns. Um, I, I do think that whatever that, you know, certain threshold is going to be of people returning to work, I think that that will probably be within the horizon of, of when we're, um, working on this.
Yeah, I mean, we do see a lot of the big companies getting back into the office last week, this week.
Yep.
Um, you know, I, I also think the RFP should look at costs for leasing public space. Um, I'm, I'm interested in considering, you know, options that would close Calav from like Friday afternoon to Sunday afternoon. Um, I'd really like to see us explore some other options rather than just full closure. I, I agree with some speakers, the street is pretty dead during the day, um, when it's not, you know, restaurant time. Um, the, the staff report before, the previous one, I think, talked about slow streets. Which like, looked like an interesting concept too. And again, thinking about the buses, um, you know, what if, what if Calav had a one, one-way traffic going down it, you know, at least half of the buses would, would not be on, uh, residential streets half the time. Um, and then finally, I think another thing we need to keep in mind, particularly on Calav, is those businesses have been through a lot of disruption. I mean, we did, we did the street redesign not very long ago, uh, then the parking garage and the safety building, and then a lot of private construction, uh, nearby as well, which is, you know, resulted in a lot of street closures and things. So, you know, I, I'm, I'm concerned, um, that this is going to be an eighteen-month planning process. And what do we do in the meantime? Like, I think it is kind of unsightly right now. Um, and again, I, I don't know that we have time tonight to really talk about the interim period, but I think maybe we should come back for another session on that. Um, it, it seems like we'll effectively, if we don't, and we don't reopen the street, um, soon, we'll have effectively closed it for temporarily for up to three years while we're going through COVID and then the planning session. Um, so, and then the last question I have, and I know a little bit over time, is the idea that tonight we would approve this, the budget for this? Or would we have this come back as part of the 2023 budget? And, you know, be able to look at the trade-offs with other projects? If, if we approve it tonight, I assume, you know, we're almost in the next budget year. Would this be part of the next budget?
Um, yeah, so if, if you approved it tonight, um, we would need to, um, figure out what the actual cost of it would be and then get approval. Um, you know, we've got an estimate that it would be in the three hundred to five hundred, um, K, you know, range based on the scope that we've laid out, you know, not anticipating any additional, um, um, scoping, but, you know, we're really not a hundred percent sure what the cost would be. So we return to council, um, for approval of the, um, contract.
Or would that happen as part of the budget process? Would be basically one of the capital projects at that point?
Think about timing, yeah, probably, um, I'm not sure, actually. Um, yeah, possibly, but I'm really not sure about that timing. It would really depend on, uh, the procurement process and the time for that procurement process to proceed. And just, just noting that one of the other challenges within this is that we currently don't have resources to work on this, um, within the Office of Transportation. So that's kind of a, a larger, I mean, another discussion that we really do need to have tonight.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, thanks for bringing that up.
Okay, um, Councilmember Stone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, and, and thanks, uh, thanks for, to staff for that, um, for that presentation at the beginning on, on Santa Barbara State Street. I, I, coming into tonight, was thinking about, uh, Third Street Promenade in, in Santa Monica. I don't know if any of you, uh, have, have been there, but it's a really, uh, exciting opportunity a, as well, and it, and they've got, they, they have, I think it's three streets that are closed off to, to bicyclists and, and pedestrians, and it's just a great shopping and shopping and dining area, and has a lot of what the mayor has talked about several times regarding, um, entertainment venues out there. I mean, it's just, it really is a sense of community as, as staff has mentioned in this, in this report. So I, I'm, I'm really excited, I think, for California Avenue, because I, I agree with Councilmember Cormac. I think this provides, can't remember exactly how you worded it, but, but, uh, an opportunity here. And I think the only way that we really can embrace that opportunity to its fullest extent is by really looking at opportunities for, for permanent closure. I, 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 I'm, I'm concerned that if we go the direction of having the Friday through Sunday or, or just, or weekend closure, that we're going to miss a particular opportunity to really make California Avenue, uh, a destination. Um, and, and, and seeing what Santa Barbara has done, seeing what Santa Monica has done, I, I don't see why we can't do something that's even greater and is really going to, um, just revitalize, uh, California Avenue and, and make it something even more special than what it is today. So I'm excited to, to explore that a, a little more. I, I am curious, though, on, on the idea of full closure. I don't know if Chief Blackshire is on here, but maybe if he could just weigh in on, on whether main, on whether we need to maintain vehicular access for emergency vehicles? Uh, or is access through peripheral streets sufficient? Or are we way too early to even be discussing that right now?
And maybe while we're waiting for him to chime in, um, i- if, if he's available, that's something that the, the study would also look at is maintain, you know, how, how much emergency access needs to be maintained, et cetera. I'm not sure. He might, might or might not, uh, I'm sorry, and I'm, I'm seeing now Gio is not on the, the call right now. So unfortunately, he won't be able to respond, but that is something that we'd need to, uh, work out in the study.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Um, and then just a couple of other questions. Um, so can staff explain California Vehicle Code Section, uh, two, one, one, zero, one, subsection F, and what it means by implementing the circulation element of a general plan? I, I guess what I'm, I'm curious, does, does that allow a jurisdiction to close streets to have the, uh, to vehicle traffic for any reason, as long as it's attached to a general plan?
Uh, I'm, I'm sorry to say that I don't have the answer to this. Um, other than there are different, um, things within the code that do allow us to, um, close it, and that's really what we'd be bringing this consultant aboard to help us identify. So we're not asking for council to, um, tell us the, 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 um, which regulatory path we would use for, um, creating a permanent closure. The consultant would help us determine which one is most applicable to the situation, um, as it's evaluated.
And, yeah, same. Okay, perfect. And, and then, yeah, I'm, I'm curious, you know, I think a, a lot of this really lends itself to, um, to what we've already discussed, and I think budgeted for as far as an economic development planner or manager, or whatever title we, we ultimately agreed on. I, I can't recall at this time. Where are we in the process of, of hiring that person? And will they be able to kind of be brought on board to be able to be a part of this, um, this kind of reimagining?
So let me, uh, respond to that. The recruitment is underway. We're not, uh, I believe, uh, that, wouldn't use the term on the street at the moment, but it is, uh, uh, expected to be on the streets soon. Uh, to your question on having that individual be a part of this, uh, that's certainly our, our expectation. Uh, but as you've seen, this is clearly more work than any one individual.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and I, I thought the, I, I thought the process that Santa Barbara engaged in, having the, uh, the master plan and, and really having the various stakeholders really seemed to make a lot of sense for, for Palo Alto, especially having, uh, that, that, that person either leading it or playing a, a major role in that when the, when the time comes. And hopefully, the timing will be able to work out nicely. I see, I'm out of time. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I'll go ahead and wade in then. So, uh, a, a few things. First, um, I think we want to remind ourselves of how this whole discussion fits in with the council priorities. And that doesn't necessarily mean that, uh, it provides easy answers, but two of our priorities that we discussed in pretty good depth, um, a month ago were economic recovery and transition. And we were all very deliberate in saying, we, we certainly recognize that we want to, uh, support recovery, but we also realize that, that, um, we're in a period of transition in both work models, um, of hybrid work so that we, at least for the next, uh, few years, may take a while before we have the same amount of, um, office workers on a given day. Uh, I think that over time, companies will adjust and they'll, they'll hire more workers in the same space and, and have shared time, but I think that'll take, uh, several years to percolate through the system. Uh, and then we, we also recognize that the whole retail environment, uh, is transitioning as well, and we, we have to try to figure out, um, how to support, um, our valued retailers uh, and, uh, recognize the transitions that are, are happening in that sector and how we can help them thrive through that period. And a second priority is community health and safety. And we had quite a bit of discussion on what does that mean? And there were several things in, involved in there, uh, but. What does that mean? And there were several things in involved in there, uh, but. Uh, a good part of what we discussed on community health is. The need to be active in in ways that help promote. Uh, a sense of well-being, a sense of community, and in particular for our youth as um. As they've gone through an exceptionally hard period the last couple of years. And so when we look at these opportunities, um. On on particularly Calav, uh, the Ramona Street is a a smaller issue, important still, but smaller. Um, I want to look at how we can have opportunities to. To create these environments as ones that families and children and really intergenerational experiences. Uh, can occur there and be nurtured. Um, and there's, I think, a tremendous number of opportunities in that way with. With arts of different sorts. Uh, we had the great Kodart exhibit uh downtown that was interactive. And kids were participating in in expressing themselves that way, and I know a number of those artists were interested in. In potentially being permanent artists um on Calav. Um, so just want to introduce those concepts. Then. On the level of of the the process that we're looking at and what we're doing tonight. Um, I actually think that the staff report is uh is. Far too focused on um this being a traffic engineering. Project and that the long-term uh final uh development is. What's leading this. Uh, that will follow, and uh and there's there's both. Going to be a traffic engineering component to what we do ultimately. And the long-term streetscape uh will be important, but I think they flow out of design. This is ultimately. An urban design project and one that we need multiple stakeholders to all get together. And be part of this process. Uh, we would have both. Experts um that would uh come in with domain expertise and a consultant. Um, but we also have local stakeholders who give context that's very important from. Um, uh, our local architects. I noticed that the AIA was the sponsor or lead. On the Santa Barbara uh project, um, urban designers, residents that are both. The neighborhoods that are all for more neighborhoods that surround this area. Um. As well as broader residents throughout the uh city, retailers, uh, both merchants and. Service providers and then the restaurant and food and beverage folks, all those different parts, uh, youth, property owners. And then uh uh local businesses that are uh providing workers. Uh, including the Stanford Research Park and other major employers, and then. We have boards and commissions uh that are very enthusiastic about participating this. The Architectural Review Board, the Planning and Transportation Commission, Public Arts Commission. And potentially the Human Relations Commission as we really look at this as a set of opportunities. So I I think that what we want to do, try to zero in tonight on is. Um, are we wanting to move in a direction that? Uh, takes the temporary condition and addresses the. Uh, the shortcomings frankly of a very temporary somewhat haphazard condition and. Uh, moves forward with improvements in the near term on that. Uh, that begins to have a design process that brings in the stakeholders. That would look at short-term changes as well as um medium and longer term ones. With the ultimate plan being the outcome, but I think that the. The improvements that we would do in the short and medium term also inform the final design, and so leaping forward and trying to. Decide right now what all final design elements might be before we've. Taken it from our current haphazard approach to something greater, or even before we've. Uh, gone through uh community Sharet type process, which is actually what we directed back in June. Um. I think that's a little bit out of sequence. We're gonna need to get there, but uh I I want to frame. Try and frame our discussion around that sequencing to some degree and begin to think through this process. Uh, how we move forward. So who would like to go next? All right, um. In the uh in the absence of that, I'll go ahead and um continue a little bit. Um, so. I think we've we've heard from a lot of folks that. Uh, we have challenges with where we are today, uh, but I think. On in particular on Calav, there needs to be a recognition that. We have been in a state for the last two years of a drastically reduced daytime. Population there, and that's what made Calav what it was before the pandemic. Peak hours for parking and and um shopping and restaurants were all midday. They were not evening. And so what's happened is that that has remained very slow. It started to recover a little bit in the fall. It's now starting to recovery and even the last week or so again, I expect in the coming weeks. We're going to see a pretty significant uh recovery, not to where we were before in terms of number of office workers. But stronger than what we've seen for the last two years. Um, and what we've instead of seen is a growth in the evening uh vitality, and we even. We we had some of the retailers that, you know, when we have. Small independent retailers. They're really good at knowing their goods and their business and serving the public. They are not necessarily people who specialize in marketing and looking at a broader vision or. A new circumstance. Uh, we saw pictures of. How goods retailers in a lot of places, and I'm sure many of us have seen it in Europe and elsewhere. Where they utilize the sidewalks and and whether they sell the goods from the sidewalks or or display them, they. They draw people into their stores. Uh, Jessica Roth has done some really creative things um to bring people to her store. But the problems there are are not because um of the street closure. The foot traffic is two problems. We don't have the office workers back yet, and we're still two years into this. Um, uh, having people walking down the center of the street rather than on the sidewalks. And so as Councilmember DuBois had said, that's that's overdue to fix it, and we've seen what Santa Barbara did and others have done. Where you put a slow bike lane down the middle, and that may be wide enough for emergency vehicles. We'll figure that out if that's necessary. Um, but address those things. We've we've heard uh members of the public who were. Critical of kind of the the aesthetics of what we have today. I am too. I I think we're two years into this and we we are well behind neighboring cities in terms of. Unified aesthetic themes and getting out from uh very temporary uh approaches to something that is. Medium term. And we've, we even now are just starting to look at some of the. Closure-related parking issues. Uh, it means that we we have to. Have better accommodation for delivery vehicles and for handicap parking, but we have perpendicular streets and we have. Parking immediately behind the stores, and we simply take these issues and and tackle them and solve them. Um, they they aren't monumental, they need to be solved. Um, and uh, and I even see that, you know, we we at different times now, we're starting to get. Uh, more and more bike riders to these downtowns. Every bike rider eliminates the need for a parking space. Uh, and yet we often have inadequate just part of bike racks, but not to mention that we. We right now have both of these closures as. Not just not pro biking, they're anti-bike biking. We tell people that you're not supposed to ride your bike uh down those streets. And uh, that's the opposite of what we we should be doing and what other cities are doing. Um, I said, put the bikes down the center, slow prohibit electric bikes. I would advocate because we want slow biking. Um, and uh and have push the people onto the sidewalks, and as Councilmember DuBois said. Make sure that um encroachment doesn't mean that. Uh, that if we have uh plenty of space for tables on on the sidewalks, they, we shouldn't be allowing them. To inhibit pedestrian movement there. It's very important for the retailers that people are comfortable and enjoying riding down the sidewalks. I mean, walking down there. I'll add one other thing that um. Uh, Vice Mayor Ku, Councilmember DuBois, and I had the opportunity a couple of weeks ago to uh meet with. We actually have, in addition to the the Danish consulate on Calav, on the corner of Birch and and Calav, we have. In our community, um, a Flemish uh trade mission. And um, in that discussion, they they mentioned just what a great bike community they thought Palo Alto was, and these people have lived here for several years. Um. But they also said, oh, yeah, we we really think what you're doing on the street closures closures is exciting. That they have been doing this throughout Flanders for a number of years, and most of their cities have now closed their downtowns, and I said, okay, but. How did you address the problem of making sure that retailers also benefit from this? And they said, well, basically, the more that we improved that. Pedestrian environment, just more people kept coming. And it lifted all the boats. And that was the outcome, that you see just greater and greater vitality. I will add that. What I'm seeing in evenings there now is two different um. Uh, sets of of patrons that are in addition to our community coming down and finding this is one of the most warm. Uh, social environments that they've had, and that is workers who used to go home after work. Are now staying around because it's a place to be. Second, we're seeing people come from outside of Palo Alto just for that. Environment on that street now. Um, I saw a heat map recently, and I was astounded by how widespread. Um, the uh the people who are coming for that in the evening are. So, uh, Councilmember Tanaka, you're next up. I see you have your hand.
Thank you. Um, so, um, yeah, I think you staffed your report on this. I I agree with a lot of what my colleague said earlier, which is. That we want the foot traffic near the windows. I I said that for many, many years, even about even about the farmers market where I think. The farmers market, we should actually have the booths back to back. Uh, and people onto the sidewalk versus the back of the booth facing uh facing the windows. So I I think this is something that's been a problem for a long time, and I I still quite don't quite understand why we can't fix it. I've heard issues about like. Um, the ease of loading the booth back on on and off. I heard, you know, comments about fire trucks. But it seems like it's solvable. It's something like we should be able to do. And um so definitely in in our design, more permanent design, we need to think about this because it it it's it robs. The retailers who pay top dollar to be on a high street, so to speak, and not get the foot traffic, right? It's like putting them in a dark alley. It doesn't make sense. I think that um, I think what we also need to do, and I I would like to see as part of the. The RFI or RFP, depending on how we do it. But is thinking about what is the net economic benefit? Because what we wanted to do is we want to maximize economic benefit in the area. And I I asked for this uh when we looked at University Avenue, and staff didn't have time to to do it, but I I think we need to do this. We need to understand. The before and after. Uh, we need to understand what works and doesn't work. And so I think it's it's incumbent upon us to do that. In general, the State Street, uh, I uh. Pictures and and photos were quite inspiring. I I actually think it's quite interesting to to think about it that way. And so, you know, we'd love to see more about how things, especially monetarily, worked for the people. Um, in that area. One question that I I've still been thinking about, I've been trying to figure out how do we do this? Is, you know, this is public land, so how do we monetize the public space? What is the rent? How does that, how do we make it fair? Um, and what happens to that money? Um, I think what we want to do is we want to maximize the the um. The economic. Activity, um, but then, you know, if if let's say there's rent for that space, where does it go? How does it, how is it used? Um, of course, the city girls use money, so maybe that's one way. You know, in general, the city hasn't done a good job in in um. Monetizing our 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 land and and, you know, this is probably a good way to do it where. Um, yeah, so I have, I I have, I don't have really great um. Great insight on that, but I don't know if if staff has any ideas of how. How like to say State Street or other Council Street or other places, how do they, what do they do in terms of monetization? Does it, does anyone know?
Hi, Chair, um, Councilor Tanaka, this is Rachel Tanner, Assistant Director of Plan and Development Services. Um, I cannot speak to State Street. I'm not sure if Mr. Fukujie can speak to their uh methodology for monetizing. I, as part of the permanent parklet program, we are looking at other cities' models of how they've. Charges for their for their parklet programs, and it does vary pretty widely. Um, and one thing we're especially experiencing is that while there are many um new pandemic-related initiatives that cities have taken on. Many are like us in that they were uh emergency responses, and so they're still undergoing their work to figure out how they're going to charge. And so we've had to look to cities that have had um more ongoing programs before the pandemic to really understand their methods, and it does vary widely from. Some that is like very, very low cost to some that have annual, you know, fees that they're they're charging, so. We can bring you more on that related to the Parklet Program, and I think similar method would apply to this type of program as well.
Okay, great. Yeah, I think that would be very important for us as we decide what we're going to do permanently. Um, I think the comment that a lot of folks have made about office workers is really true. It, they may not come back. Uh, hopefully, they, some of them will at least, but a lot of them might might never come back, and so we have to think about that. Um, and, you know, maybe we have to make this much more, but much more of a destination. Versus something where people just pick up, pick something quick, um, you know, on the way to work or on the way home. Um, so I I think this is, this is something that's going to create a shift in and probably the curation of the businesses. Um, the service businesses in the in the area. I also disagree with the aesthetics. Right now is very, very temporary, and it doesn't look very, very good. Um, it could be so much better. I've seen other places, in in State Street included, that look real, look way better. And of course, once we figure that out what to do, we can make it a lot better, but I think there's definitely aesthetic issues. Um, and I actually like to come up about how it's kind of anti-biking because. Uh, I'm a, I'm a pretty big biker, and it it also, you know, I I actually don't go down Cal out because it's, um, you know, I kind of go on the side streets, but. Or the back alley, but but still, right, you would think that, uh, why not encourage biking? Why not encourage multiple modalities, um, you know, walking, biking? Um, dining altogether, so I I think it's better to have it there and act helps activate the streets. Um, and and then, you know, kind of the the big thing, and I I spent many, many years in physical retail. Working with retailers, and what is a big thing that's happening is the changing nature of retail. And um, you know, there's there's kind of um. What's happening in retail, physical retailers is two, two things. One, one thing is lowest cost possible, right? And so you're looking at your Costco's, your Home Depot. Um, the Walmarts, right, where you're trying to get the lowest possible cost, and and they actually, they beat. The the cost of online, right? Because it does cost money to deliver stuff. So that's one, that's where one kind of physical retail is headed. The other part of physical retail is more like the Apple Store. It's more about the experience. It's less about the purchases. Um, it's much more about giving people a chance to interact with products. It's like data, right? As you guys might have seen. It's it's about kind of filling the product, interacting with it. Um, you know, trying to understand how it works. Um, and so that's, that's the other thing to think about is. Is um, i- i- you know, i- i- so physical reasons is is either experiential or it's super low cost. Um, you know, for something like Calav, it probably doesn't make sense for that to be super low cost. It probably makes sense for that to be more experiential, but that does mean. The change of retail, right? The change of mix of retail and the intent of retail. And um, and so that's something we have to think about, and hopefully, as we, you know, do the RFI or RFQ, we. Um, we. Um, think about this because this is the long-term trend. This is the mega trend that's happening. Right? And and if you're not either lowest cost or the most experiential, you're really toast in the in the physical retail space right now. So, um, anyways, I think we need to go more towards the experiential, and make sure that's supportive, and this would also help activate the whole, the whole area. That's all I had right now. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Councilmember or Vice Mayor Ku.
Oh, um, I wanted to ask, you know, it it would seem like we would want to be doing design of the street. With all the stakeholders before you do the. Street closure analysis of feasibility. Is that not so?
Yeah, so that's actually um exactly the process that's um. Sorry, that's trying to be just describing here. I'm hearing piano at your house, but um. Oh, sorry, apologies. Um, the um, the feasibility study would work with the stakeholders. Um, it it's all, it. There's, there's a little bit of chicken and egg, but you know, it needs to understand the impact on the businesses in order to um inform the design. Um, also need to hear from stakeholders, different. Also need to hear from stakeholders, different, you know, you know, anyone that really hasn't wants to provide input into what this potential new re-envisioning of the the area could look like. Yeah, but that is, that is what will inform eventually what the feasibility is of of the regulatory approach that's taken for closure. So I think that's why the the term feasibility, as I mentioned in the beginning, is a little bit confusing, because it's really not just determining the feasibility, it's determining alternatives and different concepts that could be used and how those different concepts would impact businesses in the area.
Thank you for that. So the mayor has brought up, you know, the charrette, right? It the design charrette, so that would also include our economics development person, right? I mean, it would have to if we're gonna plan all of this intensely and comprehensively. City manager.
Well, economics are certainly a part, and just to repeat in some ways what Mr. Cami was saying, these all really need to go in parallel and and will say hand in hand with respect to the economics of any any concept that's developed, the the physical and and arguably operational elements of circulation, access, user experience and the like, and the design aesthetic. I mean, those are just, I'll use those as three general categories, but they, again, they do need to go in parallel and ultimately fit together. And in terms of both the intent as well as the the cost and ability to take the concepts and make it real.
Right. I mean, but so then everything has to go hand in hand, but I guess what I'm wanting to be reassured about and to hear is that there's also the intent of supporting the existing retail businesses and neighborhood serving businesses, even the restaurants, and making them their business successful, but also attracting new business, which is what I am kind of leading to is to the future opportunities for these areas, which is, which is something that I just want to make sure that is a part of this hand in hand process that you have outlined.
Well, I think that certainly everyone's intent. At at the same time, I think the comment was made earlier that there is in in some ways an evolution that is happening. And depending on the concept, the vision, the the themes of how the planning takes shape, that that will be more inviting for some types of businesses than it will be for others. And I think it's it's important to acknowledge that. While, again, it's not, we're not walking into this effort with the intent of picking winners and losers, but again, I think some of that is inevitable through the the process of changing the physical environment.
I I guess I'm a little bit perturbed about, you know, that we're be choosing winners or losers and that sort of thing, because we're actually not doing that. We're actually opening the opportunities. So I think maybe just put that out there. I guess the, you know, I guess yeah, I guess that's all. Actually, no, I did want to say, you know, I wanted to support also what the mayor said about the sidewalks, as well as Councilmember Tanaka and Councilmember DeBois. The sidewalk does have to be pedestrian-friendly and that the tables from the restaurant needs to move away from it. But also, I want to make sure that it is also ADA compliant, so there is that component that needs to be enforced. So thanks, that's it.
Thank you, Councilmember DeBois.
Yeah, apologies for the piano music. So I I want to go back. I I guess I'm I want to make sure I understand the situation we are in right now as we consider permanent closure. So the street's been closed for a while under COVID. We're hearing it might be 12 to 18 months to do this RFI, maybe more because we don't have staff. So really, it's a question for Molly. You know, is there an issue if we temporarily close the street for three years while we're doing planning? And, you know, if COVID's really no longer an emergency?
Right, so we've asked ourselves this question for these many months, and so far in our jurisdiction and elsewhere, we haven't felt that we have invoked that temporary closure inappropriately, given the circumstances. At some point, there we we will be in a situation where it will not fit well to apply that, and I think that's, it's very timely. It's part of the reason why staff is bringing this forward to council for some further direction on as to whether you want to entirely wind up this program and go back to pre-2019, or do you want us to look at you know, design options for a more permanent closure that would then invoke a different legal basis? So I think we have time to do it, but we shouldn't wait for years under the the current structure.
So if I hear what you're saying, if if we're moving forward the design process, it might be okay to keep it temporarily closed even for a couple of years? Not that we have to like reopen in the middle while we're doing the planning?
So there there's no specific time limit on that temporary closure? And I'm not aware of any court case or challenge to using it. That said, we should get organized and think about what you know, what we're wanting to do, and ultimately, if we're looking at a more indefinite slash permanent, nothing in life is totally permanent forever, but ongoing and long-term program, then we want to look at a different legal basis for for the closure, and and staff listed some of them for you there in the in the report, but we don't need you to decide which one to use, as as Phil said. We just need counsel to say whether you're interested in looking at a a longer-term program.
Yeah, no, I understand. I'm just trying to think about the interim, you know. A year from now, things could be back to normal. You know, we're in the planning process, but we haven't completed our findings, right? So are we, is there a risk, I guess, in the middle there?
I I think I think we don't have a clear answer in terms of a clear statutory time limit. We don't have anything from a court. I think the risk is low, Tom. I think I think we can continue and do our work in a reasonable way, and we should be able to be fine. I can't 100% promise that there won't be someone who wants to challenge that.
Right, right. Okay, I just wanted to, again, a little concerned about how long this could take. And then I was looking while people people were making comments. We did, we did celebrate the redesign of Calav while I've been in council, like back in 2015, we had a ceremony. And so again, I'm open to moving forward with the RFI, but I also want us to be really sensitive to the impacts of the businesses on the street who have already gone through a recent street redesign. You know, it was seven years ago, but that's it wasn't that long ago. And then, you know, I guess it's not really before us tonight, but on the temporary closures ending in June for Ramona and Calav, I I personally would really like to see how things develop in the next few months with the daytime population and have that topic come back on whether we reopen in the short term or not. So with that, I mean, I'll attempt to make a motion. I sent it into the city clerk. I basically like to make the staff motion with some additional details of things to consider in the in the RFI. So the first part of it should all be the staff discussion or the staff recommendation. And then if you could, let me see. Yeah, and then on D, if you can make everything below, if you can make E through I is like kind of subpoints of D, that would be great. Actually, A or D was also a subpoint, I think, I think we've lost. I just had included the RFI in addition to the items mentioned in the staff report, these items. So I could talk to those if there is a second, and I'm I'm open to modifications, but basically, what I was trying to do is make the staff motion, and then maybe call out a couple of items that we discussed. Just to make sure that they're included.
Do we lose Pat? Is Pat there?
I'm here.
Okay. So I'm not hearing a second, although I was, okay.
All right. Well, again, I I really just trying to move forward the staff motion. I hope most of these aren't controversial. I'm sure I there about considering it be a partial closure is probably the most controversial. I'd be interested in going out to a consultant and just evaluating that as one of the options. But, you know, if I'm the only one, that's that's open for discussion. But you?
Well, I'm interested to hear about, you know, whether closing, what what the impacts are from the study. But I thought you added, you said that you were gonna add in here coming back and discussing the whether we should permanently close or reopen in June. Did you add that in here?
I don't know. Do we need to include that? We have the due date coming, but I I assume it will come back.
It will, yes. Either as a part of the follow-up action here or or follow-up to the direction here, or independently, given the deadline will be coming up.
Okay, well, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Councilmember Cormac.
Thank you, Mayor Burt. Councilmember DeBois, as the maker, I'm not sure what C is saying.
C was part of the staff motion, but we haven't really discussed it. So he can either delete it, or somebody can give direction if they have so.
Fine with deleting it. I think the city manager just said that that would come back, correct?
Well, this, I think, what I read this as art and entertainment activities. Is that what this was meant to be?
Um, actually, to to give this a really storied background, but this actually came from the original item that was I'm sorry, I don't remember the date, but this item was originally just an item, was going to be just an item providing background on the temporary California Avenue closures, and then when it didn't get heard, it got rescheduled, and the the permanent closure item got added to this, sort of combined to this item. So this is kind of a remnant of that, although some of that background is is in the the existing report.
Yeah, I'm okay just deleting it for now.
I think that would make it a little bit more straightforward. Okay. Yeah, I'm gonna, I'll just go ahead and propose an unfriendly to delete CI.
Well, why don't you first see whether he's
Well, he already said, pardon me, maybe the maker would consider it a friendly, but I thought from his statement, he wouldn't.
Again, I'd like to see where the majority is. And again, the idea would just be to have the consultant consider it. If it's impractical, it would come back with that. But yeah, so make it an unfriendly.
Well, I will second that amendment.
Okay. Shall I speak briefly?
Yeah.
All right. In order to do some of the things that we've talked about today, I think we're gonna have to make some permanent changes to the space to really achieve all of those objectives that I know we share, and we've heard from staff over the past couple of years of the difficulties of doing the temporaries, you know, on Friday and then back on Sunday. And again, I I we're not going to be seizing the opportunity if we if we use half measures. Those are my thoughts on that.
Yeah, I I see this as an impracticality for the design that we're looking at, the design that exists and the design that we're looking at. The notion of all those restaurants, taking what's even the temporary street furniture and scape, streetscape that they have and 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 moving that out back and forth, I I think is both not practical and and not the direction that I'd I'd like to go. And then, once we vote on this, I I have something else that want to raise. So anyone who wishes to speak to just this amendment? Okay, I I'm not seeing anyone. Let's go ahead and call the rule on the amendment to drop CI.
Councilmember Stone?
Yes.
Councilmember Phil Seff?
No.
Councilmember Tanaka?
Yes.
Councilmember Cormac?
Yes.
Count, Mayor Burt?
Yes.
Councilmember DeBois?
No.
Vice Mayor Koo? Motion carries four to three.
May I continue?
Yeah, go ahead.
Great, thanks. I wonder if the maker and the seconder would modify the language in C2 to say, consider methods. I don't know that we've yet made the determination that we'll be doing that. Great. I'm Vice Mayor Koo? Yes, not. Okay, great.
Yes.
For the clerk, it's changed determined to consider, right?
Yeah, C2 would change the word determined to consider. Thank you so much. Fine with three. Willing to look at four. I'm not quite sure what I mean, Mr. Cami, would C5 already be included as part of whatever the work is being done?
Uh, yeah, that would be.
Okay, so not necessary, but it's fine to leave it there. Now, C6 is I'm concerned about, and I don't feel we've gotten a very good answer, so let's say we, C6 is not in there, and we pass this tonight, and we, will staff come back to us before the 2023 budget or not?
I think I need to coordinate with Kylie on that. I I so sorry, was somebody speaking there?
I was saying, go ahead, go ahead and coordinate.
Sorry. Yeah, no, I I think we would need to coordinate. I mean, yeah, we could bring a budget request as part of the process. Just noting that we're not exactly sure what the the budget amount would be.
Also, perhaps just for clarification, this, the context of CVI appears to be speaking to the scope, or maybe it's the outcome of that work as opposed to setting
The maker was suggest, so I'm concerned about the delay if C6 is there, and that's what I'm trying to understand from staff. If we do not have C6, is there a hope that we're going to get this back to vote on before we vote on the 2023 budget?
So let me let me venture a response, and Mr. Cami can can correct if I get it wrong. Based on the well, two thoughts. One is certainly we'd like to evaluate options to get help in this work, whether it be through consultants and and other stakeholders. With that said, based on what we know today on staff availability, I think in the best-case scenario, we would be bringing it back at at the time of the budget process, and I I think that that may be even too optimistic. Philip, can you speak to timing?
Yeah, I I think that you you really did Yeah, I I think that you you really did nail it. That's kind of my concern with coordinating this with the the budget process. And just noting also that, you know, one of the things that we mentioned in the resource impact is that we don't have staff to work on this right now. And so we really do need some sort of reprioritization or. Or hold on that's currently existing in our in our work process. I mean, even just to get this, you know, go through the RFI processes is work.
Okay, I mean, that was that was kind of my intent. I I didn't think there was any way you were gonna do this before the budget. I thought maybe you could have a better price system in the budget timeframe. And so if 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 the price swell to a million dollars, I'd like the ability during the budget process to consider it with other projects. That that was basically my intent there was just, let's figure out how much it's gonna cost.
Then I then I I'm gonna reluctantly agree that it's, it can remain. Thank you.
So where do we leave on that? I thought we just had a clarification that that. CVI would not necessarily be coming back at the budget time, but that's in the motion still.
Well.
There would be, there would be an estimate, I think is what I interpreted Kylie's head nod to be.
Also, I mean, I also heard Mr. Cammy suggest that the budget might be too soon, so I'd love to leave that in there to make sure it shows up in the budget.
Okay. All right, so I'll wait in on a couple of things. First, I want to check whether the maker would be receptive to under. CI to also dedicate those revenues toward. Partial funding of this process.
I'm not sure I understand that. When when it be done by the time we collect the rents?
Pardon me?
Wouldn't the project be completed when we start to collect rents?
Uh, no, we could very feasibly be correcting, collecting rents in the near term. There, we're we're whether, and that applies also to downtown, but. I, as you've been emphasizing, we need to begin to transition toward what would be reasonable rents for. Parklet spaces and I I'll just say that I'm I'm not saying that we necessarily, we we might do it in two steps to help them. But I've heard from from a number of the folks with the parklets to say, yeah, we fully expect to pay for public spaces.
So do you want to keep it more flexible, though, like? Some of some of the revenues will be used for partial funding of the process or?
Well, or we could even just say evaluate whether to have that.
That's fine.
Okay. And then, on this whole budget process, we're still looking at this as one big grand RFP or RFI. And I'm pretty convinced what we need to do is sooner rather than. Later, we begin this process, get going on the charrette that the council had directed last June that we would do. That is, in Santa Barbara, we we saw that it is not primarily a staff driven process. But begin to get this going with a consultant in the near term toward a charrette and then move at the next steps. Whether it's with the same consultant or otherwise, but get going on the charrette process sooner rather than later. And. And so I'd. I'd like to propose that we have a. Add to this a for staff to proceed on commencing a charrette process. Prior to the full RFI or RFP product.
So, yeah, go ahead and finish.
Well, and I I'd really like to see that commenced before June and we bring in a consultant at a modest amount. That I think, city manager, what's 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 a dollar threshold at which you would need a. Budget amendment ordinance, or could we do this through discretionary funds, or how might we proceed if that's what we want to do is get this going? Well, in terms of dollars, I'll ask Ms. Nozay to comment on. Availability of dollars. And if I might frame it in what we still have remaining in COVID emergency funds, if that if that's a bucket that's still there and this may apply. Sure, perhaps Ms. Nozay could could comment on that. Before you do, though, let me, let me perhaps make a comment on the sequencing here. My understanding may be not exactly right, so certainly welcome correction perhaps from Mr. Fukujie. But it's my understanding that the sequence is really to start with the data collection. That would form the basis for a number of activities, including the charrette. In addition, the Santa Barbara example, as you saw, the charrette activity, and I think we couldn't hear his his. Audio when he mentioned that there were actually, was it 16 design teams hired in order to to undertake? That effort and a series of sponsors for that work, which I believe included at least a dozen companies that were funding. Can I clarify? And hopefully he's here. I don't think those design teams were hired. I think those were pro bono, and if he is still here, he can clarify, but it's not my understanding. Oh, there he is.
Yeah, hi. I mean, we can always check into the details of of this. My understanding is it was. Pro bono work, but I think there were some costs that were covered and we need to look at what those actually, you know, were. I think that the question of sequencing, you know, but the the Santa Barbara story, and there's many ways to do it. It's not the only way to do it. But, you know, they did the data collection before doing the the charrette. And then after the charrette, then they had, it was, they had a lot of concepts and then they formed an advisory, they're in the process of forming an advisory committee. To look how to do a master planning effort to to realize the 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 concepts that form like a vision for the future of what could happen. And that was all, you know, managed through a subcommittee of the council that was looking at how to handle that. So that's kind of what the the process was, was there.
And if I if I might add, that State Street master plan from the both the the. The geography and the and the scale and the scope of it is at least five times the scale of what we're looking at. So we should look at whatever they have and that we'd be doing a much more simplified. A version of that, but still get going on. A process where we'd start envisioning what's possible, not deciding. But that's what the shret does is it it starts giving real concepts that people can look at. It it starts doing some problem solving in theory, but not. Not a determination of what we're going to implement. It it right away starts giving people. A vision and solutions, prospective solutions to to barriers. And that's what we haven't done really over the the past two years.
So that, when I, when I hear you start to list this, wouldn't we include that as like the phase one of the project that we go out for bid for?
Yeah, but it's not necessarily the the same consultant. I I just don't want to have that first step held up by a master plan.
But I also heard that we don't have the staff to work on this, so we have to hire a consultant. Can we do that without a RFP?
Or something far simpler for a charrette than for the master plan that, you know, an RFP for that whole project is a big RFP. An RFP to lead a charrette for just this Calav is a a far simpler RFP as well. As well as a simpler project and a lower cost project.
If I can, just to to note that one of the things that I think would need to lead to a charrette, and you might intend this in the, you know, proceed with commencing a charrette. But the data collection, I think, is really critical for the the charrette to be able to really proceed. So that's something that would need to be a first step to commencing a.
And I would, I would disagree that it needs to be. It can be, but it needn't be. And Palo Alto, when we did our 98 comp plan, we had significant community charrettes. And and it was not based on a whole data collection. It wasn't on a massive RFP. It, I I I really wanna try to have us not make this more massive and complex than it needs to be. So that we can begin to make progress sooner and that that early progress will inform the master plan. As opposed to being being hitched onto it and slowing down the whole process and just. Making it more complicated, costly and slower than what we really need. So it can be done either way. You can have a charrette that isn't, follows the data collection. We also, it could be some variation of that, some ways that we figure out how to come up with data. Collection at a certain level that can be obtained relatively quickly. So that's the concept and that's what I'd like to propose that we put in the motion that. That we commence on a design charrette. Preceding the, this can be a new, I don't know.
Clarance C right now.
Let's see. Okay. Was that there all?
No.
Okay. Okay, yeah.
So how how does staff, can staff come on in this? Is this reasonable?
Sure, let me take a crack at commenting here. I, you know, just to recognize as as Mr. Fukujie pointed out, you, this can be done in an humble voice. That that said, let me give you a professional perspective that the trade off we're we're talking about here. Is, we've talked about data collection and as has been discussed, it's really intended to get user input. As to both current experiences as well as expectations for what the 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 experience of the street could be in the future. In the absence of that, I I do think it makes it more difficult to coalesce around a goal. That the design charrette is intended to tease out and perhaps provide some some options for achieving. Quite frankly, when early on, we had talked about a design charrette based simply on current conditions, it was more focused on the aesthetics. Of the existing activities rather than a a more ambitious view of changing the character of the street. And potentially the the, again, the experience that that people would have on it. So, but frankly, I see this as as a bit of a fork in the road as to whether the charrette is done upfront. Or as as a part of a more ambitious activity. I was just trying to find our motions. I I found this. Earlier today from June and I think it was actually Councilmember Tanaka who had put it in the motion. But that, the, some of this data collection was part of that June motion. And frankly, we're now starting March. And. We had a direction that was intended to. So that at this point in time, we would be informed with some next concepts. So that we'd be making better decisions on where we're going from here. And we don't have any of that eight months later. And I'm very concerned with a notion that we just keep wanting to pile things up. Before we make any progress on this. We're overdue. We look at surrounding communities and. What we have is sloppy compared to surrounding communities. And what we're proposing is to keep it that way until we get some real expensive master plan over an extended period of time. And I know with discussions with the city manager that this kind of design shred was not something that he was intimately familiar with. When we made this motion, I was, and I have remained confident that it's the sort of approach we should be taking. And that we need to move forward and make some progress sooner rather than later.
So I, what I heard you just say was, are you, you want to limit this to the aesthetics of the existing situation?
Well, it's not just aesthetics, but it's, what it is, is to look at improvements on the existing streetscape. That would inform the long term design as well as improve the current conditions.
I mean, it seems closer to what Ed was describing is the smaller scale charrette, so.
Well, but I don't want a comprehensive data collection to pre, have to precede this threat, charrette, so we don't get going on it. There's, there's various versions of data collection and I mean, I I don't know how long it took Santa Barbara to have that one survey. If that's the kind of data collection we're talking about.
Well, but but what what city manager said was originally there was a shred that was limited to aesthetics of the existing. Rather than what I, what I took when you said this was a charrette for the long term design, which seemed premature to me.
I I don't think the original charrette was strictly limited to aesthetics. The concept.
Kind of short, it's short term versus long terms.
Well, call it, yeah, call it medium term. We've had two years of short term. So we're we're looking about what's the next steps, but that those next steps would also help inform the long term. You you pilot things and move it away from haphazard temporary things to something that is. A little better designed and and modestly better aesthetically. And we get both the benefits during the period at which we're waiting for the long term solution, which could also. Well, will in all likelihood be a much bigger funding project and take more time. And we get the benefits of that experience in the nearer term, whatever those lower cost interim measures would be. And we get to learn from those and they inform that longer term plan. So those are the two purposes of doing not only a charrette, but interim improvements.
I mean, I'm not hearing, I'm hearing a lot of concern from staff. Maybe you should make this one an unfriendly amendment.
Okay, and I I'll just say that, you know, this, this is really a council policy decision. We we hear staff's professional judgment on this. But we we need to lead on this and not follow. So I I wanna, I'll put that as a. Proposed amendment for a. Oh, well, it's C, yeah.
Mayor Burt?
Yes.
So did you want to, I, did you want to design charrette process prior to the full RFP? Or is it the survey data collection?
Well, they can be proceeding on the RFP in 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 parallel. But we won't have the results of that. We go through the RFP and then. And then we go through that process of a a full comprehensive design and that could be like a year and a half, like we heard. And so this would be. To commence with it prior to, it says the RFI RFP product. What I was trying to describe there is the outcome of hiring that, the entity and and doing that. The project that would be envisioned in the RFI or RFP. So if there's better wording to. So if there's better wording to clarify that intent. Uh, no, it's really prior to implementation of the RFI, RFP. Maybe that's the best way to put it. So that allows for the RFI, RFP to go out on the street in parallel. Yeah. City Manager?
As, as this is taking shape, what I'm hearing is, is a focus perhaps less about the charrette than it is about interim improvements. And that may be worth kind of teasing out what process we might need in order to get interim improvements. Let me offer that in addition to, again, the focus on aesthetics, the, the issue that staff has identified as something of a, of a challenge in the current situation is getting agreement from more than individual businesses on what approach should be taken for immediate changes. And as a result, Cara Apple in particular has been working individually with, with individual businesses. So I, I suspect it will require more than a charrette to, to.
But the, the concept is that the stakeholders would be in on that charrette. The very thing that you're describing of getting everybody together at the table and working through problems, that would be what the charrette process would attempt to do. What we've seen is that the way we've been approaching it of hustling hard and trying to respond to this business and that business without any integrated concept of where we're going is not working. And doing more of that is not going to work better. We need to break out of that cycle and bring the people together, bring stakeholders together in a facilitated process and come up with some consensus agreements on where we go. And I have faith from having done a lot of these processes that it's not going to be, as you described, winners and losers. I think that we will have solutions that will result in winners and winners. And that's what comes out of this kind of multi-stakeholder problem solving process. And, and that's just a different viewpoint from, from thinking that we're going to have necessarily winners and losers because problems aren't solvable. I think they are solvable. They're not, everybody always winning equally, but I think we can have a winners and winners process here. And that's, that's what I want us to move forward on. That's what the intent was last June. And here we are eight months later and we're back in the same discussion. Even though the council had given that directive in June. So that, that's what the intention is here.
Without due respect, I do have to make it clear that as you and I have spoken since that original direction, the idea and the implementation of the charrette has been something that you and I have been talking about. And it's, it's not a situation in which staff has left it unattended to.
Okay, well, I don't think belaboring that tonight is going to be the most productive thing. So this, the amendment that's, I think captures what I was trying to convey and, and what I'm hoping we'll do. So Councilmember Tanaka, your hand up on this amendment?
No, actually, the main motion.
Okay, so then if we don't have any more hands on this, we can vote on this amendment?
I have my hand raised and Vice Mayor Koo has not yet spoken to her second.
Okay, you said Vice Mayor what?
I don't believe Vice Mayor Koo has spoken to her second.
Oh, okay.
I was going to try to keep us going so that we can proceed. But I, I just want to say that I think that we do need to kind of start moving forward on, in order to give the merchants some confidence about how the street is. So either way, I think this will help move it along. So, um, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Cormac?
Thank you, Mayor Burt. I find myself perplexed about how we should best proceed because the feasibility study, which I just went back and reread on packet page 165, is really very traffic focused. And I don't know that it would necessarily generate the creative ideas and pretty watercolors, you know, that we saw. I'm also not convinced that just putting a charrette in before a separate process is a good idea. So I'm wondering if, anyway, speaking directly to this, I'm, I'm not willing to insert this in the main motion, but it does occur to me that perhaps we need to pivot from the staff recommendation to something that is more aligned with our discussion. So I'm not going to be supporting this amendment, but I think we should either be amending A to be clear about what we want and include the charrette and design thinking in the process. So that's where I am on this.
Councilmember Stone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I'm going to support the amendment. I think the sequencing that you described make, makes sense. I, I think it's kind of, in a very different context, but going back to our, our discussion on the last, on the last item as far as the Palo Alto process goes, I, you know, I, I think this is, I think this makes sense to try something new. And we've, we've done the old process for so long and, and seeing that it has really slowed down this. And, and I agree with the Vice Mayor of being able to have some certainty moving forward or at least being able to begin this process just, just makes sense right now. I, I, I do wonder, i- is your intent to, to ensure that this goes prior to the implementation? Or, or prior to, or in conjunction with, I'm not, not sure if you.
So the intent is that it would precede the implementation, but not necessarily precede the solicitation of the RFI or RFP. So they could get going on the solicitation. But the implementation of it is going to take, you know, up to 18 months.
Okay, all right, that, that was my, my one, my one concern. So if that, if that's clear to staff, then.
Okay. Sorry if that wasn't clear. Councilmember Tanaka?
No, my hand's for the main motion.
Councilmember Philseth?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think I'm not going to support this. I think, you know, we're sort of grappling with, you know, big picture versus near-term stuff. Yeah, I sort of feel like I hear us saying, well, you know, let's do something big, but we're calling it something small. And I started feeling uncomfortable with that and staff's pushing back like crazy on it. And so I think, I don't think we should try to micromanage staff on this one. I think we should do a few more turns and figure out what it is exactly what we want. So I'm going to vote no on this.
And Councilmember DeBois?
Yeah, I'm still, I feel like we are trying to play it both ways. I, I hear this kind of short, medium term versus the longer-term design. So trying to do something more quickly from like Council, Vice Mayor Koo. But then I also heard you say that it would be implemented in, you know, in 18 months. So again, I am, you know, one, at one point I thought you were talking about a kind of short-term design charrette that was small, but then it still feels large and should be part of the main process. So I have to admit, I'm still confused about exactly where you see this fitting in and what the scope of it is.
Well, just to try and clarify that, it, it's something that would be done in the, I would estimate the, the next three to six months. And it would be intended to begin to visualize and have ideas for, that would feed into the long-term design, but not determine them. And that those ideas would have a certain portion of them would be in abbreviated portions be able to be implemented, whether it's something like, for an example, would we, would we out of that say, yes, we want to have a bike lane down the middle and, and assure that pedestrians walk on the sidewalks? Are there certain aspects of the vitality of the street that we could do in the nearer term to look at? Okay, where might we have additional art or stages or whatever? I don't know, I don't want to, you know, precede this, but I, oh, and I, I neglected to mention one important thing that is in neither really the RFI scope that I saw nor that I've mentioned here. And that is the need in the near term to figure out how to market the street more effectively. We don't have any gateway signage on El Camino. We don't have wayfinding signs on the street. We could very easily have an app that would serve the street. Whole bunch of things that creative people could come up with quickly in a charrette that would help our retailers in the near term and not force them to wait a year and a half or two years before they start seeing any help to them. I think there's a bunch of things that we could do that would do that. So that, I don't know if that helps answer those questions. But it's not, it's not the master plan. It's to get some improvements going like other communities have already been doing. Okay, so let's go ahead and take a roll call on, on the amendment.
Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Koo?
Yes.
Councilmember Cormac?
No.
Councilmember Tanaka?
No.
Mayor Burt?
Yes.
Councilmember Philseth?
No.
Councilmember DeBois?
No.
Councilmember Stone?
Yes.
Motion fails, three to four.
All right. So that I, I, that was the first thing I wanted to propose. And then the other one is that the question of, right now, we, we're not acting to extend the closure and we have all these businesses that are in a state of a lot of ambiguity. And, and if we're looking at going forward with this RFI, but not giving them the clarity that we're going to keep the street closed through that period, then I think we've really got a problem for those businesses. We can't just go back and forth, back and forth on closure and they can't have uncertainty. A number of them I know want to improve the temporary measures just on their own, but they've got to have more visibility on how long we're committed to being, having the street closed and that whether we are intending, even if it's not finalized, that the anticipation is that we're moving toward a long-term closure plan. So it would be to extend the street closure throughout the period at which we would implement, I guess, the RFI or RFP process.
So this was my very first question. I, I don't think we were agendized for that.
Okay.
Yeah, yep, that, that's correct. This is a piece that possibly would have made sense to bring with this package of, of material, but we didn't. So if council wants to direct us to come back, we will come back even possibly on consent if you do have a direction on how you'd like that to go, to get that piece done.
So then it would modify it to direct staff to come back with a consent item for approval on consent to, as I said, to extend the street closure throughout the period in which we would be doing the RFI or RFP implementation. See. Do we have that? Sorry, is it? Okay. So do, do we have a second to that? Second. Okay. And so Councilmember Tanaka, if, if you're, if you're wanting to speak on the main motion, can you lower your hands so we are not confused on whether you're speaking to the amendment or not? Thanks. And Councilmember Philseth?
Thanks, I guess, I, I'd like to ask a question of staff, which is, you know, you, having, having looked at this issue for, you know, many moons now, you know, we gotta decide whether we're going to keep the street open or closed for another, whatever the RFI period's going to be, you know, a pretty extended period of time. I'd like to hear staff's thoughts on how we ought to make that decision.
Well, I'll take a first shot at it and our staff team certainly welcome to amplify or redirect as you see appropriate. This, this is certainly, as was noted, the, a important decision because during this interim period, if it is 12 to 18 months for us to conduct this study, we would like the merchants on the street to reinvest in the type of equipment that they have in the public right of way. And so I think that the discussion is helpful and would, I believe staff would agree that to the extent that we can justify maintaining a stable condition during that period, again, in the interest of encouraging the merchants on the street to upgrade their aesthetic, that, that's, that's a positive step. And perhaps Cara and others could chime in as to whether that's consistent with the conversations you've been having with folks on, on the street.
Yes, I would, I would agree with that. I think a lot of the merchants, they just want to know what to plan for. And knowing that they will go beyond June will likely result in them investing longer term into their spaces outdoors.
Okay. If we were going to decide, I guess the question I'm asking is sort of, do we have to decide right now? Or when this comes back, whether we're going to close the street permanently or not? That is, if we're going to go do this evaluation, evaluations, this study and, and then we're going to do charrettes and so forth. And it's going to take a while, but 18 months from now or 24 months from now, we decide, you know, we're going to open the street back up and we're going to partially open the street back up again and so forth. There's still going to be, but do we have to make that decision now? Or at least in the next couple of months? Or is it possible that we could say, close the street now and then we partially open it to decide to partially open in 18 to 24 months? Or the reciprocal? If we're going to keep it closed in 18 to 24 months, should we say, okay, we're not going to open it now, it makes no sense to open it now if we're going to close it again in 18 to 24 months? I guess what I'm saying is, do we have to know the outcome of the RFI, RFP before we make a decision on extending the street closure? I guess that's what I'm trying to ask.
Chime in here, just as a long-term street closure opening staffer. I think that you, the council does not. So it, and I think that's part of maybe the challenge of tonight is that there's kind of the, the, the ongoing situation, which is like open, close. And then there's a longer-term situation, which if the motion that's been made passes, would give staff direction based to let's research and bring to council more information, design, et cetera, to decide about the long-term. But you're correct in that your decision either way doesn't foreclose the future choice. So if you extend the temporary closure, that doesn't mean that when the study comes back that the council decides to close it permanently or vice versa.
Okay, so that, that's in the technical sense. In the practical sense, let's say for the sake of argument, we say, okay, we're going to leave it closed for 18 to 24 months. In practice, is that going to have implications and ramifications for, you know, these kinds of businesses are going to grow and those kinds of businesses are going to shrink, right? It's sort of back to the winner. It's sort of back to the winners and losers discussion. That is, is that going to become a fait accompli, right, over the next 18 months anyway? If we, if we decided one way or the other?
Yeah, I, I think that's a good question, and I, I don't want to say it's unknowable, but we probably could expect to see that the folks who have not appreciated or benefited as much from the closure the past two years may continue to see fewer benefits than those who have benefited greatly. And so I, I don't know, other than additional workers coming back to the city, that's probably the biggest unknown of how the workforce returns or doesn't. And does that lift the boat, so to speak, of those who have not benefited from the, both the closures, but also just the diminished kind of consumer base that has been just, just cut off in the city? So that could help them to do better, I guess, is that, that to me would be like what would help them to do better in the next year to 18 months than they have in the past two years.
Understand. So, but yeah, so there's other contingencies we don't know about that, that, that might make a bigger difference than that.
That's what I would, I would, I would assume, but again, that's kind of the positive look. The more maybe, a more pessimistic might say, well, it's just going to kind of perform the same that it has, the exact same it has for the last, let's say, year. And so for some who've heard that it's a challenge, some of that challenge may continue for their, their business. I think the other factor is, and Ms. Apple may be able to speak more to this, you know, there's a variety of businesses, there's retailers, there's restaurants, there's also, you know, financial businesses, other kind of more office-type businesses on upper floors. And so some of those just have a different profile overall. I think we, we tend to focus on the ground floor uses primarily, but there may be some other folks who haven't been as vocal, but who also have been just challenged either by the last two years and/or by the configuration of the street. I don't know, Kara, if there's anything you'd want to add to that. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, so, I mean, so, I mean, this is sort of the, 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 the nature of my question and thinking about this is really, I mean, if we direct staff to come back with an item on consent, extend the street closure, right, for 18 to, at least 18 to 24 months, you know, we're basically deciding tonight we're going to do that, right? And the question is, are, are we ready to decide that or do we need to like talk about it some? And that, that's really what I'm worried about. Thanks.
Vice Mayor Koo?
Thank you. And also, Ms. Apple, when you said that, you know, certain businesses are looking to see whether they should further invest into being out on the street, based on what we say tonight, there's also other businesses that just are not succeeding. Would, are you speaking about the restaurant businesses that are looking to do that further investment? How about all the others, like the cobblerie or, or the eyeglass store or de novo jewelers, you know? Are they also saying that they want to make investments? I, I guess that's what I'm trying to figure out.
That, that's a good question, and the retailers can go outside and use outdoor spaces. None have elected to do so. The businesses that are operating outside, which tend to be the restaurants, they have indicated that they want to make improvements to their aesthetics if they're going to stay outside, namely speaking to if we develop a permanent parklet program prior to determining longer-term road closure, permanent road closure, they may want to invest in a parklet rather than just a tent and tables on the street.
Yeah. Oh, thank you. That, that really helps clear it up also and which is why, as Councilmember Philseth said, you know, on this proposed amendment, it seems like we're making the decision already versus having, what we said earlier, was to have staff come back since this is not on the agenda about the closure, or the, the temporary closure, if we should extend or not. It should just come back to council so that we can have a discussion and get more information. Thank you.
Councilmember DuBois?
Yeah, I think, I mean, Councilmember Philseth and Vice Mayor Koo hit a lot of my concerns. It seems like if we pass this tonight, it really is indefinite closure. Could be a very long time before the design is done. And the issues, you know, we've got a lot of empty spaces on CalAB, and so I think we kind of shape what's going to happen. It's going to be businesses that can operate on the street as it is today. I think the other thing I'd be concerned about is is it going to be kind of productive to have people make additional investments now while we, before we've determined design standards, determine what the rent would be for the public street? It seemed like we'd be locking in a look or a hodgepodge look, and then we'd, we'd go through this process. And, you know, I really liked this, what Santa Barbara looked like was a lot of consistency in design and branding. And I think we'd miss that opportunity. We, people aren't going to make an investment again to get to the look that we come up with through the, through the design process. So like I said earlier, I, I feel like we're rated at a cusp right now with a lot of people returning to the office. I really would like to see how things develop in the next month or two on the daytime population side before we decide to close the street for two years.
I'll, I'll just add one other follow-up comment, which is that much of what several of my colleagues have been talking about of the dilemma that we're facing are the sorts of things that would be addressed if we had gone forward with a shret in the near term. This issue of, you know, how do we help the, those who are not benefiting in the near term? Right now, we're locking ourselves into a process to not help them for at least 18 months. And frankly, I'm skeptical that if we can't get, you know, the budgetary approval for the RFI or RFP before the budget cycle, and then go into this whole comprehensive process that we're looking at two years. And as of right now, we're saying we're going to keep either the status quo of a street closed for two years or we're going to potentially reopen it and then look at a master design and reclose it. I, I just don't think we're, we're thinking this through correctly on, on the whole process. And that the value that we would have of going through a shret process that would figure out how to improve things in the near term, I think is a real lost opportunity if we don't do it and that we're, we're struggling with ramifications of not doing that in this discussion on this item. But I can tell you that everything I hear from folks is just, you know, don't keep changing course and give them ambiguity. And that's, we don't support this amendment. That's just what we're doing. Councilmember Philseth?
It's, it's, I'm laughing, Mr. Mayor, that you just said that because I was sort of coming full circle going, man, we need a shret just to decide whether we're going to keep the street open or closed for the next 18 months while we make another decision, right? The, I guess, you know, the, I think we're sort of, you know, grappling tonight with two things. You know, the big picture is, gee, you know, that Santa Barbara State Street looks pretty good. Maybe we should do some of that and pick elements, and that's a big, big thing, right? And, you know, the danger is, you know, our charades and so forth sort of go in that, that direction, right? I don't know if we need a shret or not to decide whether to keep the street closed while we do the study or not. But there, there ought to be some kind of outreach, right? And so, but, but, I, I, I think, yeah, yeah, again, I'd like to hear staff's, staff's advice and wisdom on this, but, you know, we're going to have to decide in the next couple of months whether to keep the streets closed for 18 or 24 months or not while we do RFIs and RFPs in any way, we're going to do it in June anyway. So how staff think we ought to make that decision? How should we do outreach? Do we have time? Have, have you guys got a plan for that, right? It's, it's kind of my question. How do we, again, how do we make the decision? What are we going to know two months from now that we don't know today about whether we should keep the street open or closed? That's my question.
So if our target were, as it currently stands, the end of June as the, the date at which this closure would, would terminate, we would need to conduct the, whatever outreach occurs prior to that date and bring it back to you no later than June.
Do you, do you guys, do you guys sort of have that on your radar screen or are we dumping a bunch of new work on?
Radar screen, yes. To-do list, perhaps less so. And so let me ask staff to confirm whether that dimension is, is planned?
Again, certainly something on the radar. I think the, I think to the question of what we would know in a few months from now versus what we know today about the closure, I don't know that we would have a bunch of additional or new information, except perhaps to the degree that things are reviving, you know, people returning to work, et cetera, some of those kind of larger context updates. You know, a, a 12, 18, 24-month closure obviously is something pretty substantial to contemplate. And so certainly could understand if council wanted some more time to think about that, you know, than, than you may have tonight and maybe not a consent item. I, I do think that, you know, part of it would just be also the outreach to the, the public and to the stakeholders to let them know that the council's considering that and to see if there are additional comments that they would make or additional information they would provide. I do think part of, you know, what we are doing with the permanent parklet program, some of those aesthetic standards could possibly apply to the, the on-the-street configurations as well. It wouldn't be as specific, maybe as kind of a, a CalAB-specific design, but it could help to improve some of the coordination perhaps amongst the look of the, the setup on the street. But it, it wouldn't be as far as like the shret that the mayor kind of has described.
Okay, all right. Yeah, it's, it's, okay, I understand. So I, so that, so that would be my, and so thank you. That's helpful. And that would be my inclination is, you know, closing the streets for 12, 18, 24 months, you know, kind of in its current architecture as opposed to moving to something like Santa Barbara State Street. Yeah, it's a big decision. So we, we need to, you know, we need to be a little deliberate on how we're going to make this decision, when we have to make it by and what we want to know. But before that happens, again, you guys have limited bandwidth to work on this, so we're going to have to do the best we can. But we, we, we need some, we need some way that we're going to make this decision because it's kind of a big decision. And, 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 yeah, we should absolutely talk to, there needs to be outreach here. We got to talk to the neighbors. We got to talk to the businesses and so forth. So there needs to be at least some, some level in that, and we got to do as, as good a job as we can, given the resources that we got. But we need a plan.
Thanks.
Okay, so I could just comment on that, to, to that point. If, if the direction were to bring back for, for further discussion, that decision on, and again, we, we said 18 months. And, and the one dimension that we didn't describe our consideration there is the seasonality of the closure. So if it's a year, it puts us in potentially the, the winter, spring. And the thought process being if it's somewhere in that ballpark, it, it perhaps may as well be through the summer in terms of a, a time period for the closure to, to extend. But that said,
What's the, what's the period of the RFI, RFP?
Well, that's the 12 to 18 months that, that I spoke.
Sounds like, sounds like seasonality is an issue, right?
Well, correct. And so we've got multiple issues going in parallel here, so it, it's about as precise as our weather forecast. The, and, and I'm sorry, I was going to say that the, the thought being that if the directions or the best course of action is for us to come back for further discussion, we would take the opportunity to get some feedback from the businesses on that decision specifically. So let's say if it is, again, 18 months for the purpose of discussion, would those that are on the street consider putting some upgrades to their aesthetics, even if it's limited to that period of time? And what other response we get from other businesses that are not currently on the street?
Let me just ask one clarifying question. This 12 to 18 months, you're saying that you, you think that you'd be able to develop the RFI scope? And, and then, RFI doesn't get us anything other than feedback? So whether it's a full RFP from the outset or an RFI that would then lead to a second process, which is the RFP, and then we issue that whole contract? And then all these things that are part of that would be implemented in as little as 12 months from now? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I, I take the skepticism and, and would counter it with, we're trying to demonstrate moving this as quickly as we can.
Yeah, but I, I'm asking whether you're saying that you would accomplish all that in as little as 12 months and as much as 18 and not more than that?
That would be our target.
Well, okay. And I'm asking not whether we're just saying it's our target. I'm asking whether we would be able to accomplish that in that timeframe.
Okay, sitting here tonight, I could not commit to that.
And if, if I can, I'm sorry, just chime in, I think it's kind of impossible to know that without knowing the scope of the project at this point. So I, I think that's, that's part of what we developed is the scope of the project. And, and then just wanted to note that, you know, the reality is the outcome could be a phased implementation, which, you know, doesn't necessarily happen overnight. So.
Yep. So yes, I am really skeptical that that would be accomplished in that timeframe. Okay, so let's go ahead and take a vote on, oh, sorry. Is that you? Oh, sorry. All right. Councilmember Stone and then Councilmember Cormac.
Yeah, I, the, the reason why I seconded this, I, I do think it's, I, I think the uncertainty is, is a big piece here. Ms. Apple spoke to that al- already. So I think having, having that, that certainty for, for the, the businesses moving forward is going to be, is going to be really critical. And and I, and I don't, I don't really envision, I think, I think it's far worse to say, to keep, to keep moving the, all my analogies are escaping me at this point of the night, but I, I don't want us to continue to move the, the goalposts. There we go. Thank you. I, I don't want to keep moving the goalposts for these businesses every six months or so. Wait until June, say, yeah, we're going to, we're going to extend this another six months, then another six months till we just get to the point where we're trying to get to right now. That, that doesn't make sense to me. I don't envision a process where we're not going to do that. If we're going through this entire RFI and RFP process, it wouldn't make sense for us to go through all of that and then say, okay, we're going to open the streets for six months a year and then permanently close it again. So I understand the skepticism. I just don't think if we're really looking at this in a logical way, that, 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 that process makes sense. So I think giving that certainty right now is really, is best for everybody involved.
Councilmember Cormac?
I am prepared to make this decision tonight. I will be supporting the amendment. I did want to check with staff on two things. Would you prefer to have it be an action item so that there could be the outreach that the city manager was discussing? Deafening silence.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that I have a, I don't know that it not being an action item would prevent us from doing outreach. It certainly obviously makes the procedure a little different if there's a bunch of concerns and then council decides to pull it to turn it into action and it can't be heard that night. So there's just kind of that procedural stuff is kind of what I'm thinking through. I don't know that having it on consent prevents us from having the outreach. It just kind of changes how does council handle the outcome of the outreach if they want to discuss, if y'all would like to discuss it. So.
Okay, that's helpful. I'm fine leaving it on consent for now. And then I don't think it's clear the period staff would be conducting the RFI, RFP. It wouldn't be clear to me if I was a business. I don't think it'd be clear to me if I was a person who was trying to figure out if I could go eat dinner on California Avenue. So I wonder if the make it or, and secondary would consider just putting a, a date on it certain for now. Just we get picked December 31st, 2023 and just work with that. I think the concern about the implement, yeah, okay, go on.
Either way, I'm, I'm okay. I, I think that we would have plenty of time between now and when the RFP project was implemented to figure out whether we get a better idea of how long that's going to take and align the two.
I guess the thing with the RFP implementing, even listening to it this whole evening, I don't know if that means the consultant has finished their work or the physical environment has changed.
No, it would. The physical environment change would be subsequent.
Okay, so you just mean the consultant has finished their work. I see Mr. Kami nodding and we've arrived at some description. Okay. Well, what does staff think of putting a date certain as opposed to having this description?
Good. Mr. Kami, did you want to?
I was just going to say, I I actually think that's a little bit less confusing for a member of the public that might be trying to track.
And I'll say I'm I'm good with that.
Okay.
Same here.
Okay. So to extend the street closure through December thirty first, twenty twenty-three.
Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, Vice Mayor Koo, did you want to speak on this?
I would really like to I would really like to ask that you do not put it on consent and bring it back as a discussion. Really, this motion is going to cause harm to a lot of the merchants. And we're really, by doing this motion and doing it on consent and extending it to twenty twenty-three December, basically you have not heard anything that the merchants have said, the retailers have said how difficult it is for them. And and it 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 it's just not fair. It is absolutely not fair to them, which is why I supported the charrettes, because that would have helped move it along. But this is actually just completely ignoring the merchants, what they're saying and their concerns with their business. I I I won't be supporting this.
Well, and I don't know whether there's any interest in a motion to reconsider on the shret, given what we've had further discussions on the relationship between extending the closure and the need to improve what we have, including address the 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 addition, the challenges of the merchants and how to improve their situation concurrently. So unless anyone who voted against the shred is willing to reconsider, I guess that's off the table. Okay, I'm not hearing that. So I would be receptive to putting this as an action item rather than a consent.
I'd be supportive of that.
Thank you.
I I'm sorry, I got it to the second or that that's fine. Okay, all right. So let's go ahead and take a a roll call on on this item, this amendment.
Councilmember DuBois.
No.
Councilmember Filsa.
Yeah.
Councilmember Stone.
Yes.
Mayor Burt.
Yes.
Councilmember Cormac.
Yes.
Councilmember Tanaka.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Koo.
No.
Motion carries five to two.
Okay. Let's see, I I think we're done with the CalAB part. We we haven't waded into Ramona and frankly, given the hour, pardon me?
Can this apply to both?
Does it? Okay, is that the way it's written? Can we see the full motion? Okay. Okay. Good enough. So does that conclude this item in everybody's mind?
Uh, Mayor, I I have.
Then we have to, sorry, we have to, oh, yes, Councilmember Tanaka, sorry. And then we'll, you're right, we we have to vote on the full motion. Councilmember Tanaka.
So on C three, this is kind of a minor thing, but I think we had multiple people who talked about wanting to activate the sidewalks and having the the traffic, the pedestrian traffic along the windows of the stores. And I think C three is trying to do that by saying maintain open sidewalks. But just to be precise here, because I I think we I've been talking about this since I've been on a planning commission. That's many years ago now. And, you know, open sidewalk to mean, you know, the backs of the farmer market booth are facing the the sidewalks, right? And people are still walking down the center. So I I think I was wondering if you could try to refine this. And 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 basically, you know, we want the foot traffic near the windows. I think that's that's a really important thing. Otherwise, people who paid all this rent to be on CalAB aren't going to get the benefit of that traffic. So I don't know if the maker or second or are willing to just do a little bit of wordsmithing here on C three, because I think that's intent that most people have, but it doesn't quite say that. It could it could be interpreted other another way.
What what wording are you proposing?
So I would say that most of it's okay, except maintain open sidewalks so that the pedestrian traffic is are near the windows, something specific like that, because I think.
I've seen that that's fine.
Okay, great. Thank you. The the second part, well, actually, sorry, the second or also has to agree.
Oh, yes, yes.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you. The second part is is, and I think multiple people spoke about this and it's not quite in the motion, at least I don't see it. And if it is, let me know where it is. But it's about the economic benefit, really making sure that this will be a net positive economic benefit, or at least measure it, right? So I I we we have it in the last time we talked about this, but it didn't really happen. But I I think we need to at least my in my mind, we want to make sure that this is going to increase the overall economic activity in the area. And that includes doing the data collection, doing some analysis. You know, I've I've been pushing for pushing for this, I don't know, several times now. Last time we said we're going to do it, but it really hasn't happened. So I'm thinking that we, you know, we need to get in this one again, or maybe staff just needs to do it. I don't know. But I don't know if the maker or second or we would be open to that to that suggestion.
I thought that was part of the feasibility study.
Right. Yeah, I thought so too.
Yeah, it says it will also include economic analysis to determine the potential.
Okay, as long as it actually happens, I think that's the point. Because I I think I've been on this for for a bit and it's never never quite seems to happen. Okay, that's fine. Okay, I think I think if I mean, does staff understand that this is something that we want? Is that clear or is that not clear to staff?
I think I saw Philip nod his head.
Okay, yeah, then let's move on. Okay, great. And then the last one here, and and this is also a bit of a minor one. But you know, nowhere in here does it say that, you know, there's going to be bike traffic along or on CalAB, because right now it's actually kind of banned, right? You have to walk your bike. It's like, that's one's an anti biking. And so I I think it's actually important to actually have bikes on CalAB. But I don't know if the maker or second or are open to that.
Well, we're not doing the design right now. I mean, if you want to consider you know, how bike bike traffic is handled, I think it should be part of this design for sure. I mean, I heard the mayor say, you know, bikes but not e-bikes. I mean, I don't think we need to specify specify that precisely this time of night, but if you have a suggestion.
Yeah, I guess my suggestion is I'm trying to think which which item should go under here.
I I mean, Philip, is is bike bike usage already part of the scope as far as you're concerned?
Uh, yes, certainly.
Well, I guess not just bike usage, right? Because bike usage could be walking a bike through CalAB, and I don't think that's what
Well, I'm saying I I don't think we should decide that. I think that should be part of the design. You know, I think that depends how what the design ends up as.
And if the slow streets AB seven seven three is taken into consideration, then there is also the the look at how the traffic is going to go through and also bicycle usage of the streets. Am I right, Mr. Kami?
Well, I I think I think how bicycles are used will be regardless of the regulatory approach that we use, we would look at how bicycles interact and how they fit into this. So I I just recognizing Councilmember Tanaka's, I think, questions or concerns here. I think this is an important connection to a bicycle network here. We've got the CalAB tunnel and and bike paths, bike routes along Park Avenue there. So we've got some really important bicycle connections there. And so we certainly would incorporate that consideration into our study and planning effort.
So, Phil, do you see that that through this process that bikes will not be allowed be ridden through CalAB with this current motion?
I I don't see that in the motion. Unless you unless I'm missing something here.
I mean, it it could be a a bike lane. It could be, I I I think it's part of the design process personally.
I I I think what Councilmember Tanaka is talking about is between now and when we complete the design and then implement it, something that is probably at least eighteen months away. What's the status on bikes?
Is the question what is the current status right now?
No, what will be, are we going to be locked into essentially prohibiting bikes on these streets for at least the next eighteen months based upon the way we have this set up right now?
No, it does not preclude any future changes to the current bike regulations in CalAB. So if a different direction wanted to be taken, that certainly could be taken. Doesn't need to be tonight. And I believe that currently the request is for folks to walk their bikes, I believe.
Yeah, that's not really using the bike. But so that's that's kind of my fear is just I think that's not the right direction. It's not enabled biking through CalAB. So I I I don't know if if the maker or second would be open to something like that.
Again, I want to hear staff saying I'm comfortable with. I I'm not sure what you're proposing. If if it's, if we do some short term changes and there's room for a bike lane, sure, but you know, we had issues before with kind of bikes whizzing through and people walking in the same space. So I think we need a solution to separate that somehow.
Okay, is there anyone that would be willing to second something like this?
Okay, what you need to do is propose your language and then you find out whether there's a second either.
I'll I'll propose that maybe it will be DII that we enable biking on CalAB.
Say that one more time to do what?
Enable biking on CalAB.
Okay, I will second that.
Okay, I kind of spoke to motion ready, so I don't know if the second or wants to see anything.
Nope, I think at this hour, I think it's clear enough. Councilmember Cormac.
Sorry, it's not clear to me when, what what is the timeframe for this? Is that now? Are we asking staff to redesign what is there now so that people can bike?
I'm leaving it a bit open, but I guess my, I think both in a short term and long term, like if if the next year and a half, there's no biking, I think that's a bit of an issue. If there's no biking like there is now for next, you know, few months, even six months, I'm probably okay with that. But I want to leave it a little bit open so that staff has some flexibility, but I don't think it should be closed to biking.
I think the thing that's missing from this entire discussion tonight and the motion, and at this point, I don't even know how to fix it, is is a discussion, even though staff said in the in the report that they couldn't really manage fixing what we have now, we kind of have to fix what we have now. And I'm, this is what I'm struggling with. I might be willing to support this, but I think it's not in the context of saying there is a work stream around fixing what we have now. And whether it's terracotta planters instead of, you know, orange plastic barriers or biking or, you know, something else. So sorry, a bit of a call to the universe here, but.
I just say those were the concepts that would be accomplished by the charrette.
You didn't really just, the charrette was not specific to to this, to the short term period. I I recall Councilmember DuBois asking specifically.
I I described it as transitioning from the short term to a medium.
I heard it differently. So I I think that's that's part of the trouble we're having. What does staff think about this proposal?
Well, actually, I I do see it as a potential opportunity to pilot a bike lane through there. I'm not sure about what it would take to actually do that, because you really do need something to separate, at least visually separate bikes from pedestrians there. So, you know, I could see, you know, I don't know, planters or green paint or something, but I'm just not sure. And I'm curious, actually, if if Molly wants to chime in, you know, what it would mean if we were to paint green paint down the middle of California Avenue when it's in an interim state.
Okay, and then I have a second question after that.
Um, but but I I I I actually have to note that, you know, I was there Friday watching and not everyone's walking their bikes. And I did talk to some businesses and they were complaining. There were there were people that walked their bikes. So I want to give full credit where it's due. And there were people that walked their bikes and the bike racks were full. So there were people that had, you know, probably biked there, parked their bikes and then walked to a a restaurant or something like that.
And then what would this mean on Sundays with the farmer's market? Could this be accommodated?
That's something we'd have to look at.
I would assume that farmer's market, they would not be riding.
Okay.
Certainly would be a challenge. I think I think part of the challenge with this is certainly understand the intent. I think it's just the the challenges to implementing it in a way that minimizes the conflicts between pedestrians and cyclists could be challenging, both from a designing it standpoint, but then also just ensuring people actually do what they're supposed to do, that the bikers bike where they're supposed to bike and the walkers walk where they're supposed to walk and that they don't run into conflict with each other. And that is, I think, a harder element to control.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Phil Seth.
I probably won't support this amendment. I like the idea. I think we should do it. I just don't think we should lock it in tonight. I think, you know, when staff comes back with the action on extending the street closure, that we should have some of these questions ready to answer. Here's how we're going to do this. So I like the idea.
Vice Mayor Koo.
I also want to say, you know, what Ms. Tanner had said, the implementation part of it, but then there's also the enforcement. Bikes going down the middle lane, they're going to have to be at a certain speed. They cannot go over a certain speed or or it's too fast, right? So how do you, how do you how do you enforce that if they decide not to not to not to adhere to the speed limits? So there's a lot more to think about than just enabling biking on CalAB. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, let's take the vote on this.
Vice Mayor Koo.
No.
Councilmember Tanaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Cormac.
No.
Mayor Burt.
Yes.
Councilmember Stone.
Yes.
Councilmember Phil Seth.
No.
Councilmember DuBois.
No.
Motion fails three to four.
Okay, so now I think we can vote on the main motion. With the clerk, please call the roll.
Can we separate out D?
We we already voted on D.
And I voted no, so.
Yeah, so there's a bunch of things that I and others of us have voted to include in this motion that aren't included.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. All right, let's take the roll.
Councilmember Cormac.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Koo.
Yes.
Councilmember Tanaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Phil Seth.
Yep.
Mayor Burt.
Yes.
Councilmember DuBois.
Yes.
Councilmember Stone.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, that concludes this item. So I think all we have remaining is Councilmember questions, comments, and updates. and updates. Announcements, do we have any? Um, Vice Mayor Koo.
Thank you. So I just wanna thank staff for, uh, working on getting the, um, Ukraine flag colors out today. I know it was very hard to get the yellow light, but you managed to do it. So thank you for making that statement. Thank you.
And, uh, Councilmember DuBois.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on a few things that happened hours and hours ago. Um, first of all, we renewed our relationship with the Palo Alto Art Foundation, and I just wanted to say thank you to the, the folks that work on the Art Foundation, um, they, they do a lot of great work on behalf of our art center. Um, I did attend the fiber community meeting last week. I think it was very well-run. And again, if anybody is watching this, uh, anybody interested in citywide access to symmetric high-speed internet should reach out, get involved. Um, so we're entering a phase now where we really need to see, uh, public interest and can use folks um, who are interested in advocating to their friends and neighbors about a city-owned fiber network. And then finally, on the Ukraine, again, the city manager mentioned it, but neighbors abroad is raising money uh, for orphanages in Ukraine. And, you know, the Red Cross also has, uh, Ukrainian appeal going on that hope people will consider doing any too.
All right, and I see no other comments, so the meeting is adjourned.